Okay, Mayor, if you're ready, I think we could go ahead and start if we've got everyone on. Mayor, wait, you're muted, actually. Hold on. There you go.
Now I'm good?
Yeah, you're good.
Let's start all over. Okay. Good evening, everybody. Welcome to our June 23, 2020 Vista Consolidated Meeting. The meeting is now called to order. This meeting is being conducted utilizing teleconferencing and electronic means consistent with the State of California Executive Order Number N-29-20. So we will now have a roll call by our city clerk. So please conduct our roll call.
No, I need to mute myself. All right, let's try this again. Please say you're here when I call your name. Mayor Ritter?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Rigby?
Here.
Councilmember Franklin?
Here.
Councilmember Green?
Here.
Councilmember Contreras?
Here.
All members are present. Also joining us are City Manager Patrick Johnson and City Attorney Daryl Piper.
Okay. In accordance with the Brown Act, I'd like to announce that as a result of convening simultaneous meetings, the members of the Buenos Sanitation District will receive compensation of $147.75 for the district meeting pursuant to Buenos Sanitation District Ordinance 2006-1. And for the members of the public that are participating through Zoom, you may raise your hand to indicate you'd like to speak by clicking the Raise Hand feature on your screen or pressing *9 on your phone. Instructions on how to join the meeting through Zoom are provided on the Agenda cover sheet. That will be lowering everyone's hand now to start the meeting, and we'll announce when to raise your hand to indicate you'd like to make a comment on the specific item being discussed. You may only speak on an item once, and we will be limiting public comment to two minutes tonight. So with that, I will have the approval of the agenda by our City Manager Patrick Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. There are no changes this evening.
We have one presentation this evening. Our City Manager Patrick Johnson will provide a COVID-19 update.
Again, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Give you a brief update on COVID-19 as it relates to what's happening in the county and then in Vista. As all of you know, there's been increased testing. Businesses have reopened within the last couple of weeks. We've also had recreation reopening in a lot of ways, and the expectation was that there would be more positive cases as a result, and that has proven to be true. With the trends that are increasing, as we've seen specifically over the last two to three days, the city, the county, I should say, has paused reopening of new economic sectors as a result. And they are not looking at shutting down sectors or reducing anybody's ability to stay open, but they are trying to determine where the outbreaks are occurring and what type of specific businesses and trying to address those. So we knew that there would be increased positive cases, but the county is looking at the areas where those are occurring and trying to monitor that. In terms of the reopening of the economy, the word is still the same in terms of wear-a-face covering, wash your hands, conduct good hygiene, stay six feet apart, and stay home if you're sick or if you're in a classification where you're vulnerable. That is the word from the county. In terms of the latest numbers that are happening from yesterday, I don't have today's latest statistics, but as of yesterday, there was 11,096 positive cases within the county. Of those, Vista had 212 of the positive cases. In terms of hospitalization, there was 1,627 people who have been hospitalized, and of those, 451 were in the ICU. And sadly, to report up to this point, there was 338 deaths as of yesterday. In terms of looking at hospitalization and ICU, there's been a lot of commentary around that. And across the county, the hospitals are at 66% capacity, and in terms of ICUs, they're at 38% capacity. So well below some of the triggers that the county had set forth. Regarding Vista's specific information, as all of you know, our recreation elements are, for the most part, open. Everything but playgrounds and our rec centers are in use for the public. We're operating day camps at Bringle Terrace Park during the summer months. And one of the things that we're not opening is we're not opening the Wave Water Park. We're not opening the Moonlight Amphitheater, nor are we opening most of our rec programs due to the public gathering limits. And so for the foreseeable future, those three elements that I just mentioned will stay closed. In terms of businesses, most businesses in the city are open, obviously with some modifications based on the state regulations. And there's a few businesses that we have in town that could open but have chosen not to. Synopolis is one of them. There's a lot of questions on when Synopolis will open. And right now, they are allowed to open to 30% capacity and per the state, and so that is not profitable for Synopolis. So they said they will not open until that number changes to 50% capacity. As Mr. Hamm noted in the Economic Development Presentation to all of you, we've launched a new website called VistaIsOpen.com. And so Vista Is Open is now open. It highlights businesses. It highlights businesses that want to offer discounts. Talks about who's open. It provides free stickers and social distancing stickers, floor stickers for businesses that want them. And so it encourages businesses to go to that website. Also would encourage residents to do the same because they can find out who's offering discounts and who is open in the city. In addition to that, one of the other items that Mr. Hamm brought up was Stand Up Vista, which is virtual workshops for businesses. And those will be taking place next Tuesday, June 26. First one will be at 10:00 AM. The second one will be at 2:00 PM, I believe. And these workshops will provide health guidelines for businesses. They'll provide resource information, business operations assistance. And so you can go to Vista Is Open, and there's a short video on what those workshops will entail, and I'd encourage the businesses to take a look at that. In terms of what we're doing regionally, Innovate 78 and San Diego North EDC are sponsoring a program called Stacation and encouraging people through social media and a new website that to take advantage of hotels in the area, do a stacation, and support the local hotels and resorts in North County. So that's something that's taking place. And I do want to mention some very good news, and that is Ayers Hotel is going to open on July 15. And so it's done. It's ready to open. They're two weeks away from their grand opening, but July 15 will be the date that Ayers Hotel, which is situated in the business park on the border of Vista and San Marcos, will open to the public. So some good business news on that front. So that is the COVID update. If there's any questions, be happy to try to address those.
House Speaker Contreras?
Yes, thank you so much, Patrick, for that update. I wanted to get an update regarding cool zones. We are, this is something that I had mentioned at a previous council meeting. It is still continuing to get pretty hot. I myself, you know, ran into a situation where there was an individual who came to the senior center, and, you know, at that time, we didn't have our time correct on Google indicating that we were closed. Long story short is that this individual just was extremely hot. You could tell. And all she wanted was a place to sit down that was cool. So, you know, the only place that we have at this point is the Civic Center lobby, and so I directed her there. But that's, it's not ideal. So if you could let me know what we can do so that we can have, offer our residents the opportunity to cool down as we see the temperatures continue to go up.
And I apologize. I missed some of what you said. My internet froze up on me. But I did hear the cool zones, and I know the woman that you were talking about that came to the Civic Center to avoid the heat. We did contact the county. They did open a number of libraries. However, one of them was not in Vista for cool zone opportunities. And we have a conversation with the county again tomorrow, and we'll readdress the cool zone issue. And I'm sorry if I missed anything.
Okay.
From what you said.
No, that was, that was pretty much what I was saying. I mean, I just think it's an emergency at this point with the heat continuing to go up. I think we need to get something open for our residents, even if it's a capacity of 10 individuals, you know, something that is available to our residents. So thank you so much. That's my only question at this point.
I seeing no other questions? Are there any other questions from council? Seeing none, we will move on to our consent calendar. The recommendations on the following consent calendar will be enacted in one motion unless an item is removed from the calendar. Any member of the public may remove an item by using the Raise Hand feature or pressing *9 now. The items removed from the consent calendar will be considered immediately following adoption of the calendar. We have 11 consent items this evening, and so I will, and would any council members like to remove an item? How about Deputy Mayor Rigby? Do you want to remove an item?
No, Madam Mayor, I do not.
House Member Franklin?
No, thank you.
Okay. House Member Green?
No, Madam, I would not, and I would actually like to move for the approval of the consent calendar as presented.
House Member Contreras? Nothing?
I would second that question.
Okay. Do we have any requests from the public?
No, we did not receive any requests from the public.
Okay, seeing none, then I'll close the public comment portion of the consent calendar. And we have a motion by Councilmember Green and a second by House Member Contreras and to approve the remainder of the consent calendar. So City Clerk Valdez, if you would conduct a roll call vote.
Thank you. Please state your vote when I call your name. Mayor Ritter?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rigby?
Yes.
Councilmember Franklin?
Aye.
Councilmember Green?
Aye.
Councilmember Contreras?
Aye.
The item passes unanimously.
Okay, that moves us to our public hearings, and we have three public hearings this evening. First public hearing is testimony regarding an appeal of planning case Number P-18-0117, Sun Road Plaza Commercial Center. So the public hearing is now open. City Planner Patsy Chow will be providing the staff report. If any members of the public wish to speak on this item, they may indicate so by using the Raise Hand feature or by pressing *9 now. The speakers will be called upon after the presentations by staff and the applicant.
Good evening, Mayor Ritter and council members. This is Patsy Chow. I'm the City Planner, Deputy Director with the Community Development Department. I'm here this evening to present to you the appeal for the Sun Road Plaza Commercial Center. Next slide, please. So the proposed project is a request for special use permit, a site development plan, and a tenant subdivision map, as well as a comprehensive sign program for retail commercial center that's being proposed on a 4.12 acre parcel, which is currently vacant. There are five proposed lots with five separate buildings on one of each of the lots. And the project includes a proposed self-service car wash along with four drive-through restaurants, retail spaces. The building sizes range from about 4,000 to about 6,000 square feet. There will be a total of 160 total parking spaces, inclusive of nine handicap accessible spaces. There are also drainage improvements, wet and dry utilities, all of the associated infrastructure as part of the project, the associated parking, landscaping, and other site improvements. I also like to mention that the project would construct a five-foot wide sidewalk, a curb gutter along the southern project frontage section that's along Hacienda Drive. Next slide, please. So this particular slide shows a real photo of the existing uses surrounding the project site. So you have residential uses to the east and the south. And immediately across the street, Hacienda Drive to the south is the Food For Last Shopping Center and the freeway SR-78 to the north. The site is Zoned C1, and it is designated in the general plan as GC, which stands for General Commercial. Next slide. So this is a view of the project site along Hacienda Drive. You see the subject project site to the left on the particular photo there. Next slide. And this is another view of the project site looking from above, and you can see the existing single-family homes across the street, south of Hacienda Drive, the Food For Last Shopping Center, and obviously the subject project site, which is the vacant land in the middle. Next slide. So this is the site plan for the proposed project. There are a total of five lots, as identified earlier, with the five buildings on each of the lots. The lots range in size from about 0.66 acres to one acre in size. And I also identified here, just for informational purposes, the distance between the Lot 5, which is the proposed car wash building, and the distance between that and the existing single-family homes to the south across the street. So it's about 100 feet to 175 feet away from the proposed car wash. Next slide. So in terms of the general plan, the designation again is General Commercial GC, which allows commercial uses that are servicing residents and businesses at regional neighborhood scale, and that includes community shopping centers. The project is also located in O-A-10, which is an Opportunity Area 10, which is also known as the North County Regional Center, identified in our land use community element in the general plan. The zone is C1. This particular zone allows for a variety of commercial retail uses, including restaurants, convenience markets, other commercial uses. The building height, the maximum allowed is 35 feet or two stories, whichever is less. The maximum proposed height for this project is 29 feet 9 inches, which is actually pat through the particular building on that pad, which is a drive-through with retail space. The setbacks, as far as the proposed project along Hacienda Drive, the minimum required is 3 1/2 feet. They're providing 12. And Vista Village Drive, the minimum required is 20 feet, and they're showing 48 feet. As far as parking is concerned, total of 160 provided spaces, where 136 is required right now. In landscaping, 15% of the site is required to be landscaped, and they're proposing about 22% of the site. Next slide. In terms of the stormwater vast management practices, there are a total of four basins that will actually treat stormwater runoff within the project site. There are primarily three large ones that are shown on this slide, detention infiltration basins on the northwestern, the north central, and southeastern portion of the site. There's also a fourth facility, which is at the corner there, the smaller site, which is basically biofiltration basin planter. So stormwater runoff that would be collected in a private storm drain system would actually be conveyed to one of these facilities. Next slide. So in terms of the landscaping plan, the requirement is 15%, as identified before or mentioned before, and they're proposing 21.9% of the site, which exceeds the requirement in accordance with our landscape manual. There are use of native and as well as non-native plant materials that will be requiring low and moderate water use. Next slide. This is a simulated view of Pad 3. And I just wanted to point now, the type of architecture that they're proposing is modern style with a mixture of textures and finishes. Materials would incorporate stucco, brick veneer, foliage siding, and dark bronze metal awnings over the windows and doors. The color palette would be beige, gray, tan, silver, black and red accents. There will also be mixed in with proprietary color schemes of selected tenants. Some other features as part of the project include some umbrella charcoal metal and cloth awnings. The exterior wall finishes would also receive anti-graffiti coating. Next slide. So this is a simulated view of Pad 1. Next slide. A simulated view of Pad Number 2. Next slide. And a simulated pad for Pad 4. Next slide. Would be a simulated view of Pad 5, and that's the proposed car wash. Next slide. This is an overall site view. The project is looking west. Next slide. And this particular one is just showing the Pad 1 floor plan elevations. And this particular building is about 4,800 square feet total. Next slide. This is Pad 2, floor plan elevations and a total of 4,000 square feet, approximate total building square footage for this one. Next slide. Pad 3, floor plan elevations. The building is about 4,500 square feet. Next slide. Pad 4, it's about 6,000 square feet, and also showing the elevations, the four sides of this particular building. And next slide. Pad 5, floor plan elevations. The building is about 4,200 square feet. And again, this is the car wash, and I have an insert there showing just the trash enclosure treatment. Next slide. The comprehensive sign program for the project includes a variety of wall signs and drive-through signs. There's also projecting blade under canopy signs, some examples of what they could look like. It's shown on this slide. So basically, there are a total of five monument signs, one for each of the pads, the five pads. There's also a proposed pylon sign along the freeway that's 30 foot tall maximum, as identified on this particular slide. Next slide. In terms of environmental review, an environmental impact report was prepared for the project in accordance with the California Environmental Quality Act. And this particular EIR identified significant impacts associated with approving the proposed project. When approving a project with significant impacts, one is required to make findings that are required by the lead agency as far as CEQA is concerned. So State CEQA Guidelines requires that findings associated with the significant impacts of a project that are either mitigated to a less than significant level pursuant to mitigation measures identified in the EIR or mitigation measures that are not withstanding, that have a residual significant impact that in fact would require a statement of overriding considerations. Next slide, please. So in terms of cultural resources, tribal cultural resources and traffic issues, they were found to be potentially significant. However, with proposed mitigation measures, it will result in a less than significant impact. As far as greenhouse gas emissions, they're found to be significant despite the implementation of visible mitigation measures. Next slide. So a draft EIR was circulated back in 2019 from October 3 to November 18. The city at that time received 13 comment letters during the public review period, and all comments were received and responded to, and they're part of the final EIR. After the closing of the public review period, the project applicant Sun Road Vista Land Partners identified and determined that there were specific mitigation measures that were recommended in the circulated draft EIR that would be actually infeasible to implement related to greenhouse gas emissions. So that necessitated the need, came in for the need for recirculated draft EIR, which then was available for another 45-day public review period, which happened March 12 to April 27 of this year. So the partial recirculated draft EIR identified significant impacts related to greenhouse gas emissions, and it was really mainly focusing on GHG for the recirculation of the EIR. The city received three comment letters during the public review period. They were responded to, and they're also part of the final EIR. There are proposed findings, the statement of overriding considerations, and the proposed mitigation monitoring reporting program that are also prepared for the project, and they're included as part of the staff report. Next slide, please. So in terms of cultural resources and tribal cultural resources, project construction, any grounds disturbing activities can actually in fact uncover cultural resources, and that could be potentially damaging and destroying potential resources and resulting in a significant impact. So in terms of mitigations related to this particular item, with implementation of these mitigation measures, then the impacts would actually be reduced to a less than significant level. Mitigation measures include elements such as construction monitoring, pre-excavation agreement, monitoring reports of construction monitoring efforts, most likely descendants to be repatriated, recovered cultural materials that need to be curated. And if there are any discovery on human remains, there will be no further disturbance to the project until there are necessary findings by the county coroner. Next slide. As far as traffic, there was a traffic study that was prepared for the project in 2019, and the trip generation rates for the project were actually developed using San Diego's generation rates for the San Diego region. And based on these vehicle trip generation rates, it was concluded the project would be estimated to generate a total of about approximately 10,000, a little over 10,000 average daily trips, and which would result, the project, then implementation of the project would result in significant impact as it was analyzed in the traffic study at a particular intersection, which is intersection Number 3, which is South Marrows Drive in Hacienda Drive, where there is in fact an increase of more than the allowable two seconds of delay and therefore resulting in a potentially significant impact. Now, there are specific mitigation measures that with their implementation, the impacts would actually be reduced to a less than significant. So the following measures include providing a signal interconnect on Hacienda Drive between South Marrows, Hacienda Intersection, and Vista Village Drive and Hacienda. So that's basically improving the situation as far as communication signals, extending fiber optics for the particular sections. The second item here on the mitigations is providing a third westbound left turn lane and striping, which I have actually a picture for that in the upcoming slide. And there's, the other one would be constructing an exclusive westbound right turn lane on Hacienda Drive along the project frontage of Vista Village Drive, and that would be through widening of Hacienda Drive along the project frontage. Next slide, please. So this particular slide shows one of the mitigation measures, which is the third westbound left turn lane. There will be additional modifications to the existing medium to accommodate the left turn lane as shown on this slide. Next slide. This would be the other mitigation measure where the project would construct an exclusive westbound right turn lane on Hacienda along the project frontage of Vista Village Drive, and that again would be occurring via widening of Hacienda Drive along the project frontage. Next slide. As far as greenhouse gas emissions concerned, back in 2006, the California State Legislature adopted what's called AB-32. That's the known as California Global Warming Solutions Act. And AB-32 focuses on the reduction of GHG emissions in the state of California. In 2016, the city developed the interim guidance for evaluating GHG emissions from individual development projects in the city subject to CEQA. The purpose of the interim policy on GHG significance thresholds for CEQA is really to provide guidance as far as consistent evaluation of significant climate change impacts in compliance with AB-32 until such time when the cap is actually updated to including valuation criteria. The interim guidance identifies what's called the bright line threshold. That's based on review of projects within Vista. And it was determined at the time that a bright line threshold of 1185 or 1,185 metric tons of carbon dioxide equivalent will basically capture about 90% of the CGH emissions that are attributable to development projects. Now, the total project GHG emissions in a first fully operational year then must be less than the bright line threshold of 1185. If the emissions are in fact below this threshold, then the project would not be generating GHG emissions that may have a significant impact on the environment. Next slide, please. What happens with this project is the total CO2 emissions would actually be approximately 2517. And that being above 1185 metric tons of CO2, it would be subject to the city's what's called the efficiency threshold, and that is 3.3 metric tons of carbon dioxide equivalent per year per service population in order to determine whether there is in fact a significant GHG impact. An assumption is made here for this project that there is a total service population of 107 employees, and that the proposed project would then have an efficiency based on that number, and the 2517 metric tons divided by 107 employees, it would create a GHG efficiency of 23.5 metric tons of carbon dioxide equivalent per year per service population. And what that means then is that the proposed project would exceed a significance criteria and therefore result in a significant GHG impact. Next slide, please. There are particular mitigation measures that are proposed related to greenhouse gas emissions to reduce the project's emissions to the extent feasible, but again, not reducing the emissions to a level that would be below significance. And so even with implementation of these mitigation measures, the emissions would still continue to be significant and unavoidable. The mitigations that I described in the EIR vary from energy-reducing features to conservation of water, solid waste reduction, and promotion of electrical and alternative fuel vehicles. of water, solid waste reduction, and promotion of electrical and alternative fuel vehicles. And the implementation of the above measures would result in some reduction of 66 metric tons of CO2 per year, but with mitigation, the annual operation emissions would equate to 2451. Basically, the difference between 2517 and 66 metric tons resulting 2451. Next slide, please. So the city, in order to approve the project, must find that the benefits of the project actually outweigh the project's significant adverse environmental effects or impacts related to GHG just previously described, and that cannot be mitigated to a less than significant level. The benefits that were included in the EIR in what's called the SLCs or Statement of Overriding Considerations include that the project would provide additional employment opportunities in the city, there'll be additional tax revenue to the city, it would improve an underused site, shield existing residences from noise on SR 78, promote smart roof concepts, promote regionally oriented commercial development along SR 78, and that would also improve roadways. Next slide. I've included the slides on noise as even though it's an impact to be considered less than significant, but as related to operational characteristics on the site related to the automated car wash, the outdoor vacuums, the drive-through speakers, and the HVAC units on the rooftop, I thought it would be important at least to cover this particular item as well. So the modeling for the project's operation includes combined noise levels from the sources, which is at 50 decibels noise contours that were not extending to the nearby properties. The car wash blower would generate noise levels beyond the project site, but however, not expected to exceed 50 decibels at the nearby residences. As a point of reference, the C1 zone has 60 decibels maximum between 7:00 AM and 10:00 PM, and 55 decibels noise level allowance between 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM. There is an existing six-foot concrete mincerie wall that's located on the south side of Hacienda Drive, next to the existing residences, that would reduce the noise levels of the residences to the south of the project site. The car wash will not be operating during nighttime hours past 9 o'clock as it's proposed currently, and the noise levels exceeding 55 decibels are not expected to cross Hacienda Drive. Because the nearby residences would not be subject to noise levels from the project operations exceeding either the daytime or the nighttime limits, then the impacts would be considered less than significant. Next slide, please. So this is a graphic just depicting what I just described, which is basically the 50 decibels, which you see kind of over Hacienda Drive there, but again, hitting the wall, the existing wall on the south side of Hacienda Drive, which immediately is alphabetized the existing residences. Next slide. In terms of public policy consideration in our general plan development code and XIGI lines, the proposed project is consistent with these particular policies and documents as far as the designation of GC or general commercial, in that the particular designation does support commercial uses serving residents and businesses at the regional level while being located along major travel routes and key intersections. So the proposed commercial center is consistent with the general plan designation in developing the undeveloped or vacant site along this major thoroughfare. The C1 zone allows for commercial retail, restaurants, and uses that are permitted by rights, and the proposed drive-through and the car wash would require, do require the approval of special use permit. If the city council approves the applicant's request for the special use permit inclusive of the site development plan, then the proposed retail center would be consistent with the uses that are permitted in the C1 zone. Next slide. At the May 19th meeting at the Planning Commission public hearing, the planning commission had several comments related to the project, which I listed here on this slide, starting with the fact that there is, they pointed out there's an existing car wash not too far, in fact, a block away from the proposed car wash. They talked about the fact of too many drive-through restaurants proposed, minimal trash receptacles. They discussed the relocation of, potential relocation of the car wash to be away from the residential neighborhood, therefore trying to address noise issues related to it, redesigning the project again as far as the car wash location, greenhouse gas emissions concerns that there were discussed during the meeting by the commissioners, traffic concerns, and they also recognized there is a reduced footprint alternative in the EIR that was considered to be superior environmental alternative, and they met all the city's general plan objectives, however, did not meet the applicant's objective related to the four drive-throughs. And I believe that is, next slide would be the conclusion of my presentation. And the applicant, Sun Road, Lisa Gordon with Sun Road, actually has their own presentation, so Mayor Ritter, if you would allow, she would be continuing on with the presentation by the applicant. Thank you very much.
Yes, please continue.
So Lisa Gordon from Sun Road, please.
Is everyone okay with my voice volume? Okay, great. Good evening, Mayor Ritter and city council persons. My name is Lisa Gordon with Sun Road Vista Land Partners, the applicant. In addition to me, the applicant team of consultants and specialists are here to answer any questions you may have as we discuss the project this evening. Let me say that we appreciate staff's continued efforts on this project, and we'd like to thank them for their thorough presentation tonight. I want to start our presentation by assuring you that we listened to each word and comment made at the planning commission hearing on May 19th. Although we were unable to come to an agreement at the hearing, we took each and every comment and concern very seriously. We value the input. Our presentation tonight is designed to address each and every concern that we heard from the planning commission. By the way, we've heard that many of our neighbors are concerned about the status of the traffic barrier that blocks access to Madigal from Hacienda, and I just want to be clear, this project does not include any modification to that traffic barrier at Madigal and Hacienda. All of our traffic modeling has assumed that the barrier will remain in place. Next slide, please. In our presentation, we will review the planning commission's issues in some detail. These issues are grouped into five main categories on this slide, listed in no particular order of importance. Each issue is considered equally important. We wanted to address the, ensure the adequate trash enclosures are provided, redesign and minimize the car wash noise impact on neighbors. We want to address concerns about market viability, address concerns about greenhouse gas emissions, and confirm that the traffic is fully mitigated. Next slide, please. Sun Road has been working on this project for over two years, and we were drawn to the land for its gateway location, its proximity to State Route 78, and the underlying zoning and the city's objectives for this site. And we understand the importance of this site to the community and to the city. Next slide. This site, as shown on this slide, has been vacant. It's been vacant since 1997, over 20 years, and Sun Road is uniquely qualified to apply the city's goals as set forth in the general plan and municipal code. Sun Road has planned, constructed, and has operated dozens of high-quality developments, including office, residential, resort, and commercial projects all over San Diego County. For over 40 years, Sun Road has been proud to be part of San Diego County. Next, please. I have several slides that reiterate things that Patsy already went over, so I won't belabor this, and I appreciate your time. So I'll just go ahead and advance to this slide. She did a great job in her presentation. So next. The planning commission expressed some concern that the trash enclosures were minimal. I want to walk you through this aspect of the site plan. It allocates a trash enclosure, as shown on this view, for each of the five pads. The size, location, and layout was approved by EDCO Waste and Recycling Services. It meets or exceeds all standards for the intended uses, and this were footage of the buildings. Next slide, please. Patsy covered this one in her presentation. The project is consistent with the governing documents. Next slide, please. Consistent with the general plan, the current general plan. Next slide. It's consistent with the previous general plan. Next slide, please. And of course, the zoning ordinance, C1, it's allowable uses. Next slide, please. The site is within an opportunity area, and is targeted to promote redevelopment and improvement. It's to encourage property revitalization and enhance community character. Sun Road Plaza is an attractive new commercial center, meeting these business goals. Next, please. Staff covered this slide very well in their presentation as well. This project checks all the boxes for development regulations. Next slide, please. We conducted community outreach during the process, both pre and post-COVID. Of course, our approach was conducted differently post-COVID as to comply with health regulations. We did community knock and talk at three homes in the community pre-COVID. We did emails, phone calls to schools, PTAs, churches, and organizations, and we held video conferencing with South Vista Communities and the Vista Chamber of Commerce. You will see in your council package tonight that the Chamber of Commerce Board of Directors voted to support the project, as well as the Government Affairs Committee of the Chamber, and their letters are in your packet tonight. Next slide. The project contributes to the quality of life for the residents of the city in two ways, both economic, new jobs and new tax revenue, and traffic improvements. And I'm going to go into those traffic improvements in some detail. Next slide, please. A study was conducted by a municipal governmental analyst and calculated an annual revenue of over $156,000 per year, 62 full-time permanent equivalent jobs, and that equates to about 107 total employees, and gives us new high-quality dining and options for Vista residents. Next, please. A concern over market viability was expressed by members of the community and the planning commission, and the primary objections were, one, there's too many drive-throughs. Drive-throughs are economically viable, and even before the pandemic, some operators reported to-go options accounting for 80% of orders, and current consumer retail trends are reinforcing these habits. The reality is that post-COVID, the drive-through component to business has now more than ever become important in our daily way of life, and I'd like to direct you to two letters in your packet, one from Starbucks and one from Panera that explain your drive-through operations. Second, concern, drive-throughs cause traffic issues with backups potentially spilling onto Hacienda. A great deal of thought went into the planning and design of the project. We hired a very qualified architect and planning firm, SGPA, who studied the site layout and planning in collaboration with our civil engineers, Stevens Cresto Engineering. The pad locations were carefully analyzed by size and use for mobility and traffic, and each pad was designed for the use type. Each use was placed on the site to optimize queuing and drive-through flows, continued to improve the performance and service capabilities with the use of technology. And many use mobile order and pay to reduce service times these days. Lastly, why do we need another car wash when one is located less than half a mile away? The business model for the proposed car wash is very different than the closest competitor. The proposed car wash is a quick-serve, touchless operating model. No detail services are provided, and users do their own detailing. The business model relies heavily on monthly membership, and the entry is designed to actually read the card registered with your membership for very quick queuing. Next slide, please. So I want to talk about traffic improvements. The project, obviously, traffic was expressed as a concern by the planning commission and the community, and the project has a less than significant impact in the area after mitigation. The level of service grade remains the same or better at all studied intersections after mitigation. The project provides four major street improvements, and I'll go into those in the next slides, and these changes will reduce overall wait times compared to the status quo, key nearby intersections. Next slide, please. Patsy referred to some of this. We have a little bit of graphics to kind of show how they work. As background, Lynn Scott Law and Greenspan is a prominent traffic engineering firm doing business for over 50 years. They prepared the traffic study, which was incorporated into the EIR, and must mention that the report, the traffic study report, was also reviewed by a third party for the city. Traffic improvements require modification to the interconnect traffic signals at Hacienda and Melrose, and Hacienda and Vista Village Drive, and you can see in this graphic that these two signals will not talk to each other, and that results in a actual reduction in wait time at three nearby intersections, by up to 23 seconds at Melrose and Hacienda, up to nine seconds at Vista Village Drive and Hacienda, and the improvements also slightly reduce the wait time at the intersection at the eastbound ramp to State Route 78. This is an improvement to the existing wait times. They directly are related to the improvements that we're doing. So these reductions to wait times at the signals will not occur without the project. Next, please. An additional left-hand turn lane will be added from the westbound Hacienda to southbound Melrose. Modifications will be made to the median on Hacienda to accommodate the additional lane, and Lynn Scott Law and Greenspan worked with input from the city traffic engineer to develop this design. This will shorten wait times back to 23 seconds. Next, please. And an additional right-hand turn lane will be added from the westbound Hacienda to northbound Vista Village Drive. This project will dedicate a portion of its property for the street widening to accommodate that lane. Lynn Scott Law and Greenspan also worked with the city engineer on this design, and drivers will be able to choose their approach to the ramp to 78, or they'll go straight through the intersection, as shown in the graphics. Next, please. A traffic improvement was incorporated into the east driveway of the project, and this improvement was not required by the traffic study. Instead, it was incorporated to address concerns voiced from the community during our outreach shepherds, in particular, to address concerns that traffic exiting the east driveway would head east and increase traffic into the Vale View neighborhood. So the design incorporates two medians. One is a median in the driveway, we call that a pork chop, and it directs the drivers to the west, and a median in Hacienda prevents the driver from doing a U-turn and then trying to go east. Again, this project does not include any modifications to the traffic barrier at Madigal and Hacienda. All traffic modeling assumes that that barrier remained. Next, please. In summary, this data is contained in the EIR in Appendix D. These improvements result in shorter wait times that drivers experience now sitting at these intersections, Melrose and Hacienda, Vista Village Drive and Hacienda, and Vista Village Drive and State Route 78 eastbound ramp. Next, please. Next, please. The project has no significant impacts on noise, and no mitigation was required per the EIR, as Patsy had described. Although the anticipated noise generation levels are well below the city's code of 60 decibels during the day, we heard the community and we understand their discomfort. In response to the Planning Commission's concerns, we propose changes to the car wash. One, upgraded blower model at the car wash exit. 12 decibels quieter than the EIR model. Upgraded vacuum models at the vacuum stalls, 6.8 decibels quieter than the EIR model, and reduced operating hours, closing at 8:00 PM. Next slide, please. This chart was provided by Helix Environmental. They're our noise consultant who prepared the study incorporated to the EIR. The chart gives us a noise reference to the decibel level that neighbors would experience from the car wash. It also gives us a reference to the noise generated by State Route 78. The box in the upper left, click, please, shows us highway noise, as is, measured at the project's driveways. That is 61 decibels. It's considered comfortable compared to conversational noise, as you can see on this chart. The upper right box gives us the decibel level of the nearest residence whose backyard abouts Hacienda. As proposed in the EIR, using standard car wash equipment, the noise would be 49 decibels. That's considered quiet, and it's comparable to a quiet office. And then we see the lower right box. It gives us the decibels at the nearest residence after the proposed upgrades and reduces the noise down to 37.1 decibels, comparable to a humming refrigerator. It would be twice as quiet as the standard equipment studied in the EIR. Next, please. We see from this slide the science of noise. The existing wall that's located at the top of the slope at Hacienda there in the right-hand side of the picture, it acts as a barrier to the noise. You can see the car wash is at a lower elevation on the left side of the screen, and it's a lower elevation than the street. Noise travels up, and the barrier, the wall, forces the sound waves up and over the receiver. Next, please. So here we see the car wash aerial in relation to the existing six-foot sound wall on Hacienda, shown in a yellow line on the screen. I draw your attention to the yellow and black dots located at the two closest residences. The red labels show us the decibel reading using the car wash standard equipment studied in the EIR. And the green labels show us the decibel level using the upgraded car wash equipment. The result is a substantial reduction in noise. The human ear would perceive the car wash with upgraded equipment to be twice as quiet as the standard equipment that we studied in the EIR. Next, please. We heard the community, we heard the Planning Commission regarding greenhouse gases. The project implements all available and feasible greenhouse gas mitigation measures under the city's climate action plan. The energy-reducing features, Patsy ran through them, I'll go through it real quickly. Programmable thermostats, electric landscape maintenance equipment will be required, high-efficiency heating, ventilation, and air conditioning, high-efficiency area lighting, limited outdoor lighting, and the buildings will be designed to maximize interior daylight. Next, please. The project will install six electrical vehicle charging stations and will be required to use low-flow plumbing fixtures, low-wire use supply entrances, and recycling and compost services to achieve a 50% diversion from the landfills. Next, please. So the EIR examined three alternatives. Alternative number one was no project, build nothing. Alternative number two is office. And alternative number three is a reduced footprint for restaurant and retail uses. And all of these were rejected because they do not achieve the project objectives. Next, please. I'll talk a little bit about alternative number two, which is the office use. This was rejected because it did not resolve the greenhouse gas impacts, and it would generate minimal new tax revenue. Office use at this location is not commercially viable, given office vacancy rates in the area currently exceeding 17.5%. This is well above the San Diego County office vacancy rate of 10.5%. And also, this generates minimal new tax revenue. Next, please. The reduced footprint alternative does not achieve the project objectives, and it is not commercially viable. For a center like this to be successful, it needs the synergy of the proposed uses and tenant mix. In this way, tenants generate businesses for each other by providing convenience and a variety of choices and services. Next, please. And Patsy went through this for us. We can click to the next. And to the next. All right, so under CEQA, projects with significant impacts can be approved when benefits outweigh those impacts. And the benefit of this project, as Patsy listed, are additional employment opportunities, additional tax revenues, improvement to an underused site, shielding existing residents from noise at the freeway, promoting smart growth, improving roadways. Next, please. In conclusion, I want to say that this is a well-designed project. It meets the city's goals, guidelines, and regulations. It will generate minimal noise. It will mitigate traffic impacts. It incorporates traffic improvements to protect nearby residential neighborhoods. It will improve circulation at nearby intersections. It will bring revenue and jobs to the city. It will bring high quality and convenience to the community. We have demonstrated tonight that we listened to the Planning Commission. We improved the project since the Planning Commission considered it. And we are delighted to have the opportunity to bring this dynamic community center to the city. And we respectfully urge you to make the findings for the special use permit and approve the project. Thank you very much. And we're here for any questions you may have.
Yeah, I will go, I'll go to our council first and see if they have any questions or comments. So, Mike, I'll start with Deputy Mayor Rigby. Do you have any questions or comments?
If you do not have any questions or comments at this time, I would like to hear the public comments.
Okay, how about Councilmember Franklin?
I would also like to hear the public comments.
Councilmember Green?
Public comments would be great first, thank you.
And Councilmember Contreras?
Let's go with the public comments.
Okay, so City Clerk Valdez, do we have any members of the public that wish to speak on this item?
Yes, I have several individuals who would like to speak. So I'm just going to remind folks that when I call your name, you'll be prompted either on your phone or on the computer to unmute yourself or to begin speaking. Please state your name and the spelling, and then I'll start your two minutes. And I will also give you a 15-minute warning when your time's about to end. So our first speaker, and again, I apologize if I pronounced May's name wrong, but our first speaker is Lona Leghart.
Thank you, it's actually pronounced Lana. It's spelled L-O-N-N-A-L-E-G-H-A-R-T.
Thank you.
All right, thank you for the opportunity to respond to the meeting packet and the presentations today. I'm a resident of the Valeview Drive neighborhood to the east, and I am opposed to this project. I've read 52 letters of opposition since the appeal in May. More were attached to the EIR, and approximately 20 comments on the Nextdoor app have been opposed as well. In short, your constituents have absolutely noticed the traffic, pollution, and safety problems with this development, and significant numbers of residents are taking the time to voice our concerns. I have a few questions and a quick offer. First, regarding the updates to the three intersections, Sun Road claims the synchronized lights won't happen without this project. Is that true? Also, the pork chop solution may stop some eastbound traffic, but how would the developer recommend Valeview residents exit the project? Next, why was Sun Road unwilling to consider changes on May 19th, but now willing to propose quieter car wash equipment? And has Sun Road considered our neighbors to the east and south of the car wash? And the final question, most letters of support come from businesses expecting to benefit from the project. The one letter of support from a community member mentions their desire to replace the restaurants that have closed, such as Soup Plantation, and I couldn't agree more. I miss Soup Plantation. But why do we need to add new restaurant spaces? Why not fill the empty spaces and get more creative with the four acres on this project? You may remember my neighbors and me from last June's hotel conversation. I'm happy to report that I've been in touch with Julian Shadele to get creative solutions for the lot he owns across the street at 536 Madigual. I'd like to extend the same offer to the developers of this site so we can have true community cooperation and hopefully find a solution that would be in full compliance with our climate action plan and CEQA. Thank you.
Okay, the next speaker is David Greenspan. David, are you there?
Can you hear me?
There you go, go ahead and start, please.
This council pledged to reduce greenhouse gases. You put it in writing, and we trusted you. And here comes Sun Road, a predatory developer who has used strong-arm tactics in the past and their influence over politicians to force through virtually every project they propose. This all-male-owned business is even using a female face for its lobbying efforts to sway five elected officials into approving a gas-gasling emissions project and a car wash right in the middle of a family neighborhood. The Sun Road project jams 10,000 cars a day into a tiny intersection that is already choked every morning and afternoon. Sun Road claims they will magically make the increased traffic close seamlessly, but not once they add 10,000 cars. They insist the screaming vacuums at the car wash miraculously vanish and the unconscionable increase in greenhouse gases from 10,000 idling cars a day suddenly becomes acceptable. We know this is a parlor trick. Why would this council approve a rest stop emissions project right in the middle of a family neighborhood? Sun Road claims they are compliant. They are not. They have refused to scale the project down or consider any alternative. The EIR clearly states that this project, even with mitigation, will still deliver significant impact regarding GHG's, not by a little, but by almost 300% over the allowable level, a level you set. And to divert your attention away from their greenhouse gas violation, they've woven this fairy tale of less traffic, massive employment, and generous tax revenues. They even claim the project will buffer us from the traffic noise of the 78. Our own personal vacuums, according to their chart, were louder than the vacuum that they're going to have at the car wash. The Planning Commission begged Sun Rose to up-level the architectural look and feel so the buildings wouldn't look like boxy bunkers. Sun Rose refused to alter the character. And Lisa Gordon just said-
That's your time, David, thank you.
-is-
Next speaker is Katie Melendez. Katie, are you on? All right, Katie, I think I've got you on now. Are you there, Katie? All right, actually, Katie, I'm going to ask that you call in. It looks like we're having a problem with your Zoom. Okay, so our next speaker is going to be Nancy O'Shea.
Oh, I'm sorry. I actually didn't realize I was on the docket to speak because I submitted a comment later on. But, um, okay. Anyway, I'm opposed to the project. Been a resident of Vista for 31 years. I don't live anywhere near the project, but I'm opposed on it based on the fact that it is out of compliance with our cap. And, um, yeah. And we don't need more car washes, or more chicken places. So, please vote no. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, the next caller is Gary, next speaker. Gary, if you would state your full name and spelling, please.
Sure, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
My full name is Gary Lukovich. I live at 656 Madigual. I've been a resident at that location for over 33 years. I have a number of points to talk about, but I did put them in a letter to the mayor and council members, so I'm not going to take up the time going over that. I want to focus just on one of the many points I addressed in my letter, if I could. And that has to do with the traffic flow. I'm glad they're very motivated trying to fix things, but when I look at the project and the description, it looks like they're fixing things, if it works, in an east-west type of direction, moving cars more easily and faster supposedly in that direction. But it doesn't tell me how it addresses the north and south traffic on Melrose. You can't just dump a lot of cars on the intersection, even if you get them there faster, and expect Melrose being worse than the nightmare that already is. So that's one of my issues. The other issue, I think, here is that if traffic gets worse, every time I go to these meetings, they always tell me it's be minimal or no impact on the traffic flow. And over the years, if you look around, it's far different than it was three decades, four decades ago, the amount of traffic congestion. It's gotten horrific, almost impossible-go places at times. But my big concern is, even though they talk about leaving the barrier of Madigual in place currently, if the traffic gets bad enough there, they're not going to close that center down. They're going to come back and variance and open up that drive because they'll say they need it in order to comply with the overwhelming traffic flow in order to get people more efficiently in other directions. And that's going to ruin the very rural nature of our streets. It's been, there's no streetlights there, there's no sidewalks. People walk through animals, their horses. It's a very, very quiet, peaceful, countrylike area. And I hate to see it ruined by anything involving more traffic flow. Even though it doesn't appear like it might be happening initially, I think in the future, the demands of the increased traffic would seriously affect the residents of my street. Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you. All right, the next is, is it Jacek Pilas?
Hello.
Hi, can you please state your name and the spelling?
Yes, Jacek Pilas, J-A-C-E-K-P-I-L-A-S.
Thank you. All right, go ahead and start.
Yes, I would also like to mention that I am opposed to the project. I have lived here for four years and significantly have seen an increase on Valeview with traffic. With the project continuing, I'm assuming that the traffic will only double. In that case, we already have an issue whenever we go on walks around the cul-de-sac here because we also do not have a sidewalk. And it has become very dangerous. Thank you, yes, that is what I would like to say.
Thank you. Next is Frances Dummler. Frances, if you would unmute yourself and go ahead and start.
Hi. My name is Frances Dumler. Last name is D like David, U.M.L.E.R. I am also opposed to this project. I think the rationale by the planning committee for denying it was very apropos. I understand that in making decisions, there are gains and there are losses. The city will gain, according to the report, about $150,000. And there will be some increase in employment. But the price that is being paid on the environment is too much. The city has serious responsibility, both for the finances and the environment of the city. And I think that the most reasonable thing would be to try to get a compromise where benefit would be available for both the developers and the community. I still don't understand why having a car wash and more eaters is extremely important. Furthermore, the businesses are gonna be competing with each other. And so I don't think there's gonna be a great synergy. I have some doubts as to how profitable this is gonna be over the years. I'm concerned that we may end up with businesses that fail, and then the whole thing has to be redone again. The car wash noise, it's nice to say it's gonna sound like a refrigerator, but it's a refrigerator that goes constantly buzzing there all the time.
15 seconds.
So I would propose that decreasing the amount of businesses and getting rid of the car wash would allow for a much more reasonable development and give some green-
That's your time, Frances. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, it appears that that is all of the speakers, so we're gonna go ahead and close opportunity to speak on this item. Oh, actually, I have one that just popped in. Let me pull that one in, and then we'll, we'll stop. So Monica, you could go ahead and speak. Monica, are you there? Okay, let's try Maria Bowman. Go ahead, Maria.
Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Hi, this is Josh and Maria Bowman. Last name is B, as in boy, O.W.M.A.N. We live at 544 Madigual Drive, directly across from the proposed site. And we've lived here for 20 years. Just wanted, uh, we turned in a letter to the council yesterday, so I'm not going to read my letter to you guys. But, um, we just want to state for the record, according to Ms. Gordon, that there were, uh, there was a community outreach. We never once got a visit, a phone call, not one email, not one letter, nothing in regards to what our thoughts were about this project. So we want to state that for the record. And then also, um, on Ms. Gordon's presentation on page 70 regarding sound, our house, in both Ms. Chow's and Ms. Gordon's presentations, whenever there was an aerial view, our house was in every single one of them. Our house was not addressed in the sound issue. And, uh, we feel that, and we don't have a six-foot wall like our neighbor does across the street. So the sound is just gonna go right into our house. And we are higher, so like, as you, as Ms. Gordon said, audio goes up. We are gonna hear that all day long. So, um, we just wanted to make sure that we were heard regarding those two items. Thank you for listening to us.
Thank you. Okay, let's see if... Uh, Monica. Are you there, Monica? Did you wanna speak on this item? Okay, I'm gonna try her on a different one. All right, Monica, can you join us now?
Hello, can you hear me?
There we go, yes. Monica, would you please spell your last name?
Rodriguez, R.O.D.R.I.G.U. Easy. Sorry about that, people. I know you're busy.
Go ahead. Thank you, Monica.
Um, I live here on Madigual, and on real bad rainy days, we get really, really bad floods. And it's in a, I, I bought the house after I realized it was in a flood zone. And when the rain runs, it runs right towards that complex. And I just fear that with the extra runoff, that something might get plugged, and then it might cause more problems with the rain runoff. With all the traffic going through there, I can imagine it would probably be a really bad mess because the water actually, reservoirs in my backyard makes like a river when the water comes down. And then also, yeah, I can understand people in the car wash. I can't see why there would be another car wash. It just seems not feasible. I mean, there are so many beautiful birds here. We have this one, it's a helmet honey eater. It's a, a, a bird that is endangered, and I found one in my backyard, right here on Madigual. And I took a picture of it, and I sent it in, and sure enough, it was. It was an endangered bird, this little yellow bird that looks like a little taxi cab. And I can't imagine what the emissions of all those vehicles will do to all these little baby birds that are opening and, and flying around this neighborhood. I mean, it's so beautiful here. It's quiet, it's peaceful. And, you know, we have wild coyotes that run through here. They're gonna be getting run over by the cars down there. I just, it just isn't right for this environment. I mean, put a park. We need a dog park. There's a lot of walkers around here. That's an idea.
That's all I have to say. All right, perfect. Thank you.
Uh-huh. Sorry about that, people.
All right. And let's try Katie Melendez again.
Yes, am I able to hear me?
Perfect. Yes, thank you, Katie. You can go ahead and start.
So my name is Katie Melendez, spelled K.A.T.I.E.M.E.L.E.N.D.E.Z. And I just wanna say thank you for hearing public comments tonight. I'm joining many of my neighbors to urge our city council to deny this appeal for the Sun Road's project that consists of four drive-through businesses and a car wash. This project will disregard our climate goals, exceeding our greenhouse gas emission standards, and causing further health disparities in our community. Further, we should follow suit of our neighbors in Escondido and implement a moratorium on car washes. Justifying this project for reasons related to economic development does not benefit our community. The responsibility of economic development should accomplish more than tax revenue for our city from low-wage service industry jobs, especially when our community is in need of good-paying, creative careers. This project is not worth our climate goals. Please be sure to keep the residents' best interests in mind and deny this appeal. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And Jay Michael in? If you'd go ahead and state your name and the spelling, please?
Hello, my name is Jean-Michel Négron. That's J.E.A.N.M.I.C.H.A.E.L.N.E.G. And I just wanted to make a quick comment. I make that drive on Hacienda right through there. Probably two, three times a week, my business partner lives across the street. I just wanna say I'm neutral with this project. I just wanted to add my input because it so happened that you guys are talking about it. How many car washes are within a one-mile radius of this location? When I looked it up, there is about five on Google. And a second note, the traffic is pretty horrendous there already. With the added roads and widening it, it may help. I'm concerned about the traffic, but if it can be addressed, it may be a potential. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Okay, so that does it for our public comments. We'll go ahead and close the public comment opportunity at this time.
Okay, so, um, so do we close the public hearing also? We'll close the public hearing, and then I'll go to the council comments. So I'll start with Deputy Rigby. Do you have any additional comments or questions?
I have no questions, but I do have some comments. Thank you, Madam Mayor. We talk about, gosh, there, there is a lot to talk about on this project. That's, which one do I start with first? We talk about traffic, and we talk about an already impacted area, not just a Vista Village and Hacienda, but also the traffic coming across Melrose and Hacienda, and then coming down Vista Village as well into that shopping center or trying to get across the street to the other shopping center. Adding 10,000-plus more cars a day is a significant impact to that area. And they were talking about taking away, going westbound on Hacienda, taking out the median, and making the right-hand lane a right-turn lane. And this, taking out the median and then putting in a third left-hand turn lane, making two, only one, a single lane going across Melrose on Hacienda. Well, you're taking away a second lane that goes straight. And some days, both of those lanes going straight. And granted, the right-hand turn lane, you can go straight or turn right. But those back up quite a bit already, as it is, whether you're going straight or turning right, and a great number of cars go straight. So you're taking away a lane there. And the connectivity between the Vista Village light and the Melrose light, now as much as that is appreciated, they didn't address the impact of those two lights talking to each other to be connected. And what that's doing in stacking up traffic on Melrose, going either north or south on Melrose, or the cars coming to that intersection either direction. So that, that wasn't addressed, and I think the traffic here is going to be impossible already. And then we talk about the greenhouse gas emissions, and that's a huge sticking point for a lot of us in that with, no matter what the mitigation standards that they tried to do, they're not going to be able to fit it into or under the requirements for our climate action plan, which we worked really hard to put together and to, to work with and to work within. And that's important to our community, and we've heard that over and over and over again. And so that's not something that is easily going to be dismissed with this particular project. But you also talk about, um, well, before I get off traffic, there was one more thing I wanted to say that was actually not brought up, and it's in, it's in the report. I have a lot of notes, so bear with me. But it says in, in the report, "The project is incompatible with existing and planned land uses in the vicinity due to the large number of added vehicle trips." Caltrans, a responsible agency under the CEQA, under CEQA for this project, commented that "the project will result in excess demand at the Vista Village driveway freeway entrance ramps. The project would contribute to state Route 78 ramp delays by the year 2030, which is only nine and a half years away, by adding, adding six minutes." Now, earlier, they were talking about seconds taken off. Now we're adding six minutes in the morning hours for Vista Village, and eight minutes in the morning, and two minutes in the afternoon coming the other direction. So that is a significant impact on traffic in that area. So that completely undoes anything that they're doing on the other side of it to try to mitigate the, the traffic delays over there. To me, six minutes and eight minutes increase delay over on Vista Village to the freeway, they should run us out of town on rails if we agree to that, honestly. Get back to my notes. So in the noise issue, I agree with the gentleman who said, you know, telling, telling the neighbors that the car wash just is gonna sound like a running refrigerator all day and all night. That, to me, that almost sounded very dismissive of the concerns of the neighborhood. And I didn't appreciate that very much. I think having something running from seven in the morning, initially 10 at night, and then they reduced it down to eight at night, but you still have all the cars coming through if the restaurants are open until 10 o'clock at night, the traffic coming through there. That's, that's a lot of noise, not just from the car wash, but also from the cars that are coming through. Because you, you hear the traffic from the freeway already, and then you add 10,000 more cars in that one little small space. That's, that's gonna be a lot of noise. And as far as taxes go, we talked about increase in property tax. And the increase in property tax, if this was built out the way that it's proposed, would be an estimated additional $11,000 a year to the city. $11,000, of course, any amount into the city's fund is a benefit to our community. But for a project of this magnitude with this much of an impact, $11,000, in my opinion, isn't worth what this impact would bring on that level. And then you talk about the, um, sales tax for this project, you know, for the four, four drive-throughs and the, the retail spaces that might be there in the car wash, which I find interesting that it's a, you know, membership car wash. But two of the places that you wanna put there, they talk about the increase in, in sales tax, and it was said $131,000 in new sales tax. And I put quotes around it because that's what it was said, new sales tax. So I don't know if they are including the Starbucks and the Panera because you can't include those as new sales tax, given that this, the Panera where it is now, by the movie theater, is going to close and move over here. And the Starbucks initially said, my understanding was that they had not anticipated closing the Starbucks over by the courthouse. And then trying to get clarification on that, they were kind of silent on it. But the letter that is in our packet, Starbucks says, let me see if it's here I can find it. They said that they were going to be looking forward to having the crowd come over from the Vista Courthouse, and the proximity of the Vista Courthouse was a benefit to them. So to me, that made me think there, there's, there's a Starbucks right there by the courthouse that actually has a staircase from the courthouse parking lot down into the Starbucks parking lot. So if they're anticipating this location to be where the courthouse employees, staff, and, and people who have business there, if they're gonna be using the Starbucks over on the other side of, of Melrose, my, my thought process is that they're anticipating closing that Starbucks location. So they can't include that as an additional revenue. It would be a wash. The Panera and the Starbucks would be a wash as far as sales tax go. So I don't know that that's included in their $131,000 a year in additional sales tax. So I have a lot of, of things in here. Sidewalks, you know, we have, the, the traffic coming in and out of here would be horrendous for this little neighborhood. It's, as it was mentioned, it's, it's a residential neighborhood. They don't have sidewalks. They have, they go out, they walk. I see people out there. Having cars zooming up and down the street, 10,000 additional cars a day is not something that this neighborhood needs. And I'm looking at... One thing that was not addressed, I think adequately, in the report, in the paperwork, in the discussion, is that it said, yes, this is in the general plan, it's okay, for the general plan, it's okay for the, for the, um, zoning. But the zoning says that- But the zoning says that restaurants are zoned, this is zoned for restaurants. It is actually not zoned for drive-through restaurants or car wash, which is why it's stated clearly in writing that they need to have a special use permit. The C-1 commercial zone allows for commercial retail and restaurants as use is permitted by right. The proposed drive-through restaurants and car wash require approval of a special use permit. So they're still asking for more than just, we want to do this and we have to get past the greenhouse gas emissions issue. We have this other issue that it really isn't zoned for this. They're asking us to give them special permission to do this. But when we do talk about the greenhouse gas emissions that they can't get past, we want to talk about the health and safety of our community. And I think that's one thing that we have to look at, is this is a huge impact on this neighborhood and our city as a whole, when we look at 10,000 cars a day in this one small space and the amount of greenhouse gas emissions that cannot be mitigated away. And what is the health impact that that's going to have on that neighborhood? That's an issue that needs to be talked about. And one of the comments that was made in the EIR was that mitigation issues for that, they were anticipating future cars, future automobile technology to help them out down the road. Well, to me, that's not an adequate answer. You know, California's stricter emission standards would be implemented by such and such a time. Because you're trying to do this now, and what is the impact that it has now? And when is that future time that the state automobile emission standards would be efficient enough to fit under the standards that we have now? And not contemplating the fact that as the technology and the science comes up with things that we can do to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, our standards, what we allow, what we accept and find acceptable levels will also go down. So between now and this future unknown date with unknown technology, it cannot be relied on, and I found that comment in the EIR to really also be a little bit on the arrogant side. They probably shouldn't have put that in there, because you can't rely on technology that we don't have and an unforeseen date. So I could go on and on and on. I have probably 30 pages of notes. And you should see my book, it's completely tabbed and highlighted, and I have notes and notes. But because of the overriding issue with the greenhouse gas emissions, the extraordinary traffic congestion that it will create, the times that it will increase six and eight minutes in the morning traffic. Who here, I can't see hands, I can't see your faces, I wish I could. And I appreciate every single one of you for being online and hearing this conversation and being part of it and submitting your letters and your comments. I wish I could see all the hands of everybody who's really anxious to sit in the traffic over there for another eight minutes in the morning on your way to work. That would not be me. So for the reasons I have outlined, and many others that I'm happy to go into if my colleagues want to have, you know, I'd like to hear what my colleagues have to say. But I move that we deny the appeal and deny the project by adopting the following City Council resolution: Denying the Appeal and Denying the Special Use Permit, inclusive of the Site Development Plan, Tentative Subdivision Map, and Comprehensive Sign Program to develop a retail commercial center consisting of a self-service car wash, four-drive-through restaurants, retail buildings, and associated parking lot and site improvements. And the rest of it as is laid out in our agenda report. And I didn't even address the lighting issues that would impact that community as well. The traffic, the litter. There are so many reasons, and I do not find that any of the benefits for the drive-through or the car wash, we have a lot of car washes, we have one just down the street, you can walk to it. In our city and even in this neighborhood, you've got drive-throughs all around it. You have car wash over this way, you've got car wash over that way. We are not in a community that is in desperate dire need of more drive-through restaurants. We don't have people starving that have to have another drive-through. We don't have to have this 24th or 25th car wash. And in this neighborhood, there are things that we could use, and I don't see that this fitting that plan, especially with the incredible impact, the negative impact it will have on this community. And I do not find that the overriding considerations to benefit this community outweigh the negative impact. That's why I make the motion that we deny this appeal. Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I look forward to hearing from my colleagues.
Okay, Councilmember Franklin, do you want to go next?
Sure. I have, to start with, I have two questions. First of all, Councilwoman Rigby mentioned the six or eight-minute delay. And I apologize, I missed what the sourcing on that is and wanted to better understand that potential future impact. Deputy Mayor, can you tell me again where that analysis comes from?
This analysis is in our agenda packet on page 55 of 103, the last paragraph. Caltrans, as I read it, commented that the project will result in excess demand on Vista Village Drive, the freeway entrance ramps. And it talked about six minutes at the one ramp and eight minutes at the other one, and then additional times in the peak afternoon hours. The project, traffic mitigation measures do not address the 78 delay concern, and the city has no authority to affect the signals. So because it's controlled by Caltrans, we would have to, this would have to happen, my understanding, and then we would have to go back and work with Caltrans to adjust the signaling and their ramp striping and their, et cetera. So it's in our agenda report here, so.
Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor. I appreciate that. Is John Connolly on with us?
Please, Councilmember Franklin, he is. However, let me try to address the.
All right, Ms. Chow, I didn't realize, you can answer the question instead of John Connolly. Is that, do you agree with the assessment by Caltrans, and is that an accurate characterization?
That information Deputy Mayor Rigby made reference to actually is part of the information that we received from Caltrans. And although that is the information that we received, clarification is because of the fact that the city has not, does not have the authority to affect the change on the ramps. But John Borman, the traffic consultant that works with Lisa Gordon, he is available on the line, and we can certainly call on him to further expand on that, if you would like.
Yeah, I definitely want to hear his analysis of the potential for an eight-minute delay.
Lisa Gordon, I believe Chris Mitchell can bring John Borman with LLG Traffic Consultants on the line.
That's right, Patsy. Mr. Borman is on the line, and he's prepared to answer that question.
Hi, can you hear me?
Sure can.
Yes. My name is John Borman. I'm a principal with Lynn Scott Law and Greenspan. These are the projected times to get onto the freeway in the 2030 timeframe. So the six minutes in the morning, eight minutes in the afternoon, those are the projections to, I guess, worst-case projections to get onto the freeway in the future. So that's what those are. Those are not, that's not a significant impact according to Caltrans guidelines. And that's why there's no mitigation required.
Question, is that an eight-minute addition because of this project according to Caltrans?
No.
Or would it be eight minutes regardless of the project?
It's, no, it's a four-minute increase due to the project.
Okay.
And that is a very worst-case analysis, assessment, assuming there's no increase in the discharge rate at the meters. It's an analysis, it's not done very often, but it is, that is what we needed to do for the EIR, so that is what it shows.
Is there a range that you calculated that was a maximum of a four-minute impact and a minimum of some other number? I mean.
No, there's not a range. It's a maximum of four-minute increase.
Yeah, and in your professional opinion, do you think it's likely to cause four-minute additional time to access the freeway?
No, it's not my opinion. It's a very antiquated analysis. It's not done very often. Caltrans did want to see it, so we did it. It's not a significant impact either, based on Caltrans standards. And that's the same conclusion that the peer review came to. So I know the traffic stuff is confusing, but no, I answered your question very succinctly. No, we don't think that's what's going to happen at all.
Tell us about the peer review process, because I'm trying to find some traffic engineering expertise that's unbiased, that would represent the view of the people of Vista. So tell us about the peer review process.
Yeah, so the city hired one of our competitors, one of the, another consulting firm that does what we do to review our traffic study, in addition to your city traffic engineer. So they both looked at the traffic study and found it to be adequate.
So what was the opinion of the company that the city of Vista hired that's a traffic engineer with regard to this four-minute delay? Because this is a pretty important issue.
It was not, it was not a significant impact. It's not a significant impact according to Caltrans standards, according to City of San Diego standards, according to Vista standards. That's the conclusion they came to.
What's the, what's the amount of time that has to be added to access the freeway in order to constitute a significant impact?
Over 15 minutes.
Okay. So, boy, I wish we had the consultant that the city hired with regard to traffic engineering to give us their opinion on that. So, because that's kind of not a small thing, I mean. Ms. Chow, what do you think?
Councilmember Franklin, just allow me one second, four seconds here. John Connolly is here. He'd like to speak a few words on that, just for a minute. I think he may be able to be brought online here.
Okay. While we're getting John on the line, could I just hop forward to a second question? Ms. Valdez, I sent you an image, and I wondered if you could put that up on the screen for us.
When did you send it to me?
I emailed it to you a few minutes ago.
Oh, that will take me a few minutes to pull up and get on the screen.
We can do it after another round of questions. Essentially, I'll describe it in advance of being able to see it. Is Mr. Connolly with us?
Yes, I believe he is.
Yes, Councilman, I'm here. Can you hear me?
I am. Did you understand my question? I wanted to know what the traffic engineer hired by the city of Vista to represent a, you know, a competitive view of the traffic impact, you know, would be with regard to this four-minute addition to the time access to freeway.
So the traffic consultant that the city hires for third-party review is essentially tasked with making sure that the analysis is technically accurate, that the modeling is correct, and uses appropriate timing and makes appropriate assumptions. It's really a validation of the modeling and analysis that's done in the report. They don't necessarily look at the report to say, the city should be doing this or should be doing that. That's left to our traffic engineer to make recommendations of how we could improve traffic operations. Generally, with respect to Caltrans intersections, the analysis follows their protocol, which is what Mr. Borman mentioned. And we work with them on timing issues when there's problems at their intersections that are identified. So our traffic engineer will work with their engineer to try to optimize timing. If this project were to go into play, we would have to sit down with Caltrans again and try to look at timing issues with respect to the new improvements and adjust accordingly.
So, Mr. Connolly, is there any competing point of view that you have access to that's scientifically credible with regard to this four-minute delay to access the freeway?
We do not have a threshold of significance different from Caltrans, because it's their ramp. They control it. They determine what is significant and what is not. We have significant thresholds for our own intersections, which are included in the report. But we don't make determinations about their ramps since we don't control them. So four minutes is a four-minute delay. I mean, it's really up to the council to decide if you think that's okay or not. That's part of the project approval tonight, but the staff isn't making a recommendation.
No, I understand that, but it's a number of seconds with regard to intersections in the cities, in the city, is it not?
Correct. We follow a regional standard. Signalized roadway intersections are typically analyzed in a different manner and with different thresholds than the freeway ramps because of the way they're metered and the way they're loaded. I'm sure Mr. Borman can expand on that.
Okay, well, I understand Mr. Borman is in disagreement with the Caltrans model. So I'll move on, but. I would, if there's any more to be known about that, I'd be curious. Ms. Valdez, were you able to find that image that I sent you?
Sorry, I was muted. I thought, actually, I'll go back to the slide. It'll be clearer if I do it that way. So let me just.
Oh, no, what I sent you is not the slide.
It shows so.
It is not the slide. It is not the slide.
That's what it looks like.
It is not the slide.
While that's coming up, could I ask Mr. Borman if he can elaborate on a couple of issues that came up? More on this Caltrans, and also I wanted to comment on the intersection of Melrose and Hacienda.
I'd like to hear the rest of our council comments before we go back to other people.
Okay, I will pass for now, and when we come back to me, hopefully we can put that slide up. It's an alternate arrangement of the site, and I wanted to ask about the alternate arrangement.
Okay, I was going to go to Councilwoman Green next.
Okay, in regards to the four-minute delay on the Caltrans, I also saw that. And it kind of came to me as, this is a report based off what's going to be happening in 2030. And here in Deputy Mayor Rigby's speak before about forecasting what can happen in the future and theoreticals, I don't know that, you know, in 10 years from now, we won't be working better with Caltrans to get our ramps on and off better. So for me, that was something that I did read on page 55, and I didn't feel like it was a huge thing, because it gives us 10 years to actually address that before it gets to worst-case scenario. So maybe once we build it, there's an impact that progresses over a 10-year period to four minutes if worst-case scenario happens. So, you know, that traffic impact to me wasn't something that smashed me in the face, because it's something that is very far out from right now, and I do think that there's mitigation that can be done. Obviously, the way that the developer had to do the report was based off of the way that Caltrans allows us to mitigate that on and off ramp. So, you know, the worst-case scenario of adding four minutes in 10 years to an on-ramp at a peak time that you're already waiting, you know, five to six minutes on at a peak time to get on in eight or nine minutes in 10 years, I mean, to me, I would think the gradual increase wouldn't be that big of a focused impact personally. And I would also hope that we wouldn't get to that worst-case scenario on that particular on and off ramp. I do understand the community's concerns with the car wash. I am waiting to be sold on that car wash. I would love to hear from my whole council on that car wash particular thing. But the things that I do like about this project is that it does improve the roadways. That intersection between Hacienda, you know, Hacienda and Vista Village is super hectic getting off. In 28 seconds, getting off that freeway and onto Melrose is a huge benefit. and onto Melrose is a huge benefit, I would think, to our community as they're getting off the freeway. Also, that site's underused. I've lived in Vista my entire life. John Borman needs to mute his thing, by the way. John Borman, please mute your, your thing there. Appreciate that.
Yep.
But the other thing is, is that I've lived in Vista my entire life. This is an extremely underused site. It's been vacant pretty much forever. There were some cars that were stored on it through the Ford dealership. There's been some carnivals there over the years. But this is an ideal location for restaurants and for drive-throughs, in my opinion. You're not seeing sit-down restaurants go in on pads. We had a Famous Dave's that went out of business. We had a property zone for restaurant pads that the council prior to my election changed to apartments. Thinking that you're going to get sit-down restaurants in this location with the other sit-down restaurants going away and that model transforming into this drive-through model, I think it's extremely unrealistic. The other thing is, the additional jobs that this creates is huge. With the unemployment rate where it's at, having new businesses, hiring new people is an amazing benefit, in my opinion. So those are three things that I like about the project. I am not a huge fan by any means of the car wash. We do have 24 car washes in the area. I am not, you know, a market expert by any means, so I don't know what type of business they can handle. But at the same token, I definitely understand a humming refrigerator all night long does not sound good. My refrigerator's all the way on the other side of my house just so I don't have to hear it at night when I'm sleeping. So for me, the car wash is my biggest sticking point. The last thing I want to say is about the GHGs because one thing nobody has said is that, no matter what we put in here, it exceeds our GHGs with the exception of a park. We're not putting a park in this location. In my opinion, it's a horrible location for a park. We can speak to the council about that, but this is a good location for development. Office space gives us too many GHGs. Sit-down restaurants are going to give us too many GHGs. Apartments, all those things are going to release the greenhouse gases, and you have to have compensating factors in order to approve anything that's going to release those gases. And I don't see any project coming forward that is going to meet our cap, period. And you're going to have to make, you know, considerations based off of what SICA says that are overriding guidelines. So I am not opposed to this project 100%. I do not like having that vacant lot over there. I think it's an eyesore in the city of Vista and has for a lot of years, and it is a very underutilized property that could bring great things, great businesses to Vista. As a gentleman with four kids, I shop at every store. I go to every restaurant in this town. From a drive-through standpoint, I do have Cane's, I got Burger King, I got Jack in the Box, I got KFC, I got Taco Bell, right there on Vista Way. Having other options is great. You don't want to feed your family the same five drive-through options all the time. It's right off the freeway. It's a great location, and, you know, I want developers to bring projects that can benefit my whole community. So I do want to hear what my council members have to say. I would be, as of right now, I would approve the project minus the car wash, but if there's another arrangement that can help with noise, perhaps, but the 24 car wash thing has me, and the noise of the car wash kind of has me a little bit. So I would definitely like to hear, you know, anybody who supports this has any alternative comments. So that's that. Thank you so much.
I'm also, just, I want to state, the public hearing is still open. We didn't get a motion in a second on that, so just so you know, the public hearing is still open. So Councilmember Contreras, you're on.
Yeah, sure. I actually wanted to second Deputy Mayor Rigby's motion. You know, I'm going to go through some of the concerns. Deputy Mayor Rigby did already address the sales tax concern and double-dipping on, on some of these numbers. But I wanted to ask, kind of in line with that, the 62 new jobs, is that, is the Panera jobs, is that being included in the 62 new? Is this double-dipping numbers as well? Does anyone know? If no one knows, I don't think 62 new low-wage jobs is a huge benefit to our community. I want to address the term optimized queuing. Optimized queuing essentially means more idling. I don't think you can get around, around thinking about optimized queuing as just more idling. So, and when we talk about this project, I do have an issue talking about it as four drive-throughs and a car wash because the car wash does have the ability, obviously, for the cars to go in and get washed. And I know I've had to idle before when I'm waiting to, to use a car wash. So it really is five drive-throughs. I'm not aware, and this just could be lack of awareness, but I'm not aware of, of any other project that would be similar on about four acres with five drive-throughs. I don't know if anybody is aware of, of a project like that. And if you are, I would love to hear about where that project is so I could also take a look at it. As far as energy-reducing features, it's a little minimal. I mean, I don't see that, that these buildings are built passively, so I just don't think that that's going to get any kind of mitigation to the levels necessary that we're looking for here. I want to address something that hasn't been discussed. When I was driving around this project, I went from Hacienda to East Bellevue Drive and then ended up in Crestview. Knowing the way that Vistins are already sick of all the congestion here in their backyards, I 100% know that people are going to cut through from Crestview to Bellevue Drive and end up on Hacienda to make a right-hand turn into this, this project. So it's already really backed up over there with that three-way stop, so I anticipate that that area will also have an increase in congestion. I wanted to, I'm glad Deputy Mayor Rigby also brought up the freeway on and off ramps. I think that's really important. When, back when I used to work in Escondido, if I did not get to the light by about 5:55 a.m., it was just incredible traffic to try to get onto the freeway. And then you have, it's such a small amount, a distance, when you're trying to get onto the freeway and actually get into the freeway. And so I've seen a lot of near accidents there because it's so congested and people are trying to get off the freeway, people are trying to get on the freeway. So I think four minutes in 30 years, or in 2030, I mean, yeah, I understand it's a time delay. But that's, I mean, this is like, this project seems like it's 50% of that time delay. So that, that's, that's a significant amount of greenhouse gases in the idling there. And I think in the future, I mean, we're coming up to discussing our new climate action plan, and that should be happening, you know, relatively soon. If the council continues to allow projects like this to move forward, I don't think it's fair for our future businesses that want to build here in Vista because we're, the piece of the pie that we're trying to, you know, reduce our greenhouse gases by X amount, that reduction continues to go up, right? As time goes by, like, we have to, by the state of California, reduce the amount of greenhouse gas emissions. So I, I would see, in my mind, it makes sense that if we approve projects like this, then it's going to make it a little bit more difficult in the future for businesses to, to put forward some other plans. So I think that it's, right now, it's important for the council to, to be a little bit more conservative as far as the types of special uses that, that we're allowing and the amount of greenhouse gas emissions that will be generated. Because I don't think it's fair to future businesses if they have to, you know, radically change the way that they exist simply because right now, we're approving projects that don't meet our own guidelines. So that's, that's pretty much all my comments. But again, I second Deputy Mayor Rigby's motion.
Okay, I'll make a few comments, then we can go. Oh, is that okay if I talk first, Deputy Mayor? I was, I was just going to say that, you know, drive-throughs didn't used to be allowed. Through past councils, they weren't allowed here in Vista. For some reason, the, the past councils didn't, didn't want to, but it's kind of a, a new normal. I, I think it's kind of a new normal because, I mean, I, the other day, I went through Cane's, and I idled for like about 40 minutes to get chicken. And then I went, the last week, I went through In-N-Out, and I idled around there for more than a half an hour. The new normal is families and people going to drive-throughs. And so the more drive-throughs, the less idling, I would think, it'd be the less people, they, they would pass them through quicker and the different, the different things. So, and I know Starbucks is now doing a new type of restaurant. They, I saw on the news, I think they said they're going to do 600 different type of restaurants that are going to be drive-through only, like you order, they're order-only, and you drive-through only. There's no, no inside seating, and I don't know what kind this one would be. But I just thought I'd say that. And actually, St. Marcos has several drive-throughs. My family's gone there several times because you can go in the shopping center, and they have several drive-throughs, and you could, and my, my kids will go one place, and somebody else will go another place, and we'll get, we'll get our food to different restaurants. So, and they're all right there together. So I don't have a problem with the restaurants. The, the car wash, it may be if they would be willing to pull the car wash out. The car wash, we don't get sales tax from the car wash, and that seems to be one of the big issues. So I guess that's kind of right now where I stand on this. But I was looking at the, you know, the overriding considerations, you know, and I, you know, it says the project would provide additional employment opportunities. It does. It doesn't say how many. Project would provide additional tax revenue to the city. It would. Doesn't say, you know, doesn't give us how much we'd have to consider. It would improve an underused site, which I definitely agree with that. It would shield existing residences from the noise on the 78. It would most likely do that. It would promote smart growth concepts and would improve the roadways. I don't know, improving the roadways is, if the lights improve those intersections, then I would say that that would go also. So I think that there are overriding considerations that we could improve, approve, like, the restaurants themselves. So that, that's kind of where I stand on this. So I will go back, and I think Deputy Mayor wanted to talk again.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm still stuck on a couple of the issues, but the, the traffic. And in our staff report, it quite clearly says, now, it doesn't add the Caltrans comment. It just says Caltrans commented, so I don't know if that was the letter that was written, which is not included in our packet. But it says, "The project would contribute to SR 78 ramp delays by year 2030 by adding six minutes in the morning peak hours for Vista Village Drive and eight minutes in the morning and two minutes in the afternoon on Vista Village Drive on the eastbound." So where they're talking about four minutes currently, that's, that's not here. And the person that spoke was not somebody from Caltrans, was not... So, so there's a disconnect here for me, and that's an issue for me. And also, when you're looking at eight minutes by year 2030, okay, so by the year 2030, you're stuck in eight minutes. By the year 2021, 2022, a year and a half away when this project is completed, how many minutes are you now? Because it's not going to be zero to eight like that in 2030. You're going to be increasing that as you go through time. So you are still going to be seeing some delays in these areas happening as soon as this is built. So you can't, I don't think we can dismiss that. And it was already brought up by several of our, of our community members who took part in the discussions and town hall meetings that we had when we were talking about our zoning, in our general plan amendment, general plan, and then our zoning. So our community has already come out and said what they wanted, and we will be revisiting those in the next couple of years. So I think it's important to, to hear what some people have to say on that. But I, I think when you talk about the traffic, yes, those two lights, as I said, might have some, some mitigating factors with that, but you're pushing traffic out on the arterial this direction and both directions, and that was not addressed satisfactorily for me, in any case. And, and one of the things that I have talked about for a long time is foreseeable consequences and what is the vision for our city. Our residents have spoken quite clearly in this area, and the damage with the light pollution, the noise pollution, and the greenhouse gas emissions that are not able to be mitigated down to our standards. How, how detrimental the impact for all of those would be on this community and these families cannot be dismissed. And we have to have a vision. It's our job to look at the future of the city and the future of the neighborhoods and the future of these kids. And, and I think that we really should take a hard look at this. And the fact that there's a discrepancy between what we're being told here and what was given to staff to put in the staff report, where did this come from? I have no idea. That, that gives me a little bit of heart, heartburn in that respect. And I really do think the car wash, to me, is a non-starter anyway. And it said here on the slide, "Reduced footprint alternative in the EIR was the superior environmental alternative, and it met the city's general plan objectives, but not the applicant's objectives for all four drive-throughs." And I appreciate that Sun Road and the applicant has objectives, but so do we as a city, and so do our residents as Vistins. We have, we have objectives and we have responsibilities. And to me, this violates the responsibility to our community. So for me, the, the car wash is an absolute non-starter. And I, and why the car wash is on the side closest to the neighborhood instead of on the side closest to the freeway, I don't know why that footprint couldn't have, that switch could have been made. And I know it was discussed on some level, but it was not made. And I don't understand why it couldn't, couldn't be moved over to the other side. And if it were moved to the other side, how would that mitigate some of the, the noise from the car wash over there, which does not mitigate the light problem or the greenhouse gas emissions problem? So I just think there are still questions on this project, and I would not like to see it go through right now in this iteration. I think caution is the better part of valor for our community when we're trying to forecast, create something that will be here for decades. And I, I know that people say this is an, is an eyesore. It's been an empty lot for a really long time, and it has been. It's not an overgrown, all the time, the fence around it collects trash, but we go out and we pick that up. Caltrans comes out, picks that up. And, and I am of the mindset, and I hear the same thing from the, from the community, that just because it's open space doesn't mean we have to build anything. We can take our time to find the right thing. Now, how many things have come at us, come before City Council for this piece of property that's been vacant for so long? I don't know how many have come before us. I don't recall having anything in recent history come before us to talk about this, this property. So I, along with the community, the surrounding community, am willing to wait, and you've heard me say this about other things as well. Just because it's empty doesn't mean we have to build the first thing that comes along, and we're willing to wait for the right project to come along that will actually benefit the community and not have to explain away the negative impact and apologize for the negative impact that outweighs any benefit to this particular neighborhood and this community. So I guess I will leave it at that, and in my motion, I will include, I move to close the public hearing and deny this appeal. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay, I'll see if anybody else wants to talk, but just on one thing, on the Caltrans thing, like, that's, 2030 is like 10 years out, and by then, we're supposed to have an extra lane on the 78. And I don't know if that would make a difference if Caltrans figuring, if they, you know, that there won't be one, or if they're, I mean, I don't know how, whether, how they're figuring that, that, that timing of that. So I would want to know more about that.
But, you know, we talk about, like, several people said, "When I moved here, the traffic was this, and the traffic just gets worse and worse and worse and..." the traffic was this, and the traffic just gets worse and worse and worse and worse. And here, we know it's going to get worse, and we're banking on some future thing to happen that will take care of the mess we made here now. I don't think that's fair to the community to think that something in the future is gonna mitigate the damage that we caused today and we're stuck with the damage. And we don't know for a fact that Cal, that Sandag is going to build, Caltrans is gonna build on the seventy-eight, because goodness gracious, they've been promising that to us for a really long time and it hasn't happened yet. So I don't take that to the bank on any level. So anyway, I'm, I'm sorry, I know Councilmember Contreras is waiting to speak.
Let's remember Contreras.
I, you know, I just wanted to reiterate, but Deputy Mayor Rigby said, Sandag doesn't even have money. So I mean, I don't understand how they're gonna be building a whole new lane on the seventy-eight. So, and that doesn't even, the, the one additional lane does even, California greenhouse gas emission reduction. So, you know, I know we're banking on getting matching funds, but that's not gonna happen with a plan that doesn't meet federal or state greenhouse gas emission reduction. So I really think it's a, it is a huge issue. I mean, a lot of people use Vista Village to, to get on the freeway and to get off the freeway, and I'm one of them, and it is atrocious. So I, I just don't think that, really, when I look at these overriding considerations, I mean, they're not, they, they don't justify the impact that this development's gonna have. So that's, that's just the end. And again, I second Council, Deputy Mayor's motion, including the, the amendment to it.
Councilmember Green.
I just had a question, Madam Mayor, maybe you can let me know. As opposed to voting to deny the project, is it possible to offer an amended motion to approve the project minus the car wash? And, you know, talk about, maybe have the developer talk about what type of impact that would have on our GHGs, our traffic? I mean, I'm assuming maybe getting that out might help the traffic, but I don't know if we vote on denying first and then if it doesn't go through, then another amended motion or kind of how that works. So I'm kind of asking for guidance here.
Well, maybe we can hear, maybe we can hear from the developer right now and hear from their response to some of the things that we've, that everybody's brought up. And then, and then that would be time maybe to, to see what they say about it.
I had a couple more questions as well.
Oh, I'm sorry, Councilmember Franklin.
Councilman Green, are you done? Okay. With regard to that eight-minute, what's the present impact of the project once it's built as supposed to be? In other words, is the anticipation that because of population growth, there's gonna be twice as many people patronizing the center and that's why it gets bigger in ten years? But what's the, what's the present-day impact on that accessing the freeway supposed to be?
Councilperson Franklin, this is Lisa Gordon speaking. I would like the opportunity to answer and comment on a lot of questions and a lot of comments that came up. So I would like to turn the speaker over to John Borman, which is our traffic engineer. There were a number of issues that came up that I'd like him to comment on. Obviously, the Caltrans issue, the Madigal, whether that's going to open again, the traffic east-west. So John's going to speak to those issues and give you some comfort on those. John?
Yes, can you hear me okay?
Yes, I hear you.
Good, good. So before I get to the ramp meter issue, which has been the main thing we've talked about, I do want to say that it was brought up that we were gonna lose a lane on Hacienda to put the new lanes in, which is not the case. So when we get the, when we put the triple L's in at Melrose, for instance, the third left turn lane, we still have two westbound through lanes at that intersection. So there is no, no loss of any, of any lanes when we put, through, through restriping, not through losing a lane to get the new lanes in. That's important. So back, so to the ramp meter question, Mr. Franklin asked a couple of good questions I'm gonna touch on. First of all, Caltrans did write a letter and, but the deltas that they mentioned, the, the change in, in minutes, they just misread our tables. So what the tables do show in the long term is a four-minute increase. When we're, the twenty-thirty width project is the six and eight minutes, but that doesn't, that's, the delta is still the four minutes in both the morning and the afternoon. That's what the report says. The near-term delay increase is, in minutes, is zero actually. And that is because the volume getting on the freeway is less than the discharge rate that the meter allows to get on, if that makes sense. So you have the demand to get on the freeway, what that volume is, and then how much volume per hour that the ramp meter allows you to get on. So we have a bunch of tables in our analysis, and all the near-term ramp meter analysis shows zero increase, zero minute increase.
What's, what's the primary factor causing the increase from zero impact to four minutes over the next ten years?
Yep, I was gonna get to that, and that is, what, the way this analysis is forced to be done is we, we assume an almost thirty percent increase in demand to get on the freeway, but no increase at all in the ramp meter discharge rate. So the rate to get on the freeway stays the same, but the volume without the project goes up by twenty-seven percent, actually. So that's why you have the big difference between now and 2030 is because of the assumptions that we're forced to, to utilize, which really aren't realistic, but it's, it's the way it's done. The last thing I'll say is, on September, by September fifteenth, this analysis goes away entirely. This is not an analysis we do in too many of our traffic studies, we do do it in some, and, but it, it goes away. It's antiquated, as I said, and it's, it's in the new Caltrans guidelines that, that are outdraft right now, and we've commented on them as a company, and they become official in September. This analysis is not required at all for what it's worth. So that's what I would say about that. Hopefully that makes it a little more clear.
That is helpful, I appreciate that. Okay, now I wanted to go, if Ms. Valdez could bring up this slide, that's called the wall slide. Ms. Valdez, do you have those two images ready?
All right, user error, give me just a minute.
So the, the two images that I'd like to discuss, one is a wall that the applicant has proposed to build in front of the car wash in its present arrangement. That would be a sound barrier to further minimize the, the sound. Here it is right here in the, in the red sort of hash marks. And the, the applicant wanted us to know that, and, and please feel free to speak to it, Lisa.
Thank you, Councilperson Green, yes. The exhibit that you see is a sign, obviously. There's an ability to put a sound wall at the right word start on the red, it's the exit to the car wash. And it would provide a, certainly a visual barrier to that exit where those cars come out, where those blowers are. I, I do want to point out that there was a comment about the refrigerator humming all night, and just to make sure that we all understand that we're seeking to reduce the hours of operation and this operator would quit working at HPM. So you wouldn't have this noise at night. This wall would be available for us to be able to put in. It's similar to the wall that you saw at the East Vista Way car wash, although this one is designed into the landscaping, it would be a very attractive-looking wall, it wouldn't be an afterthought.
Okay, and Ms. Valdez, I wonder if you could share the other slide, I sent you a higher-resolution one. Okay, so this is, as you can see, this is not the original slide number five. I took the liberty of editing this image a little bit. I did not change the size or scale of any of the items in the image at all. Every item here, I broke it into about five or six elements from pads three, four, and five, to the queue that serves pad five, to the drainage culvert, the additional parking for pad site four. All of those items fit. What you'd have to do is you'd have to have an entry-only queue lane, which you've already got people entering the car wash there on that smataball, right? You've already got people entering the, the wash there, so why not make that an entry-only queue lane? And then you could put, you know, an entry and an exit, again with the right turn only for the two drive-throughs. I mean, the reality is, it does all fit in the picture, so why wouldn't it fit on the site?
Councilperson Franklin, may I, may I comment on this?
Please.
Thank you for putting this up. I, I do want to have Keith Pittsford, our planner and architect, who worked on the queuing and the site layout, give you a little bit of background, and he can comment on the reasons that this would actually be very difficult to achieve. And he can walk us through how we got to where we are, and I'll turn it over to Keith. Keith, are you available? You're on mute, can you unmute?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, thank, thank you, Madam Mayor and Councilman Franklin.
Keith, are you able to see the, the visual?
Yes, I am.
Okay, thank you.
I'm getting a little feedback. But we took a lot of care.
Lisa, why don't you and I both mute if we can? That way he doesn't get the feedback.
We took a lot of care in the design of this, and this project is very small with fixed access points. And the public views are very important to these retail tenants. So I understand what you're trying to do. And we looked at the western portion and the northeastern portion, where you have this, and the southeastern portion, where you, where it, we wound up. So the difficulty is that the footprint of this car wash is equal to more than the two pads that you're illustrating there, because there is queuing and vacuums. So what you're asking to do is drive through the vacuum space, and you've eliminated one of the release valves for traffic on the east. So it would become a traffic nightmare.
Okay. All right, well, I just wanted to ask if this configuration had been considered.
Yes.
And there's some additional challenges, like reconfiguring or redoing the environmental impact review as well of a reconfiguration. So my question is, if we were to allow you to move forward without the car wash, what would, what would happen to the, to that space that the car wash is proposed on?
Lisa, do you want to answer that?
Thank, thank you, Keith. Thank you, Councilperson. We obviously believe in this car wash, we believe in all of the uses that we have. We've done extensive studies, our vendors, our proposed operators are professional operations, many national, they've done their, their own analysis. So I just want you to be comfortable that the uses for this project are viable and feasible, and they also wouldn't necessarily close any other operators. If, and these are business plans for our, our tenants, so we can't comment and we don't have the business plans for all of these tenants. But if any of these operators were to relocate to this community, we would assume, and I believe that we could have any municipal analyst confirm, that other uses would go into any of these spaces that would be vacated elsewhere around the, the community. So you wouldn't have a, a net type of situation for the, the tax revenues. You would have uses in any other spaces. So I just wanted to, to comment on that. But I also want to comment that, you know, retail's not a feasible opportunity for us, really. We've, we have limited retail opportunities, we don't want any more sale. If the car wash was to be eliminated, we would have to determine a usable, something that's feasible, that's actually going to replace that site. And we know that office is not feasible, we have a seventeen-and-a-half percent vacancy rate in, in Vista and San Marcos. So the, the question would be, you know, we'd need to come up with a very viable use for that site. I, I do want to talk a little bit, if you have any other questions, or did you have any other questions on that issue?
No, I, I don't have any other questions on the subject of rearrangement of the site.
Okay, all right. We, we do have comments that we can make on the noise.
Yeah, I, I would like to hear, because I'm not sure I heard you discuss, there were concerns about the noise that came up with the planning commission. I understand conversations that I had with your representative, that you've taken some steps to ameliorate those concerns.
Yes, that's correct. And we have our, our noise specialist that's here with us tonight, Joanne Dranko from Helix. Helix did the original noise analysis that was in the EIR, and I believe that she's here to comment and help us with our, with our questions and our answers. So I would turn that over to Joanne.
And we have a little bit of. Unmute, there we go. Emma, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. So, yes, so I can answer, I can address some of, there were several questions. So the first point I wanted to make was that even as analyzed in the EIR, the project was in compliance, it's in compliance with the city's noise ordinance. And then, so, but even with that in mind, the car wash operator voluntarily offered up upgraded equipment, so, and we did an analysis on that equipment and found that with the upgraded equipment for the vacuums and the car wash blowers, that the noise would be essentially twice as quiet. So that is going to be a vast improvement to address the question regarding the house on the east side. Noise is primarily a directional, the way that it moves. So the car wash blowers are on the west side of the car wash, and so we were focusing on the residences that would be most affected by that. The residents on the east would not be subject to as noisy of, of the, as much noise from the blowers, because there would be attenuation provided by the car wash building itself and, and distance itself. And again, the, the noise level would be in compliance with the city's ordinance. And again, the noise level would be in compliance with the city's ordinance. Regarding the refrigerator, I mean, that's just a comparison to kind of make it more accessible what these noise levels mean. And again, Lisa mentioned it would be shut off at eight o'clock, so it wouldn't be on all night. And again, these are exterior noise levels, so if you were inside, the noise level would be even lower. One thing I was, that if there's still some hesitation about the car wash noise, it could be possible, it's, noise can be measured, so if there's any doubt, it could be something that the council conditions that a noise measurement be conducted, once the equipment is there, to just demonstrate that the noise levels are in compliance with the city's ordinance. Oh, and regarding the noise wall, yes, that is being proposed. That would also provide an additional attenuation for the noise levels, but you're getting the greatest noise level reduction from the improved equipment. Have all your questions, Councilmember Franklin? Is that all your, are your questions answered?
For the moment.
Okay. And Lisa, did you, are there anything else that you wanted to, information that you wanted to give us?
Thank you, Mayor Ritter. I wanted to thank everybody for their comments tonight, it was a great conversation, and I appreciate that even though we feel that the car wash is a viable use, that it is the wave of the future, and that it won't be a noise issue, I would like to say that if it is, if it is important, and the council feels that it is not an appropriate use in this particular plaza, we would be prepared to eliminate it. I would urge you to consider keeping it, but I want you to understand that we hear you.
Okay.
Looks like Councilman Green wants to say something, Madam Mayor.
Oh, Councilmember Green, sorry.
I'm sorry, Madam Mayor, I was just saying, with that said, I read a lot of emails, I got a lot of, you know, emails like I know all you did, a lot of community concern, tons about the car wash. Twenty-four car washes wasn't no, no deal for the community as a whole, from all areas of the community. And I hear all the noise mitigation and the possible rearrangement, but it sounds like rearranging doesn't work, it's got to be right there, it's not working. And for me, I'm a no-go on it. But as opposed to deny this project as a whole, I think that the restaurants coming in is a good benefit for the community. I like the traffic improvements, I'm not scared of the Sandag, or the Caltrans report, rather. I feel like within 10 years, we're going to be able to either mitigate that, or it's not going to be a direct effect from this project. So with that said, I would offer an alternative motion to approve the project and approve their appeal while removing the car wash. That's it.
I would second your motion.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor. Couple of comments. First, I think when they did their traffic study, whatever this company was that did the traffic study, or Caltrans that made the comment, they take into consideration future work, future technology, future goals on the freeway, et cetera. I don't think it was just a blind, if you have 10,000 cars, by 2030, you're going to have this. I like to think that they are professional enough and knowledgeable enough to take into consideration, if they're going to put a date out there, they're taking all aspects of this project, and cars and traffic, and in future mitigation and things that we're working on to get to a certain point. I think they are knowledgeable enough to take that all into consideration, and I don't, I don't as easily dismiss that. And then the question, and I only bring this up because Ms. Gordon asserted this, and I just want to ask a question. Four of the pads for the drive-through are two existing businesses that are just going to be relocating. But you had made the comment in your comments a minute ago, that it wasn't going to be a loss, that those pads, you know, that will become empty, will have somebody in them. So my question is, for you to make that kind of a comment, is your company working with anybody to find businesses to take over those empty spaces?
Thank you, Councilperson Rigby. I just want to clarify your question. Are you asking if we're going to, if there was a, let me back up. If there was a vacancy that was created somewhere else in the city, are you asking me if we would personally ensure that we would try to backfill that vacancy, or are we referring to our site? I'm sorry.
No, I guess I'm asking for you to clarify your comment that you made a couple of minutes ago to one of the other council members. When you made a comment that with the other two, Panera and Starbucks relocating to this site, doesn't necessarily mean that we're going to have two other places empty, as was asserted, you know, that's just a wash, you're taking two existing businesses and you're moving them over here, so it's not creating four new businesses. But then you made the comment that just because those places will be empty, doesn't mean that there won't, something else won't go there. You made the comment that something else will go there, so in reality, these would be additional businesses. So I just wanted to know, are you just saying that because you think that somebody will take over those spaces eventually, or is that something that your company is working on to actively, actively working on to see that those retail spaces do actually end up being leased out again, once the Panera and Starbucks move out? I mean, you made the comment, so I thought it might be based on something.
So, thank you for that clarification. So just a little bit more on the municipal calculations that are done. The company that we hired to do the calculations as to the tax revenue and the jobs, they used some standard assumptions. And in this particular case, we don't know the business plans for Starbucks or Panera. It's, and they have not identified one way or another what their business plans are. And business plans change, COVID's changed everything, so we can't say that they are moving, we can't say that they are not. I, what I was trying to say, it's reasonable to assume that, as there's movement within the tenant space, within any city, that there's going to be change, and there's going to be backfilled spaces as people move around. It's a reasonable assumption. I don't have any inside information about them moving, so I don't have any inside information about someone taking a place that they may or may not move from. But we also have to take into consideration that different operators in different locations have different revenues, and they generate different revenues. So it would be presumptive of me to say that the Panera on the north side of the freeway would be generating the exact same amount of revenue that the Panera on the south side of the freeway would be generating. I wouldn't be able to say that. So you really can't do that math to say that it would be a net, a net loss or a net gain when you figure out the revenues.
Understood, thank you for that.
I didn't need to provide that inside information on, you know, working with those other spaces offsite, I don't. I was just saying, it's reasonable to assume those things.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that. And, Madam Mayor, I understand that Councilman Green wanted to make an amendment to my motion, I'm not open to that. I'd like an up or down vote on my motion as it stands, and I think maybe the city attorney can address that.
I, I don't know, but I, he made, he made a...
I made a substitute motion.
A substitute motion, right.
So the substitute motion would be voted on first. I would say with respect to the substitute motion, however, by eliminating the car wash, I wonder if Mr. Connolly could adapt the statement of overriding considerations to account for the fact that that will no longer be in the project. Mr. Connolly, could you address that?
Yeah, the statement of overriding considerations that was prepared and in the packet included some assumptions for the car wash that would have to be amended. I prepared some analysis earlier this afternoon that was provided to the city attorney. It could be substituted for the statement of overriding considerations that was presented in the packet. It assumes that the car wash should be removed, but that the four drive-throughs would remain.
Does, the attorney, would he have to read that, then? That overriding, the new thing?
Mr. Connolly could read the adjustments, I believe he just made a couple of red line adjustments.
That's correct, I could do that. Sorry, I'm just getting my copy here.
Madam Mayor, if I may ask, I just want to make sure that when you, what you're saying is that even with the car wash gone, there still are enough overriding factors, per se.
Yes, it's just simply a question of eliminating that language from the statement.
Okay.
So the adjustment would be in number one, it identified that the project would add 62 permanent full-time jobs, that would just be changed to 60, because the car wash would only provide two full-time equivalent jobs. And in number two, the assumptions for property tax would be changed from 21,700 to 17,300 per year, just eliminates the evaluation of the car wash. And the vehicle license fee number would go from 3,200 down to 13,700, so the total city annual revenue that's assumed in the statement without the car wash would be about $150,000 a year. And then in number three, it references the car wash with respect to improving an under-used site, and we would just remove the car wash language to state it would include retail and restaurant buildings. Those are all the changes. Thank you.
Councilmember Green, if your motion, it should include those adjustments to the statement of overriding considerations, and also, I believe, close the public hearing.
For sure. So yes, I'd like to have those considerations added, and I would also like to add to close the public hearing to my motion. Thank you.
And my second will approve those. So, are we ready to cast our votes? Okay, if you please state your vote when I call your name, Mayor Ritter?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rigby?
No.
Councilmember Franklin?
Aye.
Councilmember Green?
Aye.
Councilmember Contreras?
Absolutely no.
Item passes to 3-2 with Councilmember Contreras and Deputy Mayor Rigby opposing. Okay, thank you, everybody, for that long, long hearing that we had. With that, let's see where we are. We have to hold on around a second, public hearing, I have to find my paperwork, which is buried here. Public hearing number two. The next public hearing is to receive testimony regarding regulatory inspection and financial audit program fees for cannabis businesses. So the public hearing is now open. Our Assistant City Manager, Ellie Zimmerman, will be providing the staff report. If any members of the public wish to speak on this item, they may indicate so by using the raise hand feature, or by pressing star nine now. Speakers will be called upon after the staff presentation.
Thank you, Mayor, can you hear me okay? Mayor, can you hear me all right? Thank you. So, good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. Kathy, if you can go to the next slide. This is a public hearing to consider cannabis businesses' regulatory inspection and financial audit program fees. As you know, Measure Z was approved by the voters in 2018, and permits up to 11 medical cannabis retailers to operate in the city. Subsequently, in 2019, the city council adopted ordinances authorizing new cannabis uses. Both Measure Z and the city council enacted cannabis ordinances require each business to undergo an annual financial audit. In addition, for the city council's direction in August and December of 2019, the city council authorized uses and any Measure Z-approved business that elects to implement a delivery program are subject to quarterly regulatory inspections. This public hearing is to establish a cannabis operator permitting fee structure to recover all costs associated with the annual financial audit and quarterly regulatory inspection program. Next slide, Kathy. As this new, as this is a new program for city staff, we engage the services of HGL companies to conduct a FEED study that would recover the total burden cost. HGL is a statewide tax consulting firm who is currently providing services related to cannabis programs to local governments in California, Colorado, and Nevada, and they have direct experience establishing and implementing cannabis regulatory programs. The consultant interviewed city and sheriff's department staff to identify roles and functions for all involved personnel, and based on those discussions, a cost recovery study was completed. The study is designed to ensure that the city is 100% reimbursed for staff time, consultant fees, and other expenses. The FEED study is included in your agenda packet as exhibit two. The individual functions which are identified on this slide will be consolidated into a cannabis management program that will be coordinated by the city manager's office. Next slide, Kathy. This slide shows the same activities as identified on the prior slide, but by hours, total staff hours for each permutee, and this was identified, again, by the consultant based on staff interviews, and based on the consultant's subject matter expertise in implementing similar programs in other jurisdictions. The total hours multiplied by the personnel costs associated have resulted in a proposed cannabis retailer, business operator annual permit fee of 23,000. This base fee would be for any of the Measure Z-approved retailers that do not obtain a delivery permit. For all other cannabis operators, this includes Measure Z retail with delivery, the manufacturing and distribution and testing functions that were authorized by the city council, the proposed fee for those businesses, as they do include the quarterly regulatory inspections, would be 28,000. The COVID-19 public health emergency has delayed and deferred many of our city functions, and so depending on when the city is able to formally implement the cannabis management program, the fee may be prorated in the first year. The staff conducted a comparison of annual cannabis management program fees in other jurisdictions in the state, and we found that the proposed fees in Vista are in line with other fees based on population for each jurisdiction. Larger cities, such as Sacramento, Oakland, and Modesto, each more than, between 200,000 and 500,000 in population, are charging annual fees ranging between 15,000 and 22,000. Cities of similar size to Vista, specifically the city of Reading and the city of Redwood City, are charging 28,000 and 29,500, respectively. In smaller cities, a few that were under 40,000 or even smaller in population, their fees range at a low end of about 30,000 per permutee per year to much higher, depending on the location. However, because this is a new program and fee, staff intends to track the hours spent on each permit, and over the course of the next 12 to 18 months, if we identify any major anomalies in how many hours staff is spending, we will return to the city council with a recommended modification to the schedule. Next slide. In conclusion, staff recommends the city council close the public hearing and adopt the following fees: the cannabis retail without delivery business operator fee of 23,000, and the cannabis business operator permit of 28,000. This completes my presentation, I'm available to answer questions. Thank you.
Okay, so let's see, we have, I'll start with, I guess, my council, and see if they have any questions. So, Councilmember Franklin, do you have any questions or comments?
I'd like to hear from the public first.
If you all want to hear from the public, shake your heads, and then I won't go through all of your names, yes. Okay, okay. Okay, then, City Clerk Valdez, do we have any members of the public that wish to speak on this item?
Yes, looks like so far I have one person identified as Rap, so I'll go ahead and bring Rap in. So if you'd please state your name and spell it, and then I will start your two minutes.
My name is Becky Rap, B-E-C-K-Y-R-A-P-P.
Thank you.
I am a parent and community member representing the parent community who are deeply concerned with the negative impacts of marijuana dispensaries in our community, and especially on our youth. We thank you for discussing regulatory processing fees and financial audit permit fees for marijuana businesses in Vista. Increasing fees can be a crucial part in educating and protecting our community. Perhaps money collected through fees for marijuana businesses could be spent on a comprehensive education program for teens. It is only fair that marijuana businesses that advertise and commercialize marijuana use be required to pay tax or fee equal to the consequences that follow. We have learned that smoking and vaping have many negative We have learned that smoking and vaping have many negative effects on respiratory health. Evidence is now showing that those who smoke marijuana have a greater risk for negative side effects with COVID-19. There's no better time to allocate funds towards education. As a parent, we hope that all work together to make sure our youth know that the City Council does not support or endorse marijuana use by teens. Thank you.
Next, we have Kelly McCormick. Go ahead, Kelly.
Hello, Mayor and City Council members. Thank you for considering the cost to taxpayers and public safety in determining the proposed fee structure for marijuana businesses. Regulatory inspections and financial audits are absolutely necessary since we know that track and trace systems are not reliable and pot businesses operate with large amounts of cash, making it easier to conceal transactions. You have demonstrated the need for higher fees by detailing the staff time, consultant fees, and other expenses necessary to carry out this work. According to the staff report, the evaluation and investigation of complaints should be one of the city's highest priorities. Vista's residents and business operators deserve your commitment on this. Cities like San Diego have faced numerous complaints about pot retailers and manufacturers, including illegal signage, unpermitted construction, and noxious fumes. Of course, one of the biggest concerns to families and those who care about youth is the illegal sale of marijuana to teenagers. It's nearly impossible to know if this is happening without undercover decoy operations in both retail and delivery settings. The marijuana industry is known for aggressively pushing boundaries. The city must have the tools to push back when necessary. Thank you for your time.
Looks like that's it for public comments. We'll go ahead and end the public comment opportunity at this time.
Okay, then we will go to our council members. Councilmember Franklin, do you have any additional comments?
I just want to thank the staff for their good work in compiling the actual costs as required by law for recovery of our staff time and cost to the city for these fees. This is part of implementing our new regulatory structure. So with that, I would make a motion to adopt the item as proposed by staff and close the public hearing.
Okay, Deputy Mayor Rigby?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Also, I want to say thank you to staff for this report. I appreciate it very much. I know a lot of work went into it, and I would second the motion. Thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Green?
I have no comments.
Councilmember Contreras? No comments?
No comment, no.
Okay.
Thank you, though.
So we have, excuse me, motion by Franklin, a second by Deputy Mayor Rigby. So Clerk Valdez, please conduct our roll call vote.
Thank you, Mayor. Please state your vote when I call your name. Mayor Ritter?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rigby?
Aye.
Councilmember Franklin?
Aye.
Councilmember Green?
Aye.
Councilmember Contreras?
Aye.
Item passes unanimously.
Okay, that takes us to our third public hearing. The final public hearing is to receive testimony regarding the application for and receipt of Senate Bill 2, Permanent Local Housing Allocation Funds. The public hearing is now open. Housing Manager Sylvia Solis Daniels will be providing the staff report. If any members of the public wish to speak on this item, they may indicate so by using the raise hand feature or pressing star nine now. Speakers will be called upon after the staff presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. On June 14, 2020, the city opened a 10-day public review of the Permanent Local Housing Allocation Plan. This is also known as the PHLA Plan. This was identified as SB 2 funds in our strategic plan to address homelessness. This hearing closes the public review of the plan. Funds for the plan derive from a Notice of Funding Availability, also known as ANOFA, issued by the California Department of Housing and Community Development. The NOFA is noncompetitive, but does require that the city conduct a public hearing for the five-year plan, which identifies the activities the city will fund with PLHA dollars over a five-year period. The city's current fiscal allocation is $408,882, and the estimated five-year allocation is $2,450,292. The allocation is notably more than what was identified in the strategic plan to address homelessness, which will allow the city to rely less on our affordable housing funds. However, the actual allocation will fluctuate based on the collection of real estate recording fees. Staff recommends utilizing the PLHA funds for some of the programs identified in the strategic plan to address homelessness, including the Shelter Bed Network Program, Home Share Coordination, and the Social Worker Program. Staff recommends that the City Council approve the five-year PLHA application, and if approved, the application will be submitted to HCD. This concludes my presentation. I am available for questions. Thank you.
Hey, I'm guessing that you'd rather hear from the public first, like my council. They're shaking hands, yes, they're shaking. Okay, so City Clerk Valdez, do we have any members of the public that wish to speak on this item?
We have one. I apologize if I say your last name incorrectly. It's Naomi Antetnnerly. Oh, actually, it looks like we have a problem. Naomi, if you can call in instead. I'm unable to have you speak through this. So maybe we can have the council comments first, and then we'll ask Naomi to try to call in.
Okay, Deputy Mayor Rigby?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you for that presentation. I think I'm totally in favor of this allocation, and I'm really happy. I mean, you know, it's sad, you know, how some of these things come about, but I'm glad that we're going to be having some funding to go to these programs and that this will definitely be a benefit to our community and to our community members who are in need. So I am absolutely in favor of this, and with that, I would move that we close the public hearing and adopt the resolution.
Councilmember Contreras?
I second that motion. Not too many comments. You know, I think, I want to just say to staff, thank you so much for all the hard work that you do. I know it's not easy to disperse these funds and figure out, you know, the best way to do it that's going to have the biggest impact for our community, but somehow you all always end up doing that. So thank you so much.
Councilmember Green?
I have no comments. Great job, staff.
Councilmember Franklin?
I'm glad that we found a new source of funding to reduce the burden for some of these programs that we've worked together to create, and so I would add my support to the motion.
So we'll go back to, so we'll go back to our public speakers, the one that we...
Let me see if we can get her on. Yeah, it's not letting me bring her on. I don't see that she's been able to call in, so I apologize for that, but we're unable to hear her.
So, not at all?
But, hold on, let me try it one more time. Hold on. It's like she just came back. Nope, still says unable to connect. Yep, I'm sorry, we're unable to bring her in.
Then I guess we'll have our, we'll conduct the roll call vote.
Okay. Please state your vote when I call your name. Mayor Ritter?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rigby?
Aye.
Councilmember Franklin?
Aye.
Councilmember Green?
Aye.
Councilmember Contreras?
Aye.
The item passes unanimously.
Okay, our council's requested just a quick break before we go into our discussion items, if that will be okay. So, what, five minutes, maybe? Is that good for everybody?
It's good.
Okay, so you all have five minutes.
Oh, my God.
Next slide, please. The applicant this evening had submitted a conceptual development plan for the property that would develop a car wash, gas station, and convenience store, as well as a separate drive-through coffee shop, as mentioned. This is a depiction of the site plan. It's oriented toward the west at the top of the screen. So to the right is the north Copper, and to the south is North Melrose, at the bottom of the page. The convenience store and gas station and car wash building would be located in the northwest corner of the site. The canopy would locate in front of that, near the corner that's shown in the site plan here. And then there's a smaller drive-through coffee shop located to the south of the gas station that would be in the southerly portion of the parcel. Access is proposed off of Copper and off of North Melrose. Just for the council's information, this is a conceptual view to give you some idea of what would be pursued on the site if a general plan amendment and zone change is considered this evening. Next slide, please. The applicant's also provided some conceptual architectural renderings to give you a feel for what the gas station and convenience store with car wash would look like. It's a fairly contemporary, modern look, which is also provided in your packet. Next slide, please. As mentioned, all the general plan and zone change requests come before the council. These are all at the council's complete discretion. Once a project is moved forward in a formal manner, they're brought to the planning commission for a formal recommendation, and all of the final decisions are made by the council. Whenever we receive these types of requests, and the applicant is serious about moving forward, we bring these types of amendments for preliminary review before the council, so that you can provide some input to staff and the applicant on your preference for the site, and that's what's before you this evening. So with that, staff is requesting that the council provide input to the applicant related to the proposals that are before you. That completes my staff presentation. I believe that Haley Wansley is representing the applicant, and she's got a few short slides to go over as well. So Mayor, if you would like, we can pass the baton to Haley, or you can inquire about anything the staff's presented. Thank you.
I think, I think pass it to Haley and her presentation.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hey, I actually have Jeff on as well to give the first set. Is he able to get access?
That would be Jeff Ombri?
Yes.
Jeffrey, there?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Yeah, my name's Jeff Farrell, and can the council hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. I'm Jeff Farrell. I'm a project manager for Embry Asset Group, who are the developer representing United Pacific for this proposal. Also on the call is Haley Wansley, as you know, of Intessa Communications Group, who'll provide remarks after me. Also in attendance is Austin Colley. He's a senior development manager for Embry Group. Thanks for the opportunity to come before you tonight. Thanks, John, for providing our project overview and general plan zone change request. Our team has appreciated your time, as well as the time of the city council members. We look forward to hearing feedback this evening to proceed with an application with the city of Vista. As John mentioned, we're proposing a United Pacific Rocket Store gas station at the corner of Melrose and Copper. In addition, a secondary use for adjacent sites, such as a coffee shop or drive-through amenity. We're currently in discussions with several parties concerning the adjacent land. United Pacific is one of the largest independent owners and operators of gas stations and community stores in the western U.S. They support fuel brands such as Chevron 76 and Sheldon, and a few. The Rocket Store is a new concept convenience store for United Pacific. Let me go to next slide, John, please. Over the past few months, we've met with each of you a couple of times, listened to your feedback, and modified the project based on your input, such as removing the cell of alcohol in the convenience store, an improved color scheme to reflect more visually appealing colors, which you see in the renderings, which you saw in the renderings presented. And as mentioned before, we're continuing to seek out a commitment for a coffee shop or similar type amenity for the secondary lot, which will add another walkable resource for the immediate surrounding community. This location at the corner of Melrose and Copper was selected after United Pacific conducted research on market demand and found that the viability is high for the site, since most of the uses similar to this are located on the other side of the 78. Standard gasoline station study for this area that analyzes the supply and demand within a five-mile radius showed a gap for this type of service. Our proposal seeks to provide an essential service for the surrounding residents, businesses, and commuters who work nearby and use Melrose as their normal thoroughfare. The store itself will supply employment opportunities for around 10 to 12 people. They typically will be split into three shifts per day. Employment availability, employment availability of essential services, as well as additional tax revenues for the city will create vitality on what is now an underutilized parcel of commercial land. That kind of concludes my portion. I want to turn it over to Haley now to talk about some of the public outreach efforts that we've done to date.
Thank you, Jeff. Good evening, Mayor and council members. After we better understood the scope and the stay-at-home orders for essential businesses, we, as a team, as well as the city, were able to then reengage with the community at the end of May to start some public outreach. As we're all aware, we need to rethink through our outreach strategies in different ways to navigate the challenges presented by COVID-19. We had to first abide by the county health order, which states all public or private gatherings are prohibited, which is still in effect today. This, of course, has limited us, but despite that, we have outreach to a number of people and organizations. And because of social distancing, we've taken extra steps to make sure to have our contact information, so we can have a discussion. This includes employees at the Vista courthouse who traveled a Melrose route. Also, if we can go to the next slide, sorry. A support letter from the Vista Chamber of Commerce, where we presented to the Government Affairs Committee. Great conversations with the pastor at the Vista Assembly Church across the street, who is actually looking for a coffee shop type amenity across the street for his patrons. Outreach to the principal of Major General Murray High School. Outreach to the Copper Rose Apartments across the street. Outreach to the local preschool and daycare less than a block away called Children's Paradise, as well as some residents. For clarity, I did see an email of opposition submitted over the weekend, and have since reached out to engage with that person, so we could start a dialogue. He, however, declined to engage and asked for outreach to stop. We look forward to continuing to be active in our outreach efforts to others who have submitted additional written comments that I saw today. Throughout the outreach that we have done in our limited capacity, we haven't received further concerns and are committed to continuing to have the community be a part of the process to the extent that they want to be. The Embry and United Pacific team appreciate your time today and are here to answer any questions and hear your feedback. So thank you so much for having us. If you go to the next slide. Sorry, just, that's it.
Okay, so I'm guessing you want to hear, my council want to hear from the public first? Yes, okay, see, head's shaking. So, city clerk, do we have any public that are wishing to speak?
Yes, I have several people. So again, I'll remind folks, if they'd please state their name when I bring them on, and spelling, if we don't already have it. And I will give them a 15-second warning when there's only 15 seconds left of their two minutes. So the first person we have is Katie Melendez.
All right, Katie. Hey, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Hi, this is Katie Melendez. I just want to say that I do like the idea of a coffee shop in this area. This is my nearby immediate neighborhood. But when it comes to another gas station, we really do have close enough amenities for our community. And another gas station and another car wash are not projects that our neighbors need. I would say that we need a moratorium on car washes. We need smart and sustainable development. We need to move away from our dependency on single occupancy vehicles. We need good-paying careers here in Vista. We need walkable neighborhoods, and we really need to honor the general plan. So I believe this zone change should be denied, and that's all I would like to say. Thank you.
Thank you. See, the next person is Alex Gelvezon. Go ahead, Alex.
Thank you, Kathy. This is Alex Gelvezon, A-L-E-X-G-E-L-V-E-Z-O-N. Esteemed City Council, before we begin, I would like the record to reflect that my emailed comments submitted to John Conley and Kathy Valdez intended for the city council were forwarded to Haley Wansley of Intessa without my permission, which resulted in her reaching out to me directly on multiple occasions. The long-term health and well-being of our community is being put at risk. The National Institutes of Health explain that the hazards of gas stations are not simply confined to one area, but have the capacity to contaminate the air, soil, and water throughout the surrounding areas. In this case, the immediate areas of concern include various homes, apartment complexes, a place of worship, and a high school, all of which are well within a 200-foot distance to the lot in question. Notwithstanding the developer was looking at selling alcohol, but has since then rescinded the decision, what about tobacco products? The attached car wash is also an element of concern. The city of Escondido determined that car washes increase the propensity for airborne particles, chemicals from vehicles, and noise pollution. Ultimately, such factors result in diminished quality of life for the surrounding residents and establishments. While the city council demonstrates motivation towards ensuring economic sustainability in our community, the financial impact on an additional gas station and car wash would produce minimal economic benefit. The United States Census Bureau states that the median household income in the city of Vista is roughly $65,000. In comparison, the United States Bureau of Labor Statistics determine that the median wages for gas station subsector employees is $23,000. Presuming that the wages at the proposed establishment are consistent with that of the USBLS, the resulting wages would not yield benefits for median income statistics in the city of Vista. In closing, I implore you to rescind the proposal for the development of such an establishment on the basis of health and well-being, as well as the factors of economic value described above. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Lolo Mendel. Go ahead, Lolo.
Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, great, thank you. I'm a long-term resident. I live right in the complex, right above the proposed site, and I've lived here over 20 years, and I can tell you, I've seen many changes over time, and the noise level has increased with these changes, including the church across the street expanding, things like that. And so I could not even imagine what the noise level, I would not be able to even be, reside in my home with the windows open if you were to place any kind of a gas station and a car wash below there, because there's no way you could mitigate that sound from traveling uphill the way it does, because sound travels up, as we learned in the last one, on the other proposed project over off of Hacienda. And they even have a road in between them and the homes. We have nothing. It is directly up against the complex, and all that sound would come directly up. We also are so close that people would just walk around the fence area and walk up into our complex, and the crime rate would just be astronomical. It's already increased in time as things have changed around there. But now it would be much more prevalent due to the location of this gas station, and we know that some unsavory people hang out in things like this, and the convenience stores. In addition, we have two to the south of gas stations and convenience stores, and two to the north within a half a mile of this proposed location. So there's four total in one mile location, one mile radius of this location. And for Haley to say that it was not, there's nothing above, or maybe it was Jeff that said it was nothing above, north of 78, it was all south, that's incorrect. We do have two of them located right there. So there's no need, and there's a lot of health risks with it, and traffic and accidents will be prominent. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Matthew Mahon. Go ahead, Matthew.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, Matthew's M-A-T-T-H-E-W, Mahon is M-A-H-O-N. I actually live in the Shadow Ridge area of Vista. I wanted to express my opposition to the proposed project on North Melrose and Copper. My first concern is with traffic. Car traffic is already a nightmare on both north and south Melrose. These businesses will make it worse. The environmental impact of a gas station is significant. If this gas station fails, it will be a number of years before anything else can be built on that, built on that land. This is a quiet residential neighborhood. It will cease to be so with a car wash and a drive-through establishment on that lot, as there's not much of a buffer between the residences and the proposed businesses. Third, a convenience store open late or all night will undoubtedly attract vagrancy and crime. There's an alternative high school across Melrose and a church and preschool across Copper. A late-night convenience store is a bad fit. All of this, and not to mention that there's two gas stations down the street on Melrose and Hacienda, and there's two more up the street on Melrose and Olive. There's 24 car washes in Vista already. We don't need the 25th and 26th. I work for a tech company in the Sorrento Valley area of San Diego. I'd prefer to work in Vista, but there's very few jobs here for me. We need good jobs in Vista. Car washes and gas stations do not fill that void. Enough with the gas stations, enough with the car washes, enough with the Frankenfood drive-through establishments. We need to elevate the quality of life in Vista. This proposal is a step in the opposite direction. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next is caller ending in 4480. Caller, if you'd please state your name and spell it.
Yes, Christine Pritchard, C-H-R-I-S-T-I-N-E-P-R-I-T-C-H-A-R-D.
Thank you, may go ahead.
Thank you. Hello, everyone. I am opposed to this zone change. I reside in the 104-unit Somerset of Vista condo community, which borders this project on the west border. Our buildings are two stories high, and 20 homes would face directly upon the new building. The renderings show the buildings for the convenience store and coffee shop will be built just feet from our property line and our homes. The height of the new buildings may be at our ground level, because we are up slow. We will look out at our windows and see HVAC units, garbage dumpsters, and gas pump canopies. Noise carries up our hill. We know this. Noise carries up our hill, we know this already from the two schools that border our community. Car doors slamming, cars starting and stopping, voices will all carry uphill. A drive-through coffee shop means an outdoor ordering station. We all know what that means. How many times will we have to listen to, "Well, quick, a coffee mart, how can I help you?" With our homes uphill, retaining wall will do little to muffle sound. Even though the decibel levels may meet your specs as comfortable, we will definitely hear this noise 24/7. Road noise is a home. Car noise, voices, loudspeakers, they all command your attention. If you stood on this lot and looked in all directions, you would see people's homes. Upon learning of this proposal, we invited Amanda Rigby for an open meeting. She came and met with us on two days' notice, and 27 members of our community joined us. We did not have any community outreach from the developer, and we border the project, and this project will impact our lives 24/7. I urge the council to explore other options that will expand our vision of Vista. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next is James Coleman. James, go ahead.
Am I coming in clear?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to, I'm usually not this kind of guy that does this, and when this came to our attention, this was definitely a thing that I would be against. I mean, besides everything that you're already going to hear about, how many gas stations are around here, how many car washes we already have, one of my main concerns is that intersection right there, Copper and Melrose is already kind of a dangerous intersection, even since the expansion with the third lane. I mean, we've seen, you know, being a resident here at the Park condominiums, we've seen and heard many accidents, some which have had good endings. And, you know, so we have that. How is this going to impact the fire station across the street? Because we have an emergency response that is used often. Also, with the entrances off Copper and off Melrose, as a resident that uses Copper to get to Melrose, to get to the freeway to go to work, when school's in session, Melrose is, you know, as you all probably know, kind of a nightmare, and that's even going to impact our small little two-lane road even more. So, mostly just wanted to voice my negativity towards this and, you know, hope it doesn't happen. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next is Roberto Chavez. Go ahead, Roberto.
Okay, hello. Thank you very much for listening to me, councilmembers, mayor. I just wanted to reiterate what has, what other owners and residents of the neighborhood have spoken, as have mentioned, that there's already two gas stations one block north, Melrose and Olive, that's the 711, the Union 76, and the two gas stations south on the other side of the overpass, the Chevron and Melrose Oil. There's already enough gas stations here, we don't need another one. And I think I also wanted to bring up a point that others may not have mentioned. On occasion, I've had to go to the Starbucks drive-through on Emerald and West Drive on the west side of the city during morning rush hour. And that intersection, Emerald and West, just becomes unreasonable, there's just too many cars in the morning trying to get through that Starbucks drive-through. Putting that same amount of traffic through a, you know, going through another drive-through coffee shop on Melrose and Copper just seems to be dangerous, to be honest, considering the high school, Major General Murray High School on one corner, and school across the street. I just don't see how this is going to be safe, and I urge the council to reject this general plan amendment. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have caller ending in 2185. Caller, you can, if you please state your name and spell it.
Sure, my name is Bill Priest, B-I-L-L-P-R-I-E-S-T, like on Sunday. I'm a homeowner in Parks Complex, just to the west of this proposed action, and I'm very much opposed to it. I'm just going to reiterate what other people have said, there's definitely a lack of need here. Gas use is declining, we don't need more gas stations, we definitely don't need more car washes. That's just crazy, especially when California is in a drought, that's just insane. I also wanted to mention the light and noise pollution. Christine has mentioned the noise pollution, which will be horrific, but light pollution will be equally bad. I feel thankfully, my condo does not directly border this proposal, but if I did have one, I'd be moving out as fast as possible, but it's just going to be light all the time there, too. Last thing I wanted to mention was the traffic congestion. As James mentioned, the Melrose-Copper intersection is a very busy one. There's incredible amount of traffic going south on Melrose in the mornings, and especially on Copper, as it comes down to Melrose, it's a fairly downhill. You've actually put metering units going uphill, but the downhill speeds sometimes can easily exceed 30 miles, with people gunning down there. It's hard for us to get out of our complex to get on. I can't imagine what's going to happen when there are cars already backed up on Copper, and what could happen as far as traffic accidents and stuff. The amount of traffic from each school in the mornings can be significant as well. So, putting more traffic in this area is just a recipe for disaster. Thanks for listening, and I hope that you reject this plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Patrick Ryan. Go ahead, Patrick.
Yeah, hey, my name's Patrick Ryan, I'm Vista native, born and raised here, and I would just like to express my opposition to approving of this gas station development off of Melrose. I think it's, you know, just like everyone else stated already, I think it's irresponsible due to the fact there's already gas stations really close in the vicinity to increase the flow of traffic. It's kind of an antiquated and I think a rather short-sighted thing to install in this part of Vista. I think it's, I think it's really important as we're developing these really untouched and like left behind parts of Vista to kind of dream and have vision of what they could be, not to settle for what, you know, what gas station we can throw there and what car wash can go there next. And I just think we can do a lot better than, you know, just throwing car washes and gas stations and drive-throughs and all this cheap, fast, short-sighted business everywhere. Thank you.
Thank you. And next, we have Navasha Moon.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
So, first of all, I would just like to express my extreme furiousness that you can all, well, not all, that most of you can sit and just listen to your community, the people that you represent, and either say nothing, or Judy Ritter, we see you live right now, and you're talking as we are sharing what concerns us. And you're talking on your camera, and you're not listening to anyone. And it's extremely aggravating, especially when this is the most ridiculous plan that you could propose to quote-unquote "improve the community." Absolutely irresponsible and short-sighted, as everyone before me has already said. I would also like to thank Karina Contreras for supporting the rejection of this, as well as deputy mayor, and everyone else. As you already know, silence is violence, you're not standing for the people of your community. And I see now, Judy Ritter, that we have your attention, so thank you finally for that. And just so you know, community members are live streaming your council meetings on the internet. So, just because it doesn't look like you have a lot of people from your side of things watching you, we are watching you, we are listening to you, and we are using our voice and becoming more powerful. So, please start paying attention to your community and count it as a freaking vote. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that is it for public comment. We'll go ahead and close the opportunity to provide public comment on this item. Oh, I'm sorry, we have one person pop in as I was saying that. So, we have Monique Combs. Monique, you could go ahead and state your comments.
Thank you, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
My name's Monique Combs, C-O-M-B, like boy S, and we live on Copper, just a couple blocks from that proposed development. I'm speaking in opposition to the proposed development. I just want to say that Vista deserves better. These are a few reasons why myself, my husband, my neighbors are not in support of the proposed development. Pretty much same thing everybody else has said, and obviously, we just had a really long discussion about car washes, drive-throughs. Too many of those, please don't let this become Vista's brand. We have a few schools just within blocks of this development. I think, too, are continuation schools. If the gas station sells cigarettes or vape products, I feel like it doesn't say a lot about how much we care about our at-risk youth. The future of automobiles is in green energy, and if this gas station fails because of loss of demand or competition, we have another empty lot, and buildings to watch become dilapidated for 20 years, because nobody wants to deal with the mitigation, so it just sits. Traffic, of course, is bad. Copper, if you don't know, drive and avenue are used as a cut-through, and that's already a concern with speeding and extra traffic, I think that would just get worse. And let's not let developers come in and change our general plan that the residents worked with the city to create. It's going to be renewed soon, so we can reexamine it then. I ask that you please oppose this proposal, and thank you so much for your time, and thank you for your service.
Thank you. And we have a caller with number ending in 5633. Caller, if you'd please state your name and spell it.
Hi, my name is Jackie Priest. Jackie is J-A-C-Q-U-I-E, last name is P-R-I-E-S-T. I am adamantly disagreeing with this proposal. This company did not reach out to us at all. The mini-mart is going to be a problem with the selling of cigarettes and tobacco products with the high school across the street. That's a big concern. Also, if we want to make Vista a beautiful town, this is not the way to do it. I agree with the people that were saying that we should have a better vision for our city. The residents of Vista should also not have to pay the price for companies that make poor investments. If the companies can't put in businesses that can't adhere to the zoning permits that were put there for a good reason, this goes directly against the community's best interest. I would like to remind the council that they are in office to protect the community's interests and not the big business. I urge you to do so. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, looks like that is the end, so we'll go ahead and close the opportunity to provide public comment on this item. Okay, we'll start with Councilmember Green, do you have any additional questions or comments?
Not necessarily questions. I did look at this, I met with the developers, obviously, and I, you know, this was proposed before me. My biggest draw to this was a, you know, actual place for people in that area to shop that actually has groceries that they could get, and it was my understanding that 3,200-square-foot store there was going to provide a good shopping option. Obviously, you saw, we just did deny a car wash, so we're not, you know, tied to any particular car wash, but this was approved, this car wash is much smaller, it's not a freestanding car wash with tons of vacuums that has a huge footprint, so I wasn't completely opposed to it. I do think that there should be more green energy in this as far as that goes. This canopy here, I would love it to be a solar canopy, as opposed to just that big ugly canopy there. But the truth is, I'd really like to hear, you know, what the majority of my council says. It's obviously an impact on that community, which any development over here is. It's currently zoned for commercial office, and in the three and a half years, or almost four years I've been on the council, I've been presented with car washes and storages, and more storages and more car washes, and never really anything that I thought provided a tangible benefit to that community. And having a, you know, I don't know, Dunkin' Donuts drive-through over there, a Better Buzz coffee drive-through, as well as a convenience option, you know, I thought might be something the community might want. And community members that I've sold homes to over there off of Knoll Road and Windy Lane, and even in Diamond Way Complex that I know some of these people are calling from, that I personally spoke with, that are friends of mine, weren't opposed to it. And, you know, didn't have them call in, but what I would say is, you know, have the studies done, figure out what the traffic impact is, if it's really going to kill those intersections and kill that traffic, you know, that's something that we would definitely want to squash, because traffic is a huge issue here within the community. But there's a lot of unknowns, this is a discussion item, and it's saying, hey, would you be open to this if it checks all of your boxes? The truth is, I don't know what we could dream that would go over there. You know, it's zoned for a commercial office, so, you know, if we zoned it as a residential and put apartments in there, what would the community want to see? It is owned by a private property owner who wants to sell it and develop it in some way. So, as a council, our biggest job is land use decisions. They're not the funnest jobs by any means, but we have to figure out what's the highest and best use for that lot, for that community. So, I'd love to hear what the rest of my council has to say. I didn't see that publicly Councilwoman Contreras and deputy mayor had already disapproved the project, so that was a little shock to me, I didn't know that. But anyway, I'm looking forward to hearing everybody speak, so please tell me what you think about it.
Councilmember Contreras.
One, I want to address what was said as a comment that councilmember Contreras and deputy mayor Rigby are opposed to this. I believe that, but the comment was about community decisions in the previous decision that the council majority made to approve the four drive-throughs. So, I heard that comment a little bit different. But anyways, here's the situation, is that I'm not necessarily opposed to zone change here. However, I don't really see a lot of benefit from this type of project. With the current zoning that's there, I mean, our office vacancy rate is like 16%, 17%. But, you know, one of the things I think is really important is what kind of direction do we want Vista to go towards? I am really tired of our city becoming freeways and cut-through traffic, and anything that's going to create more appeal for cutting through the city and adding more congestion to areas where there's already pressure points. I mean, the way that it goes from three lanes to two lanes, I personally have witnessed several accidents, okay? And I'm not even driving Melrose that often. The last time I saw, it was a person riding their bike that was on the floor and the ambulance was coming, right? And so, with the amount of kids that are walking around there, I think it's really important for us to have a better vision of Vista. And so, with that said, you know, I know it's difficult to build office space, it's just not, it's not feasible at this moment. However, as it was stated, the city council and the community will be working to up the general plan. And I think that we need to start doing a little bit more due diligence as far as how we are going to build the future Vista that our community is asking for. You know, one of the things that I would love is for our economic development team to look at, you know, is there a potential for us to partner up with some companies and do some kind of Class A office space there? You know, the Business Park is, even during COVID, is still doing pretty well. But north of this, the C8, I think we have opportunities to have many green tech campuses. So, I mean, I just don't see the need to push forward a development like this with a zone change. I think we really need to take into consideration what we want Vista to be in the future. And I'm already very disappointed that Melrose, North Santa Fe, and East Vista Way are being utilized as freeways for as freeways for cut-through traffic. I just don't, that's not the type of Vista that, you know, I want. And I don't think that's the type of Vista that the community wants. So again, I think we need to do our due diligence and see what can we do to build a better Vista. And I think that comes when we review our general plan and how we're going to move forward. And possibly, at that point, we get more information, more data, and we see, hey, you know what? This needs to change zones so that maybe, you know, we can build residential. Who knows? But I think that we should afford the public the ability to weigh in since we're going to be updating our plan very soon. So with that said, I mean, there's so many other reasons why this is not truly going to benefit the community in that surrounding area. I, you know, think that the community does need walkable amenities. So, you know, I would rather see some kind of grocery store go in there than a convenience store. Again, there are property rights, so I totally respect that. But as a council, we sit here to ensure that the public is represented to the fullest extent and that we don't just create a developer's playground. So I'm really interested in hearing what the rest of my council has to say. I see the need, possibly, to change the zoning. I just, I don't have enough information at this point to make that kind of decision, so.
Okay, Deputy Mayor Rigby.
Thank you. Excuse me. Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I want to say thank you to everybody who has spoken and to everybody who has submitted letters to staff and to council and especially to the neighborhood right next door, behind this project, up against this project, that invited me out to speak with them. It was a great conversation. I will say that I spoke with Haley, I think it's Haley, on the phone, and I asked about community outreach. And because of the coronavirus, they were not really wanting to do that. Understandable. But I think there could have been ways to do an outreach or to propose or to postpone this proposal until outreach could be done, an honest outreach effort. And then it was later commented that outreach had been done and when I asked, what was the outreach? Because when I had asked for a community meeting, I was told, no, this can't be done. I was told that she spoke to one person. So to me, that's really not identified, what I would identify as community outreach. So I'm a little disappointed that no additional outreach was made or attempted. And like I said, in the face of the reasons why, which are understandable, but if outreach was that important to this organization, perhaps they should have put this on a back burner until actually talking with this community was something that they were able to do. And then in the opening comments, the gentleman who spoke, and I'm so sorry, I don't remember your name. I didn't write it down, and my apologies for that. You commented that you identified consumer demand because there are gas stations south of Melrose or south of the 78 on Melrose, but nothing north of the 78. And as you've heard from so many speakers already, that's just actually not true. So I, the fact that there was no attempt at any kind of outreach and you made a statement that is so blatantly incorrect, you just kind of start off on the wrong foot with me as far as that goes. And it just really makes me take a step back and have to look at the rest of this because that really isn't a good start when you're having a conversation with a community and you're asking us to change our general plan and to change the zoning. So I'm going to ask our city clerk, is it possible for you to put back up the aerial photograph of this lot?
I will do my best.
Okay.
Actually, it's going to take me just a minute. I had a message that it had closed, so if you want to keep talking, I will let you know when it's available.
Sorry, I should have alerted you to that request. I'm so sorry. So what I'd like for everybody to see, and I want to just reiterate to my colleagues, is the topography, which isn't identified in any of the photographs that we have. But the layout of that plot of land that we're looking at, and it backs up to a hill that is a rather steep hillside. It's not one of these flowing mountain, you know, or meadowy hillsides. It's a rather steep hillside. And I was out there yesterday talking with a group of residents that live there. And at the top of this hill is a fence. It's a wooden fence. And it's, I can, you know, put my arms on it and lean over and look out on top of that empty lot. But the apartments, the condominiums, are right there as well. And so many of the condominiums, they face that lot and they overlook that lot. And they are really close to that fence line as well. And those are bedrooms and living rooms and kitchens. And all of that noise, as we saw in the last project that we talked about, was a little bit more level, and you could have a wall that would be kind of a barrier for the noise. But in this case, as we know from other projects and even in our own neighborhoods, sound tends to travel up, especially when you have something for it to hit and go up. And so the sound from this project would just reverberate throughout this section of this condominium community. And I don't know the times that you're thinking about doing for your car wash and your gas station and your mini-mart, et cetera. But we talk about, do you have that picture up?
Is it? I think I've got it. Let me know if this is the one you wanted. Is that what you were looking for?
Yes, thank you. This is it. So I don't have a pointer with me, but if you look on the side away from Melrose on the red dots next to this community, that's the community where I was visiting yesterday. And from, maybe I think, Unit 231 or the one over farther, they really, you see trees there, and some of the tree canopy might come over the building line a little bit. But they really, those apartments and those condominiums are actually very, very close to that. And where you see the red dotted line is a very steep hill. It's not, like I said, you can't see from this photograph the height of this community behind this project. So you're not going to be able to build a six-foot wall or a seven-foot wall to try to mitigate any of the light pollution or the noise pollution that you would get from this type of a project. Thank you, Kathy. I appreciate that. I just thought it was important that you saw that because the aerial view just really does not show the slope that you would have. One of the other concerns I have is Copper is a two-lane road with residential on both sides. And I think we're all familiar with it. We all have driven Copper. The proposed driveway going out onto Copper is a cross, would be a cross from the church driveway. And as one of our constituents mentioned in their comments, the church has expanded and now has a school on site. And you have, just like we face with all of our schools around town, when they're coming to school in the morning and they're getting picked up in the afternoon, we have a huge backlog of cars trying to get in and pick the kids up both times during the day. And when you have those two competing driveways at the same time in the morning, people may be going to work in the afternoon, people coming home from work, on that two, small two-lane road, that's going to be a huge impact for that community, not just with the number of cars, but the noise from the cars as well as the pollution, the additional pollution from the cars, which would have to absolutely be addressed. And I really would not want to see another project come to us where the greenhouse gas emissions are more than significant and unable to be mitigated to comply with our requirements as we saw in that last project. So I would be, this goes back to the quality of life issue for our community and for this community, just like what we saw in our last discussion. That was an incredibly negative impact that this council did on the quality of life for that neighborhood, and I'm sad for them. And I think we can do better as a council. We've talked in the past about things that we have to deal with today to fix issues that were created many, many years ago by councils that really weren't paying attention and didn't have the vision and the foresight to see the impact of their decisions. Right now, we have a little bit better scope of things. We have a little bit better technology. We can try to see into the future what impacts we might have on our communities. The traffic impact over at the other side is just going to be enormous, and we know that. And to ignore that and shrug our shoulders at it, to me, is just unconscionable. And I don't want to do that to this neighborhood either because this neighborhood is a two-lane, small residential street that you want to put all this traffic onto. And I think you really have to consider that. But the biggest thing, and I understand that office space is not something that's going right now. We see the empty office space. We know that there's an office complex that they want to transition into an apartment complex. So I understand that, and that doesn't go unnoticed. But it doesn't mean that we have to overly build anything that comes along and the first thing that comes along, you know, the council approved a car wash, so now 20 people get in line and want to build a car wash in our community. I think we deserve better, and our community deserves better. And we have a general plan for a reason. And our community came together in multiple meetings, multiple town hall meetings, city council meetings. And we came together with what we wanted the vision for our community to be in this general plan. And because it is 2012, so I think at some point, and Mr. Conley can tell me the date, if, you know, there's a timeframe that we have to amend our general, or update our general plan. And I do believe that we will be getting to that pretty soon, you know, within the next five years or so. You can give me a heads up or down on that one. So I think, and the question was asked by Councilwoman Green, you know, office space isn't going to go here because offices aren't leasing right now. We have such a vacancy rate, such a high vacancy rate with office space. And he asked, what does the community want to see here? That is a great question, and I thank you for asking it. We should ask our community, what do you want to see here? And we are so close to revising our general plan with the input and ideas from our community that before we piecemeal these parcels with another car wash, another gas station, another mini-mart, let's have a conversation with our community. That's a great question. That's a fabulous question. We need to update our general plan. We're going to start doing it pretty soon. And I would rather have our community come together and tell us, what is your vision for the next 10 years? What does this look like? Do we want a coffee shop? Do we want to try to put something else here? They might be open to retail or food here, but what does that look like? Because we did have a long discussion yesterday when I met with them about office space, just right now, it's not taking off. And I know some places, because everybody has gotten so used to working remotely, I know of a couple of places that aren't actually bringing people back in. They're staying home to work remotely because it works so well for them. So we might see even more issues with that kind of thing. But I think it's a great question, and we owe it to our community to let them tell us what do they want in this space and others. We have a lot of other places throughout our community. So I am not willing to do a general plan amendment, even as slight as some say that this change would be. I think we owe it to our community, instead of having them give us a thumbs up or down on a good or a bad project that will negatively, possibly negatively, impact their quality of life. I think we owe it to them to have a conversation, bring them together. Let's start the general plan update process before we start doing any more of these piecemeal projects. Now, I do have to say, I appreciate that the Embree Asset Group and United Pacific took out the notion of alcohol sales, given the two continuation schools that are there plus the preschool across the street, across Melrose. And then we have the church school across Copper, just a few feet away. So I appreciate that they were willing to get rid of the alcohol component. I heard a couple of people say that, you know, tobacco and vaping products, that's something that they'd have to talk about. So I do want, I did not want that to go by without my commenting on that. I appreciate that. But I think for this project, as any project, there needs to be more community outreach. And anyway, those are my comments. I'm just, I'm not willing to do a general plan amendment at this time for this. So thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll hold off any more comments.
Councilmember Franklin.
I apologize. My computer froze, and I lost the meeting for just a second, but it got back in. You know, this item that's before us is not to approve a general plan amendment. It is simply a question of whether or not we want to tell the applicant, don't waste your time going through the process of a full community outreach campaign and of going to the planning commission. I think the applicant can hear that there's some significant concern from the adjacent property owners. And I think that the property owner and the project proponent would be wise to consider, before they move forward, that opposition from the adjacent neighbors. That said, you know, this is an opportunity. In years past, a developer would make application, and they would go through two years of planning and architecture before they would get to a decision on whether or not the council was against it from the start. So we have implemented a design review process where we are letting developers know at the very beginning of the process, not the end of the process, whether we oppose it from the start. I don't oppose the project from the start. I want the developer to have the opportunity to make application and go through the public outreach process and to work with the neighbors to build a project that the neighbors are comfortable living with. So that said, you know, the project proponent can see that they've got some big hurdles to clear. And when they finally do come to the planning commission and the city council, they're going to have to have cleared those hurdles in order to gain approval. So they should consider that in their decision to move forward. But that's, with that said, you know, I would invite them to make their application and conduct a full outreach campaign and to win over those citizens who are not currently supportive.
Actually, I agree with you, Councilmember Franklin. But I want people to know also that I read all the letters and I was listening, but I have grandkids who would like to come and say goodnight. So I can, I was listening with one ear, even though I have distractions because we're at home, you know, so sometimes that happens. So, but I did listen to everybody, and I agree with you, Councilmember Franklin, on that. So do we need a motion on this to? Ask our city manager?
Councilmember Green has a comment.
Okay, Councilmember Green.
Yeah, I just wanted to say one more thing and thank my councilmembers so much for speaking. I mean, I love my council. I love listening to them. Deputy Mayor Rigby, I love the outreach that you do. I love that you go and hang out with the constituents. You listen to them. You figure out what their concerns are and what we can do to address those. Sound, light, traffic study, gas station. I mean, these are concerns of that community over there. And I want to make sure that my councilmembers, and I think that they definitely do, appreciate Deputy Mayor Rigby's stance of, you know, if you're going to do outreach in one of our districts, you really need to do the outreach. And, you know, the way that, you know, Deputy Mayor Rigby was treated, in my opinion, by saying, hey, I did the outreach and we didn't do the outreach. saying, hey, I did the outreach and we didn't do the outreach, you know, it's not a good show. So I think that you need to do a lot more outreach and actually, you know, ask the proper questions and get the information. You know, this isn't us changing a general plan by any means right now. What we wanted to see is, hey, you came to us with a gas station and a coffee shop, what are the hurdles you're going to have? And given the hurdles brought to you in front of the council, is it worth it to you? I'm not going to deny it straight out either, but I will tell you, the concerns that are brought up by the community of the sound and the light and the traffic, that's, those are valid concerns that will need to be addressed. That might cost a lot of money. You might not have the money to pay for all those studies and provide that, but without those concerns addressed, you're going to have a really hard time getting the project approved. So, and I just want to make sure that, as far as I'm concerned, the developer knows that, and also knows that, please do great research and do, you know, great community outreach, because not going to the residents on Diamond Way, the development that borders, or even sending a letter to the homeowners association, or post on Facebook or something, they were able to get Deputy Mayor there with two days' notice. So I really feel like the outreach could have been better. So I, I'm actually shocked that that wasn't done better, and I, I hope that you take their considerations into mind. So I just want to make those comments. And if you ever come to my district, better do a lot better, too, because that's unacceptable.
So, um, Deputy, do we need a motion, City Manager? Do we need a motion?
Mayor, there's no motion. I think the point was to provide comments to the applicant, and I think the applicant heard the comments.
Okay, okay. Then with that, we will move on to our second discussion item, the process to resolve a tie vote for the November 3, 2020 general municipal election. Our City Clerk Valdez will be providing the staff report on this. If any members of the public wish to speak on this item, they may indicate so by using the raise hand feature or by pressing star nine now. Speakers will be called upon after the staff presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. California Elections Code provides that a tie vote is to be determined by the Elections Board. In our case, the County Board of Supervisors by lot unless the City Council adopts a resolution providing for a special runoff election prior to the election. The County Board of Supervisors may determine a tie vote by flipping a coin, drawing a name from a bowl, or some other method of chance. The Elections Code allows a legislative body within San Diego County to choose to have an all-male ballot election to fill a vacancy on the City Council. San Diego Register of Voters estimates the cost of holding a special election by an all-male ballot to be approximately $200,000, and the cost to hold a special standalone election to be about $450,000. A City Council resolution is required to write for a special runoff election to be held to fill a vacancy on the City Council in the event of a tie vote, and to specify if it would be conducted by all-male ballot or standalone election. No City Council action, no City Council action is required to provide a, for a tie vote to be determined by Elections Board by lot. That completes my report. I'm available to answer any questions.
Yeah, I'm guessing, I'm guessing that, I'm guessing you want to hear if there's any members of the public that want to speak first? Yes? Okay, okay, so City Clerk, do we have any members of the public that wish to speak on this item?
No one has asked to speak on this item.
Okay, so then we'll go back to the council. But Councilmember Franklin, do you have any additional comments on it?
I would just say it's been our historical practice to allow the Board of Supervisors to flip a coin, and in the case where two candidates for the office have the exact same number of votes, which is, the odds of which are pretty astronomical, although it is a real possibility. And the, the large cost to resolve a tie with an election, the idea of flipping a coin seems as good as any, and I would make a motion that we again choose that method of solving a tie vote in the City of Vista.
Okay, Councilmember Green.
I'll second that. I would second.
Okay, Councilmember Contreras.
I mean, it definitely is cheaper to use a coin, but I think that reflects the will of the people very good, so I'm, I'm not for that.
Deputy Mayor Rigby.
I agree. I think flipping a coin to resolve a tie is fine.
Okay, so we have a motion by Franklin and a second by Green, so please conduct the roll call vote.
Please state your vote when I call your name. Mayor Ritter?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rigby?
Hi.
Councilmember Franklin?
Hi.
Councilmember Green?
Hi.
Councilmember Contreras?
No.
Matt, the motion passes with all, in favor with the exception of Councilmember Contreras.
Okay, that takes us to our next discussion item, D3, Regulations for Candidate Statements to be Submitted to the Voters for the November 3, 2020 General Municipal Election. So City Clerk Valdez will be providing the staff report. If any members of the public wish to speak on this item, they may indicate so by using the raise hand feature or pressing star nine now. Speakers will be called upon after the staff presentation.
Thank you, Mayor. California Elections Code permits each candidate in any local election to prepare a candid statement of qualifications to be printed in the voter information pamphlet, no longer than 200 words, unless the local agency authorizes statements up to 400 words. The code also permits the local agency to charge the candidate an estimated pro-rata share of the cost for language translation and printing the statement in the voter information pamphlet. The San Diego County Register of Voters has estimated the cost to be an average of $1,300 for a 200-word statement and $1,600 for a 400-word statement. The City Council has three options. You may take no action, and each candidate will be allowed to submit a 200-word statement for which the city will be required to pay the full cost; or adopt a resolution limiting the candidate's statement of qualification to 200 words and requiring the candidates to pay the cost for their statement; or three, adopt a resolution limiting the candidate's statement of qualification to 400 words and requiring the candidates to pay the cost for their statement. If the city chooses to authorize a 400-word statement, all candidates would be subject to the estimated $1,600 fee or need to opt out of submitting a candidate's statement of qualification. That completes my report. I'm available to answer any questions.
Do you want to hear if we have any members of the public first? Okay, so City Clerk, do we have any members of the public that wish to speak on this?
We do not have anyone who would like to speak on this item.
Okay, then we'll go to our council. Deputy Mayor Rigby, do you have any questions or comments?
I would just recommend that we do, I think we have in the past, the 400 words and the candidate pays for it. So I would move that we go with that option.
Is that a motion?
Yes, it is.
Okay, Councilmember Green.
I will second that motion, and I completely agree with that. The 400-word statement paid for by the candidate is just fine.
Councilmember Franklin?
I would agree. It's one of the most efficient ways for candidates to reach all the voters, and I think we should give them as much length as possible to explain their platform to the voters.
Councilmember Contreras.
Um, I, I agree. I think 400 words paid by the candidate is great. I think 200 words is not enough, and it probably doesn't give anybody but the incumbent an advantage. So I am 100% in agreement of 400 words.
Okay, so I, I have a motion by Deputy Mayor Rigby, right?
Yes.
And I think a second by Councilmember Green, was that?
Yes.
Am I right? Okay, so then please conduct a roll call vote.
All right, please state your vote when I call your name. Mayor Ritter?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rigby?
Aye.
Councilmember Franklin?
Aye.
Councilmember Green?
Aye.
Councilmember Contreras?
Aye.
The item passes unanimously.
Okay, that takes us to our, the fourth discussion item, the Second Reading of Ordinance, on number 2020-8, Amendment to the PERS Contract. The Research Director Dolores Gascon will be providing the staff report. If any members of the public wish to speak on this item, they may indicate so by using the raise hand feature or pressing star nine now. Speakers will be called upon after the staff presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. This item continues the discussion that was held on May 26, 2020 regarding an amendment to the city's CalPERS contract. The amendment enables the city to comply with portions of the MOU with the Vista Firefighters Association. The amendment requires an ordinance, and tonight we are having the second reading of the ordinance. CalPERS requires that the item be placed on a public agenda, but it cannot be on the consent calendar, so instead it has been listed as a discussion item. This concludes my report, and I'm available for any questions you might have.
Okay, and I'm, Deputy Mayor Rigby?
Oh, I was just going to say thank you very much for Ms. Gascon for, for this, and I would move that we approve this as presented.
Do you want to wait and see if we have any speakers for the, from the public, maybe?
Sure, of course.
I'll, I'll, I'll put your, I'll put your motion down, and then, City Clerk, do we have any speakers from the public?
We do not have any speakers on this item.
Oh, okay, we're good. So then do I have, then I'll go to Councilmember Green.
I have no comments on this item.
Okay, Councilmember Franklin?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, and Councilmember Contreras?
Let's, let's move forward with the vote. No comments.
Okay, so please do our roll call vote.
All right, please state your vote when I call your name. Mayor Ritter?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rigby?
Aye.
Councilmember Franklin?
Aye.
Councilmember Green?
Aye.
Councilmember Contreras?
Aye.
The item passes unanimously.
Okay, that brings us to our fifth discussion item, our Citywide Classification and Compensation Index. Human Resource Director Dolores Gascon will be providing the staff report. If any members of the public wish to speak on this item, they can indicate so by using the raise hand feature or pressing star nine now. Speakers will be called upon after the staff presentation. So Director Dolores Gascon.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. This item updates the Citywide Classification and Compensation Index to reflect planned increases that the council previously approved when approving the Management Confidential Employee Compensation Plan and MRU, MOUs with our labor groups back in 2018, as well as the fiscal year 2020, 2021 operating budget last year. PERS law requires that a governing board approve salary changes and post them publicly. State law requires an oral report of salary modifications that affect the city manager, city attorney, and department directors. This is that oral report. That completes my report, and I'm available to answer questions.
Okay, City Clerk Valdez, do we have any members of the public that wish to speak?
Yes, I do have one person, Christine Pritchard. Go ahead, Christine. Christine, are you there? Okay, maybe, why don't we, oh, she's moving. Okay, we'll see if she tries to come, come back in.
Okay, Councilmember Green, do you have any questions or comments?
I was just going to say that I move that we adopt City Council Resolution as recommended by staff, admitting the Citywide Classification and Compensation Index and repealing the provisions of any resolutions in conflict therewith.
Councilmember Contreras?
Uh, no comments, but I second Councilmember Green's motion. It's a good one.
Okay, Deputy Mayor Rigby?
I have no comments, thank you.
Councilmember Franklin?
No comments, thank you.
Okay, then, Dean, we don't hear the speaker? She's not back?
No.
Okay, then we'll have a roll call vote, please.
Okay, please state your vote when I call your name. Mayor Ritter?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Rigby?
Aye.
Councilmember Franklin?
Aye.
Councilmember Green?
Aye.
Councilmember Contreras?
Aye.
The item passes unanimously.
Okay, that brings us to our last discussion item, which is the 2020 to 2022 City Council Goals. Economic Development Director Kevin Hamm is going to be providing the staff report on this one. If any members of the public wish to speak on this item, they may indicate so by using the raise the hand feature or pressing star nine now. Speakers will be called upon after the staff presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Great, thank you, Kevin. So this item has been agendized this evening for the council to receive and discuss the goals that you set for 2022 and to provide any direction to staff. As you might remember, the staff comes to council with your goals every six months, typically in June and December, to update you. The last council update was in December 2019. So these goals were set during the March 3, 2020 discussion with Peter Behrenstark during that public meeting in the community. We also want to note that since that period of time, a lot has gone on. The COVID-19 impacts have also taken place. So we have noted in the goals where those impacts have happened in each of the different goal areas. Next slide, please. The six goals that the council set was to continue fiscal responsibility, to continue to improve the flow of traffic, reduce congestion, and improve our roads and sidewalks, continue to improve the image of our city. The next one, my personal favorite, economic development, number five, public safety, and number six, parks and recreation. Next slide, please. So I want to remind you how we identify the priorities for each of these goals. And at the onset of this, I want to make sure that you all know that these goals aren't all necessarily funded. In this discussion tonight, these will not fund any of these specific goals, and that will happen separately. So with regard to the priority designations, high priority goals are goals that have funding, staff support, and are of significant importance to the council and the community. Medium priority goals are goals that are routine, may have funding available, or staff assigned in the near future, and low priority goals are goals that don't have funding or staff assigned. Next slide, please. So I will cover a few goals now in each of the different areas, a few of them in each of the six different areas. The first of which is continue to build emergency reserves with a goal of achieving a 35% reserve. So the major update in this area is staff will continue to recommend to the City Council the use of available year-end fund balance funds to incrementally increase the emergency reserves until a 35% goal is met. Next slide, please. Goal two, which is to continue to improve the flow of traffic, reduce congestion, and continue, continue to improve our roads and sidewalks. This is action item number B1, which is implementing the projects identified and prioritized in the 2019 congestion management plan. This relates specifically to the traffic signal interconnect upgrade north of the 78. The major update with regard to this item is we are implementing changes to the existing traffic signal equipment to allow more flexibility in signal timing schemes and more flexible and more efficient central management of the traffic signals. We are ready for construction bidding, and it's anticipated to be completed by December 2020. Next slide, please. Continue to improve the image of our city. These next few goals relate specifically to the homeless strategic plan. With regard to A1, we released a request for proposal to contract with a social worker to engage people who are experiencing homelessness. It is anticipated that an award for contract will be made in August 2020. Next slide, please. This also relates to the strategic plan for homelessness. This is releasing an RFP to contract with a provider to provide homelessness prevention services. This is the pilot program. It is anticipated an award for contract will be made in August 2020. Next slide, please. In addition, another item related to the strategic plan for homelessness, we are in the process of negotiating terms of an agreement for a part-time home share coordinator who will match people looking for low-cost housing with homeowners that have available space. It is anticipated services will begin in August 2020. Next slide, please. Economic development. So the council has recommended, and we have moved forward, with the creation of an Economic Development Strategic Plan. There are two goals related to this that the council set that also relate to this that the council set that also relates to workforce education and financial literacy training. We have hired a consultant. We have already had two committee meetings. The consultant is working on the project, and we are moving forward with the completion date in February 2020. Just as a reminder, this will be looking at retail, this will be looking at office, and this will also be looking at industrial for the future, how to best set the environment, the real estate in those areas to support those individuals in our community and the businesses that we have. Next slide, please. Public safety, two items under this goal, which would be E1 and 2. The first of which is implement exclusive pedestrian phases at high accident signalized intersections. This is at North Santa Fe in California, but it also includes East West Indian Rock, East Vista Way, at Oak Drive, and Arcadia Avenue. So this is underway for completion in 2020. With regard to item 2, develop a complete street plan for the townsite area for pedestrians, bicycle, and traffic calming improvements. This is in design, and we are currently working with Caltrans on this project. Next slide, please. With regard to parks and recreation, B1 and 2, which is continue improving parks and park facilities. The first is Bub Williams, Bub Williamson. At the last council meeting, there was an award of contract, and construction is anticipated to begin in August with completion in fall 2021. With regard to Pola Vista, final design will be presented to the city council in summer 2020. Next slide, please. So I mentioned COVID-related issues, and I did not pull all of them out. As you know, we have many goals, and so we pulled a few of them out as it relates to parks and recreation. Reimbursement is a big task, and staff has worked to track expenses, hours, related to COVID-19 for possible grants, reimbursement, funding now and in the future. Next slide, please. Also, this relates to parks and recreation, but other departments as well. Health order compliance has been a big issue with regard to COVID-19 work. Staff continues to comply with the state mandates, county health orders, and city directives, mostly through telecommuting at the city in March through May. All programs, rentals, and facilities have ceased as it relates to the parks and recreation programs. Some have started up since the stay-at-home order was issued by Governor Newsom. Next slide, please. This concludes my presentation. The city manager and the rest of the staff and I are available for any questions you may have. Thank you.
There's stuff on my screen, hold on. I'm assuming that you want to know if we have any members of the public that wants my counsel, how it's been. Okay, so Clerk Valdez, do we have any members of the public that wish to speak on this item?
Yes, we do. I'll go ahead and start. The first is Trevor Salazar. Go ahead, Trevor.
Yes, this is Trevor Salazar, T-R-E-V-O-R-S-A-L-A-Z-A-R. I want to speak on behalf of Goals 1, 3, and 5. Regarding Goal 1, I demand that the city council practice financial responsibility by ceasing all new hires and increases in law enforcement budget, sheriff contracts, deputy hires, and police spending effective immediately. I demand you use these funds towards resources that support and prioritize our Black, Indigenous, people of color, and working-class communities in Vista. Also, I demand you reevaluate your so-called strategic plan to address homelessness by discontinuing the enforcement of illegal panhandling and camping laws. Your current system treats the homeless population as if they were pests and needed to be starved out or shooed away. Your policies need to realize that these members of your community must be treated with as much dignity as a citizen with a Vista address. Like it or not, you represent them as well. So your policy needs to act like it. In regards to public safety, I demand that you immediately end crime-free multi, the crime-free multi-housing prob, program, my bad. This measure gives you the statistical satisfaction of being effective, while in reality, it merely displaces residents, members of your community who are in the most need for assistance. Furthermore, after reading the program document, the Sheriff's Department has made it clear by offloading this responsibility to property managers that they're either too inept or too apathetic to deal with communities in need of support. I expect the council's immediate action on these matters. Good day.
Thank you. Next is Tara Blackman. Go ahead, Tara.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Hi, my name is Tara Blackman, T-E-R-A-B-L-A-C-K-M-A-N, and I reside on Kumeya and Luis Senyo territory, known today as North County San Diego. I'd like to emphasize that before the land we reside on today was stolen, the Kumeya and Luis Senyo people inhabited this land. So regarding agenda item D6, Goal 1, I demand that the city council practice financial responsibility by ceasing all new hires and increases in law enforcement budget, effective immediately. This includes sheriff contracts, deputy hires, and police spending. The city council is responsible first and foremost to ensuring the well-being of its residents. And in Vista, where the majority of its residents are people of color, funding law enforcement is the equivalent of funding a state-sanctioned terrorist group. It is completely irresponsible and inhumane to increase police spending. That directly puts Black and Brown lives in danger. And regarding Goal 5, public safety, I'd like to demand that you abandon your plan to hire more deputies and to cease police spending under the guise of public safety. Public safety does not mean increasing the budget of a police system that was born out of slave patrolling, nor does it mean prioritizing property over human life, like the crime-free multi-housing program enforces. This program must end immediately. If the city council chooses to increase spending on law enforcement, then the city council is actively contributing to and endorsing Black genocide in this country. Some names of those murdered in cities whose city councils chose to increase or uphold their budget for law enforcement include George Floyd, Tony McDade, Rhea Milton, Dominique Remy Fells, Elijah McLean, Breonna Taylor, Oluwatoye Ansalo, Andre Scardato, Robert Fuller, Malcolm Harsh, Sandra Bland, Eric Garner, Trayvon Martin, Mike Brown, Tamir Rice, Valando Castile, Tatiana Jefferson, Mia Wilson, Ora Rosser, Tanisha Anderson, and many, many more. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Next is Katie Melendez.
Hi, everyone. Again, this is Katie Melendez. I want to express that our public safety goals as a community should not include hiring more sheriff deputies. Not only are we at a 10-year low for crime, but public safety must consider a wide range of solutions to improve the well-being and security of Vista residents. Quality of life issues such as mental health, substance abuse, family crisis, homelessness, and poverty require trauma-informed services rather than law enforcement. The cost of 2,000, 277,000 per deputy could be used to hire a social worker, recovery specialist, domestic violence counselor, youth outreach worker, homeless outreach worker, or other trained non-arm professional. These funds could also be invested in self-defense, education, homeless services, youth opportunity passes, pedestrian safety improvements, or sexual assault victim services. The city of Vista should not hire more sheriff deputies. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Naomi Ettenaroli. Oh, Naomi, it looks like you have an older Zoom that's not allowing you to come in. Why don't you try calling instead, please? I can't, I won't allow you to speak. So we'll go to Patrick Ryan. Go ahead, Patrick.
Hi, my name is Patrick Ryan. I'm a citizen and native of Vista, and I would just like to address my concern with the goals as far as public safety goes with the city's current goal of hiring more deputy sheriffs. I would just like to stretch the importance of the reallocation of those funds and the ultimately the bigger vision of changing the way that we deal with, with, like, with law enforcement, policy enforcement, and peacekeeping. I, and so regarding the agenda item D6 and Goal 1, I demand that the city council practice financial responsibility by ceasing all new hires and increases in law enforcement budget, sheriff contracts, deputy hires, and police spending effective immediately. I demand that you use these funds toward resources that can support and prioritize our Black, Indigenous, people of color, and working-class communities in Vista. And, yeah, just ultimately that we review, like, that this is an all-time low, and I don't think we need more sheriffs. We need a lot of things in Vista, and I don't think that that money needs to go towards more sheriffs. I think there's other ways to meet these goals, and there's, you know, now's the time to do it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Carrie Fox. Go ahead, Carrie.
Hi, my name is Carrie Fox, C-A-R-E-Y-F-O-X. My husband and I are residents and registered voters in Vista. I'd like to thank the person who reminded us that we are in Luis Senyo land, and would like to acknowledge that as well. Regarding Goal 1, I demand that the city council practice financial responsibility by ceasing all new hires and increases in law enforcement budget, including sheriffs, contracts, deputy hires, and police spending immediately. I demand you use these funds toward resources that invest in and prioritize Black, Indigenous, and other people of color in our community, as well as working-class communities of Vista. I do not want any additional spending on law enforcement funding in my city. In fact, I want much less. I want you to be clear and transparent about how we spend money on law enforcement by separating law enforcement into its own spending category and providing an easily accessible breakdown of how that money is being used on your website. I want you to reevaluate your strategic plan to address homelessness. It is not okay for unhoused people in Vista to be put in danger because they are forced into interactions with law enforcement, not ever, and especially not during a pandemic. This should not be happening. Please reallocate funding for the sheriff contract to create housing, temporary housing, and shelter for unhoused Vista community members, as well as funding programs that support and invest in vulnerable communities by way of mental health resources, addiction and recovery specialists, housing and benefits advocates, and other types of social work. That is what your community would like to see built. I am demanding that you decriminalize poverty by immediately stopping the enforcement of all illegal panhandling, including on mediums, freeway on and off ramps, as well as illegal camping. I would like for you all to focus on services needed for unhoused members of our community and people that may be at risk for losing their housing. I demand that you set a date for a public hearing to allow the community to speak regarding effective support services for unhoused and underhoused members of our city. You need to create space and prioritize the voices of people who are unhoused at that meeting. I support funding for murals-
Fifteen seconds.
-green spaces and public gardens, and request that those projects be led by and executed by Black, Indigenous, and other people of color within our community. And again, I will state that I do not want you to hire any more deputies, sheriff deputies, and I want you to discontinue the illegal, the enforcement of illegal panhandling-
That's your time. Thank you. Next is Amanda Shor. Amanda, you could go ahead.
Hi, my name is Amanda Shor, A-M-A-N-D-A-S-H-O-R-E. We are a family resident of Vista, and we just really wanted to express our concern for the fight, for the budget, the financial responsibility. We would really love to see funds being more allocated to supporting and prioritizing our Black, Indigenous, and people of color in our community. We'd really love to see our city council step up and respond to the comments being made. I would really love to see why you feel it's necessary to have more deputies. I know that the call is to stop it, but I'd love to see why you thought it was important to begin with. Is there a reason? And if that reason is good enough, is there a different way to allocate those funds for a better solution? I think it's been stated that we have a homeless problem. I would really love to see better resources put in place to help support that community and find better ways to help them instead of continuing the system that we've put them in. And in short, I would just really love to see our voices heard in a way that's represented and then shown back to us by the way that you vote. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Samantha Bell. Go ahead, Samantha.
Hi, my name is Samantha Bell, and I'm also a resident of Vista. I just wanted to say thank you for listening to all of us, and I hope that you can take all these points into account. And now that a lot of us have waited a long time to speak, because this is something that is really, really important, I want to make a point on Goal 1, fiscal responsibility. I would like to reiterate what everyone else has said, that I do not believe we need to hire more sheriffs. I believe that those resources could be used in many other ways to support our community. And I think that the way that we do that is by analyzing our data of our 911 calls and figuring out what, what is Vista actually dealing with, and then figuring out how to respond to those calls without it just being a sheriff's office. Is that therapists? Is it people who have, you know, degrees in those things, and not just sending sheriffs to everything, including our homelessness problem? I think that sending a cop to that situation is not the best option. So I would urge you to please abandon that plan to hire more deputies, and that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is caller with phone number ending 1592.
Hello, hello.
If you please state your name and spelling.
Hi, my name is Julie Negron. I am calling in regards to public safety. Okay, so I, it's two weeks ago, you guys had over 100 people call in and say to reallocate funds from the police department to the community. You guys are tone deaf. The fact that you even put on the agenda to add more deputies, tone deaf. You need to cut it out and listen to your community now, okay? We need funding to go to mental health services. We need funding to go to BIPOC people in our community. We need funding for small businesses. We need funding for gardens, for murals, to make Vista a beautiful place for people to live in. Your people and your community is calling you, and we won't stop until you guys defund and reallocate those funds to us, the people who pay taxes. So listen, or else we'll just get louder. Okay? That's all I'm going to say.
Thank you. Uh, next we have Zoe.
All right. Hi, my name is Zoe Tanner, Z-O-E-E-T-A-N-N-E-R, and I have been a resident of Vista my entire life. With that, I am incredibly invested in the bettering of our community, particularly in regards to equity and racial justice, which I feel the city has continued to fit, which I feel the city has continued to fail to address, and in doing so, is failing our Black, Indigenous, and people of color communities. Regarding agenda item D6, Goal 1, I demand that the city council practice financial responsibility by ceasing all new hires and increases in law enforcement budget, effective immediately. It would be well worth rethinking the effectiveness of our current police and their budget use, especially as it relates to the fear residents have surrounding police brutality in our own community. I'd like to point out the reality of this issue with the separate brutal deaths of Jonathan Cornell and Sergio Wick at the hands of a Vista sheriff who has yet to be held accountable. It is evident that the current police system and their budget is not effective in keeping all of our residents safe, and I would like to see a discussion regarding what the city of Vista plans to do to address police brutality and other forms of systemic racism and oppression before making any budget decisions. In addition, regarding agenda item D6, Goal 3, I demand you reevaluate your strategic plan to address homelessness by discontinuing the enforcement of illegal panhandling camping laws. I question why the council thinks criminalizing aspects of homelessness will help rehabilitate homeless individuals. I strongly suggest, rather than increasing criminalization in an already vulnerable community, that the city invests in their rehabilitation rehabilitation and increases allocating resources towards valuable social services, such as the establishment of a new homeless shelter in Vista, or hiring more social workers, therapists, and addiction recovery specialists to rehabilitate those members of our community, as well as hosting a public hearing where you listen to your community regarding effective support services for homeless individuals and affordable housing. Homelessness is not a crime, and we deserve to value all of our citizens by being more equitable in our resources, by increasing accessibility to such resources. Thank you for listening, and I really hope that you make sure that you put all of our citizens first in any changes in any goals. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Nichelle Brown. Go ahead, Nichelle.
Hi, so in regards to Goal 5, I ask you to abandon your plan to hire more- Hi, um, so in regards to goal five, I ask you to abandon your plan to hire more deputies and cease police, police spending under the guise of public safety. In regards to goal one, I demand that the city council practice financial responsibility by ceasing all new hires and increases in law enforcement budget, sheriff contracts, deputy hires and police spending effective immediately. I demand you reallocate these funds to help Black Indigenous people and other people of color within Vista. Have you not been keeping up with local news? Have you not been listening to BIPOC voices? The police have been abusing their power across the country. San Diego County is no different. As a Black woman, I find the increase in deputies as a threat to my family's lives, my friends' lives and my life. Black lives matter. They have always mattered. It is time y'all recognize that. Also, stop looking so bored and y'all better be writing notes rather than looking at your phones. It is a privilege and an honor to serve our community, so you better start acting like it. Thank you.
Thank you. Navasha Moon?
Hi again. So have you really just not been listening to us? For weeks now, we've been telling you, we do not want more deputies hired. We want defunding and reallocating of police funds. Yet here it is on the document for you to review like we haven't been speaking. This isn't a trend. This isn't a phase. This isn't something that's just gonna go away in a little while. So criminalizing homeless people by enforcing anti-panhandling laws and raiding campouts, that is just so inhumane of you and so unethical. And it really, it just, it's ridiculous. And also the crime-free multi-housing program, that's just the step ahead of people becoming homeless. If you really look at it, like, that does not help families. That does not help individuals. And it just makes the numbers look good of crime rates going down, but it's, it's a crock of shit. So reconsider that one, please. Um, yeah, and also limiting our comment time to two minutes is extremely rude and completely unacceptable. And furthermore, if you guys proceed to limit the amount of comments you're willing to take because we are actually using our voices, well, just don't do it because it's not gonna go over well. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is caller ending with four, three, one, eight. Caller, if you please state your name and the spelling.
Hi, my name is, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, my name is Barbara. I am a resident of district two and I just would like to reiterate what my fellow constituents have already stated. For agenda D six, goals, I'd like to focus in on goal one, three and five. My, my name is Barbara yet again. I am a resident and I'm regarding agenda item D six, I demand that the city council practice financial responsibility by ceasing all new hires and increases in law enforcement budget, sheriff, sheriff contracts, deputy hires and policy, police spending effective immediately. I demand you use these funds towards resources that support and prioritize our Black Indigenous people of color and working class communities in Vista. Also, I demand that you make law enforcement its own spending category, put a detailed budget online for all your constituents are able to review it. And I also, um, demand discontinuing the enforcement of illegal panhandling for the community of the homeless population. They don't need more sheriffs. They don't need more policing. They need help. We are here to demand that you help us and you listen to us. This is not a time for you guys to make a coin flip and not listen to your constituents. Please take, take heed unto what we are saying because if you guys do not take the responsibility on voting for what the community is asking for, we will vote you out in next, next, um, primaries. And yet again, why do we need more police officers to, to, um, conduct public safety in this community? Why do we keep arresting homeless when they're, when they could be used to rehabilitation, they could have mental health? Focus in on, let's stay focused and let's help this community. Let's be Vista strong and let's stay on the agenda. Let's not aid to systematic oppression. Listen to your constituents that are asking for this. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, let's see. Our next speaker is Sarah.
Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, my name is Sarah Sandoval and I'm calling to demand we seize all new hires to the sheriff department. I don't approve increasing their budget. I believe we should all allocate those funds to our homeless population. They're targeted because of the color of their skin mostly. We need to allocate funds for mental health and for more resources to assist our community. I demand we offer more housing for them, social workers. And I also think that these lower crime buildings are only gonna affect our minorities because they'll be more at risk to be racially profiled. And we've been speaking out and if you don't hear our voices, we demand change. We will vote you out and you will lose your jobs. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Karina Valdespino. Go ahead, Karina.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Hi, my name is Karina Valdespino and I'm here to comment on the goals one, three and five. I would like to thank, um, everyone who has spoken before me and also reiterate what other folks have already commented, commented on, um, on in regards to the budget allocated to the police. I also would like to demand that the city council practice financial responsibility by ceasing all new hires and increases in law enforcement budget, sheriff contracts, deputy hires and police spending effective immediately. The reality of many Black and POC lives in Vista who've lived here many years, many of them my friends, my family, my community members, is that we do not feel protected. We do not feel safe by having police in our communities. The only people who do feel safe by the police are the white people and gentrifiers who I have seen firsthand inhabit new luxury housing sprouting about in Vista, a place in which I have lived here my entire life and also have experienced homelessness and other difficulties that many other Black and POC lives have also experienced. I challenge you all, the members of this council, to think about why you all think that criminalizing unhoused folk, unhoused folks and families will benefit the Vista at all. I just really demand that you reevaluate how you guys are using these funds and just, as other people have mentioned, just use these to fund programs, fund other ways to help our community members that do not involve the police. If anything, police cause crimes. They cause a lot of distress amongst our communities that is, that can be prevented in like altogether. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Sydney Willis. Go ahead, Sydney.
Hi, my name is Sydney Relles and I'm a resident of North County and I'm asking the city council to seize new hires within law enforcement in Vista. Um, Vista does not need more police officers on our streets. We need more resources to support our Black Indigenous and people of color. I don't believe that hiring more police officers will solve our issues in Vista because crime occurs when our community members are not receiving the help and resources they need to prosper. I'm asking for these funds to be reallocated to homeless shelters, substance abuse rehabilitation, therapists, community gardens and other source, resources that will help our community. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Next is Kai Simovich. Go ahead, Kai.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Hi, my name is Kai Getza Simovich and I'd like to talk on point four of economic development. No, I'm just kidding. Uh, please defund the police. I'd like to stand with my Indigenous, Black, Latinx brothers and sisters and echo what's been already previously stated. I demand the city council implement an attitude of fiscal responsibility by ceasing all new hires and increases in law enforcement spending effective immediately. A more fiscally responsible avenue for those funds would be toward resources that support and prioritize our Black Indigenous and people of color and working class communities. This includes reallocating funds from the sheriff's contract towards support services for individuals in a state of houselessness. And we also demand a public hearing where you all listen to our community regarding effective support services for individuals in a state of houselessness and affordable housing. I'd like to go into some more detail about the crime-free multi-housing pro- program. This program is predatory. It contains language in its manual that seeks to directly and indirectly dissuade already marginalized people from applying for this type of housing. Page thirty-nine of this program's workbook specifically walks through how as a property owner to avoid a discrimination lawsuit and what language to use in that kind of situation. I'd like to once again pose the question, why do you think increased policing will keep your communities safe? It is absolutely ineffective. Don't take my word for it. Here is a direct quote from page seventy-three of the Crime Free Multi-Housing Program Workbook published by the San Diego Sheriff's Department. Even if they could a visit a couple times per day, the likelihood that they would be in the right place at the right time is slim. Random passes through are barely effective. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next is Noe.
Hi, my name is, uh, Noe Arroyo. Um, I'm just one of the many Vista, um, people here, um, that just wants to call out that it's a disgrace that you guys are even considering hiring more deputies. First of all, most of you have completely failed to even acknowledge the situation and the fact that you've been considering hiring more deputies is beyond us. You have all witnessed many protests, many people calling in to, to bring defunding to the police and you guys still considering hiring more deputies. Then you have completely failed to acknowledge the people in Vista. It is a disgrace to the Black people in our community, the people of color and even the working class of Vista. And we need to reallocate these funds, you know, to, to stuff that actually stop crime, that actually keep our communities safe, like education, mental health, clinics, drug addiction facilities, not sheriffs that just kill our people and enforce unjust laws that target our people of color and working class. Maybe y'all don't see police in your neighborhood because you live in your nice neighborhoods where police doesn't patrol because they don't have people of, people of color to target. But when you live in my community, you see too many cops. You see too many patrol, patrolling the area and targeting the marginalized commu- communities. This just shows how disconnected from the community you guys are and how unfit you are for those positions that you hold. You guys, most of you have completely even failed to acknowledge the situation that's going and it's just a disgrace of your positions to even put some thought into hiring more deputies. That's all I'm gonna say today.
Thank you. Next is caller with the last four numbers of six, six, two, eight. Caller, if you please state your name and the spelling.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Naomi Antinarelli, N A O M I A N T I N A R E L L I. I'm a resident of North County and as I've been on this call for five hours since five thirty and it's been a constant theme that you guys are not listening to your community, straight up not listening, meaning you are failing your community. You are not representing us and you're supporting the brutalization of our people. Your policies that you're, um, the goal that you're guising under public safety support the, the harmful reality that so many Black Indigenous people of color in Vista are experiencing under the hands of police brutality and sheriffs. And it's just not in the favor of our community to increase the budget or to hire any more sheriffs. So I demand that you cease all the new hires and any increases in law enforcement budget, including deputy hires and police spending effective immediately. And criminalizing homelessness is not the solution. We need to actually think about how do we, how do we create a safe community for the people who live here? That is not the way, especially with the crime-free multi-housing program. That's creating homelessness. So that needs to end right away, effective immediately. Relocate those funds from the sheriff contract to actually support services for homeless individuals instead of putting them in prison. The establishment of a new homeless shelter in Vista would be great. Hiring more social workers, therapists and addiction and recovery specialists to rehabilitate members of the community is a solution. There's so many solutions that you guys are not even considering. Abandon your plan to hire more deputies and cease police spending. Also cease the enforcement of panhandling immediately. And please just listen to us.
Thank you. Next is caller ending in one, five, nine, two. Caller, if you please state the na- your name and the spelling.
Hi, this is Julie Negron again. I didn't finish what I wanted to say earlier.
I'm sorry, you can't speak a second time. You can only speak once on an item.
The crime housing, um, is completely like disgusting and it's, it's bad.
I'm gonna go ahead and say what you're talking. All right. So that completes, um, comments. We'll go ahead and close a public comment opportunity on this item. Mary, you're on mute. There you go. That takes us back to our discussion items with our council members. So, um, I guess I'll start with Councilwoman Franklin. Do you wanna start the discussion?
Sure, why not? First, I wanna say that we have heard the request for social workers. That's something that we spoke about tonight, uh, in the item where we received funding for, uh, our homelessness outreach program. Uh, that is something that we've, uh, realized that we need to do and we're doing. Uh, we've, uh, realized that we need to provide more beds for the homeless. So we're funding a program, uh, to provide beds for the homeless. Uh, in addition to the work we're already doing for, uh, homeless women and children, we're, uh, gonna fund, I think it's ten, uh, beds for homeless males. Um, we are currently working and, um, I'm proud that I've been spearheading, uh, the effort with Supervisor Jim Desmond, uh, with support from, uh, at least, uh, several of my colleagues, um, to bring a crisis stabilization, uh, unit, a mental health crisis stabilization unit, uh, to Vista. Uh, we haven't finalized it yet, uh, but we are working to do that, uh, in partnership with the county. So we are investing in mental health. Uh, we are not a, a monolithic city or council or council members. Uh, we don't believe in just one idea. We are taking an all of the above approach. When it comes to this idea of defunding the police, uh, I wanna speak to all the young people that we heard from tonight and I wanna urge you to think about your mothers, your fathers, your grandmothers and your grandfathers and people who, uh, are vulnerable, uh, people who have lived long enough to suffer and be victimized by crime. And, uh, I want you to really search your soul and really think about the vulnerable in our community. Uh, women who are the victims of, uh, domestic violence and rape, uh, people who, uh, are hardworking people who, uh, have their homes, uh, violated, uh, who are burglarized, uh, people who are assaulted, uh, people who are victimized by gang violence, uh, mothers whose children are killed, uh, by gang violence, uh, whose, uh, children's lives are destroyed, uh, families' lives who are destroyed when their children, uh, die of, uh, of addiction to, uh, illicit drugs being sold in our streets by, uh, by criminals. Uh, those are the reasons that we have the police. Uh, those are the reasons that we fund the sheriff's department. And those of us who were on this council have gone door to door, each one of us, and knocked on and spoken to thousands of voters in our city. Uh, and we have talked to our community members and that's why we are sitting here tonight doing the people's business. And what people want in our city that we represent is they want a safe and a clean community. And we will continue to work to provide a safe community. And we want to continue to, to further a dialogue with all people in the community of all colors and all races and all ages and conditions about how we build a better sense of community. We want that. Whether you believe that or not, we want that. We want the police to have, uh, buy-in in the communities they work in. We want the police, we want our deputy sheriffs to be people of all colors and of all- and of all experience in life. And we want them to reflect the communities they serve in. We want them to have compassion for the community they serve. But I myself, for one member of the council, I do not support defunding the police. I will never support that. And if you're a voter in my district and you disagree with me, then I respect your disagreement. And if you feel the need not to reelect me because of it, I'm okay with that. I want to live in a safe community. It's one of the reasons I ran for the council. And it's the reason I will continue to fight to support our deputy sheriffs. I also have seen instances where the deputy sheriffs have, in some cases, abused power to use, you know, physical restraint. And I will tell you, and you don't know because you haven't been in the room, that I have had very pointed words, not only for senior leaders of the Sheriff's Department, but also for our Deputy Sheriff's Association. And I have asked them to do better. I care about how we treat people in our community. I care about protecting people's civil rights. I care about not physically abusing the mentally ill. Those are things that we all care about. We're human beings too. We want to treat people decently. And the tone and the insinuation that we don't care is wrong. It's wrong. And you need to check yourselves because we do care. And we want to see everybody in our community treated fairly. And from whatever background we come from, all of us in public service want to improve things. We want people to feel comfortable when they see the police on their street. And we fully understand that there are many who do not. And let me tell you, that hurts us. That hurts us that the public safety that we are trying to provide to protect all people's rights and to make everyone feel safe, that that doesn't, that some people do not feel safe because of that? That hurts us. We want to fix that. We want to have a dialogue. But we have got to be joined together, all of us, from every part of our city and our country, in fighting crime, no matter who commits that crime. Because Black Lives Matter, Brown Lives Matter, all lives matter, okay? Everybody's life is equal and everybody deserves to have their rights to their life and their liberty protected. We all believe that. So I know there's a lot of people gonna be unhappy about what I've had to say. And I'm okay with that because I want to start the dialogue. And I want to hear people who want to be safe in their homes. You know, it's time for us to speak up too. It's time for us to be heard too. We all deserve to be safe in our homes. We all deserve to be safe in our community. Children deserve to be safe in their schools. And what's gonna happen as a consequence of de-policing? You know what? You're right. A lot of the people that you're wanting to speak truth to don't live in the communities that are affected by some of the worst crimes. But who's gonna be hurt by de-policing? Who's gonna suffer the result of that? Is it gonna be, is it gonna be the people that you want to speak truth to? Or is it gonna be your family? Is it gonna be people who are the most vulnerable to victimization in our society? I'm gonna stand up for those people as long as I'm in this public office. So I continue to support our city's goals. I continue to support our goals to provide services. We, and I was the one that asked that homelessness and working to solve homelessness would not be a sub-goal, that it would be one of our primary goals in the city of Vista. Because I care about ending homelessness. And it's not enough to continue to treat the symptoms of the problem. We've got to do something about it. We've got to continue to take new approaches. I don't agree with all the approaches that we've come up with as a city. But you know what? At least we're trying to do something about it. And some of it's not gonna work. And some of it is. I hope we'll be smart and we'll do more of what works and less of what doesn't. But we're gonna experiment. We're gonna try different things. We're gonna solve the problem. We're gonna clean up the trash off of our streets, the physical litter. We've invested more in that. We're investing in cleaning up our waterways. And we're gonna make sure that your sons and your daughters and your brothers and your cousins do not die of methamphetamine and heroin addiction living in piles of bottles of their own feces and urine. And those of us who have been down into the ravines that are populated by the homeless community have seen the condition they live in. We've seen the sores that cover their body. We've seen the degradation of humanity that has to be addressed. If you are a moral person, if you care about other people, then you care about addressing that condition. You want to talk about criminalizing the homeless? Let me tell you something. What's criminal is walking past somebody who is in a state of human degradation, somebody who is dying, and you do nothing. You walk away and you do not take the opportunity to reach out to that human being the way we are called to and lift them up out of that circumstance. That's immoral. That's wrong. We are called as human beings, no matter what God you worship, whether you worship God or not, you know it is your responsibility. When you see somebody in that circumstance, it is your responsibility to lift out your hand to them and to lift them up out of it. And for those who want to walk past that circumstance, allow it to multiply and allow people to die in those circumstances? It's wrong. I'm telling you right now, it's wrong. We have to stand up and we have to do something about it. So I could go on all night. I won't, I'll suspend right here. But you know, it's time for those of us who have differing perspectives to start sharing our voices too. And I'm not gonna be silent. And I'm not gonna be shouted down. And I'm not gonna have, you know, people use language that assumes negative and evil intention on behalf of people who support law enforcement. Because that's not true. You need to listen to the whole story. You need to get all the facts. You need to come forward and have the conversations with us. Pick up the phone, call us, ask us what we think. Every one of us here picks up the phone every time our constituents calls us. And we will speak to every one of our constituents by phone as long as it takes to answer your questions. And even to listen to you tell us you don't like what we're doing. That's fine. Pick up the phone and call us. Thank you for your time.
Councilmember Contreras.
Sure. I appreciate all the comments that came in. I know just throughout the whole council meeting. I think it's great that the public is taking a look at our budget and some of the priorities that we have set forth. I know I personally worked, I'm the minority on this council in so many ways, but I personally worked really hard to get some of these goals on here. Pursue workforce education and financial literacy training for youth, improve pedestrian and bike safety, invest in more tree canopies, research state programs, assist with financing for residential parks and community gardens. But I think the public has made a request of us not to take personally the fact that they are trying to hold us accountable to a better vision of Vista. And I have to say that I'm hearing the public regarding public safety, specifically our goal to continue to hire more deputies. And I want to know if I'm getting, if I have the history right here. So right before I came on council, there was a vote in 2018. There is a year-end fund balance. I want to say it was probably, if I remember the council meeting correctly, I was just a little peon, not sitting up there with everybody, but you know, in the audience. And I haven't gone back and looked at this council meeting because it is a little bit upsetting. But there was a year-end fund balance, meaning what the council has appropriated for the year, not all of it was used. So there's some balance left over. And when that happens, the council gets to have a discussion about how they want to utilize those funds. And I also remember there was a conversation about hiring park rangers. That didn't end up coming to fruition because it was stated that they're not allowed to carry a gun. And so what's the point in having a park ranger if they're just gonna have to call the sheriff, a sheriff's deputy to come over since they have a gun? Now, also, when we're looking at how much it costs the city to have an additional deputy on our contract, we're looking $277,000 is what the document before us states. So my question is, why was it considered financially prudent to use a one-time allocation of this year-end fund balance to hire a deputy that's going to cost more than that over the course of several years, right? Also, from 2016 till now, we have spent a little over $5 million additional dollars on our sheriff's contract. I don't feel $5 million safer. I'll tell you that. Also, we're using the stat of, we're using, the premise is that deputies are a proxy, the number of deputies are being used as a proxy for safety. But I don't see the data that backs that. And I do believe that we could become, get into a pretty dire financial situation if we have a goal that simply states to hire more deputies. Because we wouldn't put a goal that says, let's hire more firefighters. Let's hire, you know, more technicians. And also, you know, right now, when we're laying people off, when my coworkers at the city are being laid off, it's just not, this is, this is not a good goal. If we want to revisit it after COVID, you know, I think the council, let's revisit it. But right now, to have a goal that says hire more deputies, I just don't think that's financially the right decision for our council to make. Now, I want to go back, right, to when we voted for our budget. I voted for it. I should be held accountable for that as well. So we moved from a one-year budget to a two-year budget. But I distinctly remember in our conversations how upsetting it was that we are floating our budget on proposed cannabis dollars. So I don't think it's okay for us to welcome more cannabis businesses, more hotels for TOT, just to get revenue to hire more deputies. I mean, that just, that is not a good goal, you guys, okay? I hope you understand that this is not something that we need to take personally. The public is asking for us to please review the financial situation that our city is in. Because I know that I wasn't the only one that was really frustrated that we were floating our budget on proposed cannabis dollars. So we can't afford to just keep hiring deputies. We absolutely cannot afford to hire deputies. Are we seeing a decrease in the time it takes for a deputy to arrive to the scene where someone calls in for help? I know personally, when I, you know, called for a deputy to come to the skate park, it took a very long time. And I notated the time that the deputy arrived. And when I checked back, the time of arrival was about 15 minutes earlier, which is a complete lie. Because I took notes of the situation, right? And I'm hearing from my constituents a lot that, you know, they're calling the deputies and it's taking them a very long time to get to the site that they're being called at. And I know that some calls come in and they're not high priority. But for $5 million more since 2016? You talked about domestic violence. Domestic violence rates are going up in the county. You know, I know when I had a conversation with our previous captain at the Vista Station, Captain Reilersdham, we discussed domestic violence and the fact that, you know, we have, we have more deputies, but what's happening to our domestic violence? Perhaps a badge and a gun is not the best situation for an individual that's experiencing domestic violence. So what the community is asking is saying, hey, council, can you take a look at what your goals are? And make sure that they are based on financial prudency and that they are going to create the type of Vista that we all want. You know, I know when I did my ride-along with the sheriffs, you know, I was like, hey, what do you guys think about more lights? They're like, yeah, I can't believe there's not more lights in some of the high-crime areas. So for the price of one deputy for one year on our contract at $277,000, you know, I don't have the price just off the top of my head of what a light costs, but I feel like we could get like one and a half lights per deputy. We know, we did talk about social workers during our strategic plan. So we know that for the price of one deputy for one year, we can have two social workers, because they're about $100,000. And we could provide about $20,000 in flex funds for those social workers to do the job that they needed to do and still have money left over for the price of one deputy. So I just, I have a really hard time understanding why the goal is to hire more deputies. I really don't understand that because we would never have that as a goal for any other position. You know, I, when we talk about protecting our brothers, our uncles, our sisters, our cousins, well, you know what? My uncle, he's a proud Marine. He survived deployment but did not survive at the hands of the Vista sheriffs. So those are all my comments. I do not agree with hiring more deputies. And I think that we need to take a look at our multi-family housing as well. Because I don't, I don't think we've done any surveys of people that have been ejected. So I'm gonna stop there.
Ms. Mira Rigby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to start off first by saying thank you to Kevin Hamm and to staff for putting this together for us. We come together as a city council in a public workshop to talk about the goals for the city. We've talked to constituents, we meet with people. And these are the goals that we, all five of us agreed on earlier this year before COVID. And it takes a lot for our staff and our community to come together to implement these goals. And the agenda item tonight on D6 was an update on how we are doing in achieving the goals that we set forth. And so I want to say thank you, Kevin, for the work that you did, as well as everybody on staff that comes together to pull this together and to make sure that what we are asking for our community is implemented. But for those who are talking about the homeless situation in our community, which is significant, and we all know that. There's no denying it, there's no talking down to it. It is a significant issue. And that is something that we as a council have been addressing for the last couple of years, specifically addressing. And there were a couple of us who said we need to address this and put this on our council goals specifically for homelessness. Because no matter what the county was doing or the state was doing, it just seemed across the board, across the county, that the problem was getting worse. And so if you, if you look at the item in tonight, our public hearing number three that we had earlier discussion on, we allocated $2,453,292 for the permanent local housing allocation program. That is to address homelessness. And over the last year, we have been, we identified in previous council goals a year ago, two years ago, that we really wanted to tackle this head-on. What can we do as a community? Because honestly, the state has failed us. The state has done some things that I won't go into, it's another conversation. But forces outside of the city have helped create this situation that all of our cities are now facing and that it is growing exponentially. So we wanted to find out as a community, what can we do to help our community? And so we put together the goal of having a homeless master plan to address homelessness, to identify the risk factors, the vulnerabilities that place people- the risk factors, the vulnerabilities that place people into homelessness. What they need to get out of homelessness, how to address the issues that, that presented themselves to these people. And there are, there are as many issues as there are number of homeless people. And what can we do as a community to address that? And so, we had a series of community meetings, open meetings located around the city for people to come, and we had great turnout of community members at these meetings to discuss homelessness, to discuss what they see in homelessness and what their ideas are. And where they wanted to see the money go, because if there's going to be funding, how is that money best used to serve the most people in a permanent fashion? These were all questions that we asked, we did ask the hard questions on this. We had community members come out, multiple meetings, we had our experts who have been helping us to guide us through the process of creating a homeless master plan. Uh, people who are experienced in the process and the outcomes, because this isn't something to make us feel good that we're doing something, we actually expect results. So that's what you see in, in the council goals. We, we talked about earlier in the agenda was public hearing three, where we allocated, we accepted these funds to go to some of these programs. But here in, in goal number three, it says, you know, we re- we released a request for proposal to contract with a social worker to engage people who are experiencing homelessness, and we anticipate executing the contract in August of this year. So to say that we aren't doing anything, I think, I think really is a little bit disingenuous, because we really truly are. And some of us, if not all of us, are also doing things uh behind the scenes on uh what we can do for people uh experiencing homelessness. So I, I hear what you're saying, and I, I want you to know that we all hear everything that you're saying. And I, I wish that we could show you everything that we are doing all the time as a city and as individuals to address this problem as well as other problems. So I want you to know that we have been having community meetings on this, and if, if you weren't notified, or you didn't get the message and you weren't able to attend, I really very am sorry, I very, am sorry about that. Um, because we do try to put this information out to all of our constituents through so many avenues of communication, whether it's in print, it's on the website, it is uh through newsletter and the email blast that we send out. We have several different avenues that we use, and we put this information out on all of them. And so I hope that you'll sign up for any one of those, so that the next time we have a series of community meetings to address something, that you will come and then you will share your input, your ideas with us. So, I just, I just wanted to also say that when we talk about um some of the, the mental health issues, not just on homelessness, because a lot of the homeless are experiencing drug and alcohol or mental health issues. Um, and so we do need to make sure that they are taken care of, and that also they are not a, a safety hazard to the community, as sometimes happens. But also, when our sheriff's deputies are called to certain uh calls, if it's explained that it's necessary and if they can call for it later. But I've been on many, many ride-alongs, and situations have come up, and sheriff's deputies have gone out, but they have also been accompanied by the PERT team, which I think is the um psych- psychol- psychological emergency response team for people who are experiencing uh mental health uh issues or, or breakdown, or, or whatever the verbiage is that you want to use. And so we do have these, these trained professionals that go to these calls, or that do, are the ones that are interacting with the community when that's necessary. And um, so sometimes when we're looking at budgeting, or we're looking at contracts with the sheriff's department, we're looking at all the resources that the department has to offer for our community. So I don't want you to think that it's just always the deputies and their heavy-handedness, which I don't agree that that's the case. I, I, just as we are asked all the time to not look at as, any demographic as a whole by the actions of one or two or a few, that's how I look at our police department, which is our sheriff's department. I know we got a lot of letters about the Vista fi- Vista Police Department, which we contract with the sheriffs. They are a dedicated group of professionals who are there to keep the public safe, who are there to help in times of need. And somebody made a comment that, and I, and I wrote it down, because I actually have been writing notes this whole time, not on my phone. But somebody made a comment that criminals only resort to that if they haven't been provided the things that they need by their community or their city. And as much as I would like to believe that that's true, my experience is there are just some people out there who are having bad behavior. They, they, they just are, are having bad behavior, they're part of the criminal element. And you can't ignore that, and to, to try to ignore that is being very naive, and in itself puts the public at risk. Um, as a city, we want to try to help as many people as we can in as many ways as we can, using all of the resources that we have available to us. And when we don't have resources, we try to go out and create our own resources, which is what we've done with the homeless master plan. So, I also agree with Councilman Franklin and a lot of what he said, he was, he was spot on, and I appreciate his words. And I would not be in favor of defunding our sheriff's department. Um, I think that would be a detriment to the community, because public safety is one of the paramount responsibilities of a city government, of your city council, is to make sure that the public safety is maintained. And so that is a, a priority for all of us in whatever iteration that works best for our community, and I think all five of us are open for discussion on that, which we have those discussions quite frequently, and always in public, and you're always invited. So, I just want to say thank you to everybody who stayed on the line for the five hours, or almost six hours now. And I appreciate hearing from you, we all hear you. Uh, we all want to do what's right for our city, but it's the conversation that we, we need to have, because there are a lot of different levels to each one of these conversations. And sometimes I think not all the information is out there. For instance, you know, tonight, $2.4 million for homeless, homelessness services, and different uh things for that. So, we are hearing you, we are working for you, we are doing our best for you. And I always appreciate hearing from you, and I hope to hear from you more, I'm sure we will. Um, but thank you, everybody, for being here, it's late, I appreciate everything that staff has done for us. And I appreciate all of you out there sticking with us for this meeting, and for all of your comments on all of our agenda items tonight. Uh, thank you very much, Vista. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Green?
All right, thank you so much, Madam Mayor. I just also want to thank staff for giving us the updates on this item, obviously this was supposed to be an update on where we're at with our goals. Um, I just want to say, uh, public safety, infrastructure, business development, so three main jobs of any city councilman. We got to make sure our public's safe, got to make sure we have adequate infrastructure, make sure we're constantly uh developing businesses and bringing new businesses that our community is gonna frequent. Um, I've been working with my sheriff's department since I got elected day one. I grew up in Vista, uh all over, every district in the city I have lived in. I have had run-ins with our law enforcement, and I'm proud to say that the day I got elected, I met, met with uh Barb Barnett, Mike, Mark Barnett, actually, I guess, who was the uh, the under sheriff of Bill Gore, and he came down to Vista to meet with me and to talk to me. And we talked about community policing, and how we can have more events in Vista, when we could be seeing people on better days, and not just their worst days, and how we can really bring the sheriff in as a, a member of the community. And over the last four years, we've come up with the trunk-or-treat thing uh for Halloween. So you guys can come see the sheriffs at Halloween, trunk-or-treat, they do the Tunnel of Kindness at our schools, uh they do coffee with the sheriff's captain locally. They've tried to do reach-out, and they're working much harder to be a much better community-based police source. Um, I was the guy who wanted a two-part Rangers uh a couple of years ago, based off of the budget, and uh we did end up hiring a sheriff's deputy. But what really surprised me is that was the first deputy we had hired in almost four years. We currently have about 86 sheriff's deputies serving our town, I might be off a number or two on that, but we have a 110,000 population. And, you know, they say, one deputy per thousand, we're well under that. And we're not saying we're gonna hire a bunch of sheriff's deputies, but we always want that to be at the forefront. Councilman Contreras herself said, response times are low, you know, our sheriff's deputies are spread thin. I've done so many ride-alongs with them, I've, you know, done the homeless walks, I've worked with the gang task force team. And each sheriff, the second they leave the station, they're on the road, call to call to call to call to call, sometimes for 12 hours non-stop. And it has to do with the number, in my opinion, because they can't hit the calls. If you had more sheriffs, you could hit more calls. So, I think from a public safety aspect, that is something that should stay on there, that if we have the ability to hire sheriff's deputies, we should hire them. Now, that doesn't mean that we've discounted the, you know, other aspects of the community that we have to look into, as you heard from Deputy Mayor Rigby and uh Councilmember Franklin, we have funds allocated all over our budget for our community, and we're constantly working hard. Uh, the organization that sent out the call to action tonight had some demands, uh, you know, defund the sheriff's department in, uh, don't make panhandling illegal in the medians anymore, and stop your crime-free housing. I believe our crime-free housing is some of our affordable housing. And in order to live there, we say you shouldn't be committing crimes, or using drugs, or doing things like that. Makes for a non-conducive family environment, and I think everybody would agree with that. Um, so, I, I mean, the three demands that came forward, I feel like personally, those were against my goals towards public safety. I have a wife and three daughters, they all drive, and uh I, I think not having uh homeless people approaching you in the median, number one, it's dangerous standing in the median when cars are driving around, but, you know, it makes people feel uncomfortable. I'm six foot one, 300 something pounds, and I feel uncomfortable when somebody I don't know comes and knocks on my window asking for money. So, we're trying to create an environment here in Vista, this environment that our community can feel safe in, that they can thrive, they can be successful, and they can enjoy life. Um, so, you know, as far as our city council goals, like we say, we set them every couple of years, we have workshops. Me personally, I'm available 100% of the time. Out of the 100 people who spoke tonight, I didn't have any uh phone calls from them to meet with me, if they emailed me, I responded, I tried to get back to everybody. My number at the city council, 760-639-6130. Call, make an appointment, sit down with me, tell me what your concerns are. Um, but, kind of like uh Councilman Franklin and Deputy Mayor Rigby said, this is my job. Uh, I do take it seriously, and I do take public safety seriously, and I do think that our sheriffs are working very hard to police our community. And I think as a council, we are working great to keep the community safe. So, um, I, I don't support defunding my sheriff's department. Um, I personally do not support decriminalizing illegal panhandling in the medians. I don't think that is a good thing for public safety. And our crime-free housing has to be crime-free in order to help rehabilitate and uh get our communities that are in, you know, really bad situations, out of these situations. As a councilman, a long-term Vista, I love this town. Um, you know, it's, it's like a family member to me. I, I rep Vista every day, everywhere that I'm at. And um, I know that I'm not right 100% of the time, I'm open to constructive criticism, I'm open to suggestions, but all I say is, give us a shot, talk to us about it, don't make assumptions, know we all work really hard, we all love this community, and that we're all working to keep it as safe as we possibly can. I own a home here, and I plan on my family staying here forever, and buying homes, and having kids, and I want to be a grandpa in Vista someday, taking my kids to the waves. So, um, in order for that to happen, we have to keep the community safe, and just keep uh, keep our goals focused on that. And I think as a council, we set good goals, we agreed to these goals, we approved our budget, let's move on and move forward next year, and take a lot more things in consideration with our next goal-setting session. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Councilmember Green. And I, and I actually agree with my three councilmembers, Franklin and Deputy Mayor Rigby and Councilmember Green, and um, I, I, you know, our, our sheriffs also go into the schools, and they do the, 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 the I went to the last, the last two deputy, junior deputy programs I went to, where they work with the kids, they graduated in the 90s, uh, uh, each one, 90 kids, and we're like one of the only cities that have that program in our schools. We also do the GRAPE program in, in one of the schools. So our deputies reach out for the youngsters and things, which I, they don't do that in other cities, and I, you know, so I think they do a, a great job, so. Um, I'm, we need a motion on this, so um, I'll, I'll make the motion if I can get a second on it.
I have another comment, right, just, as a point of Well, just then, I have a motion.
Mayor?
I have a point of information to make.
Mayor, I just, if I could jump in, uh, on this item, it's just to receive, uh, receive the item, so there's no need for a motion this evening.
Okay. All right then, Councilmember Contreras?
Yeah, I just want to uh make a point of information that San Marcos is the second safest city in San Diego County, and they spend $21 million on their sheriffs, whereas we spend just a little over $25,000 on our contracts, so. I just want to throw that out there as a point of information.
Madam Mayor?
Yes?
Just a point of information, the population of San Marcos, about 20,000, maybe 15,000 less than Vista, so just apples to oranges on the population figures and the dollars.
Okay, so, um, with that, um, if that's the end of that, then we were gonna move on to our oral communications, so. Do we have any oral communications, our city clerk?
Actually, I just cleared, we had some people who um came in late on the last one, so if we give folks a minute, if they'd like to speak on oral communication? Okay, I do not see anyone that's requested to speak on oral communication.
Okay, well, with that, then we will go um to our remarks, and so um, I will go, I'll start with, who wants, who wants to start? Councilmember Contreras, start with you, you're smiling nice.
All righty, thank you, appreciate it. Um, well, as always, I want to thank um all my coworkers, AKA staff, and my colleagues for a very animated discussion tonight. Um, we have a lot to consider, uh, moving forward, of how our community uh wants to work with us, and they want us to work with them to build a, a better Vista for all of us. Um, with that said, there's a heck of a lot of trash still. Um, so, uh, my little crew on Wednesday has resumed. Um, we start at 9:00 AM at Luz Duran uh Park, and we go until about 11:00 AM, and we walk anywhere between two and three miles, and we pick up trash uh within, you know, the vicinity. Uh, so if you want to join in, please bring your mask. Uh, we do uh practice social distancing while picking up trash. Uh, not always the most comfortable thing, uh, having to wear a mask and um be under the sun and, and, but, uh, we've already seen a difference in, in picking up trash. So, and I also just want to give a shout-out to Public Works, thank you so much for always picking up the trash that we pick up that needs to then get picked up by you guys, so. Um, thank you so much for that. Um, with that, I, I just want to wish everybody a, a good night. Um, it's 11:19, I, I feel like we did um just a lot of good discussion today, so. I look forward to uh, to the next council meeting, which won't be for a while, and, until August. So I hope everybody has a fabulous July. Um, I'm actually surprised that I didn't have any fireworks go off today. Uh, 4th of July has started pretty early in my neighborhood, so. Um, yeah, no fireworks today, so it's kind of odd. Uh, but you all have a good one, and um, yes, thank you.
Deputy Mayor Rigby?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, again, I want to say thank you to everybody who called in, who wrote us emails, sent us messages. Really appreciate your involvement, I appreciate very much your voice, and I appreciate your participation, because that's what this is all about. And I want to say thank you to staff. Um, again, you guys do a great job, you all do a great job for us um in putting together what, what we ask for. Um, so I appreciate that very, very much. And I want to wish everybody a very happy, happy, happy Independence Day, 243, uh, I think is our birthday this year. And I do know that the fireworks started in my neighborhood about two weeks ago. And every single night, at the same time, somebody back here is uh letting fireworks go. So, I just want to say, uh, have a very safe and very happy Independence Day uh celebration, however you celebrate it this year, given the circumstances that we find ourselves in. So with that, Madam Mayor, thank you very much, and thank you to my colleagues.
Councilmember Green?
All right, hey, I just want to thank Vista for showing up, uh, thanks for commenting, thank my colleagues for working so hard, man. Everybody goes through their agendas, they're pounding pavement, they're out walking projects, they're crunching numbers. I mean, these agendas are huge, tons of reading, so. Readers really are leaders, kids, if you're listening, you should be in bed, but if you're videoing it, make sure that you keep reading. Um, also just want to thank staff for a great job. Um, last thing I want to just say is, uh, we lost a amazing Vista, a legend, in my opinion. Last thing I want to just say is, we lost an amazing Vista, a legend, in my opinion, a guy I played softball with a whole lot. He was captain of a team called Fogs and Figs here in Vista. He had a co-ed team, he had a men's team, he was a park rec guy, he did so much. He was a Kiwanian with me, and I would be remiss if I didn't, in my comments, by just thanking Mr. Steve Rhodes for everything that he did for Vista, everything he did for our Kiwanians, and everything he did for the community as a teacher. He touched so many lives when I posted that on Facebook. Just hearing the stories right now, I'm getting chills. And I hope that, you know, someday when I die, that I will touch as many lives as Steve Rhodes' amazing wife, Linda Rhodes, where Karina Contreras has her Linda Rhodes meetings at. But just a great man, did a ton of stuff, left an amazing legacy. So with that, thank you, Steve Rhodes, Steve Rhodes family, your love.
I have a couple of announcements here, if anybody's still listening. If you haven't filled out the 2020 census yet, there's still time. It's a quick, easy, and safe call, 760-659-0109, for more information, or check online at 2020census.gov. And as part of the Vista Business Recovery Plan, the new Vista is Open website debuted on June 19th. See which local businesses are open. The website vistaisopen.com also provides local business assistance with promoting their services. And last, congratulations to Vista's Norreman Reeves Honda location for earning the Honda Environmental Leadership Award for their new building. They're the only dealer in Southern California, and one of only 50 in the whole country, to have received this Platinum Environmental Leadership Recognition. And with that, I will turn it to our city manager, Patrick Johnson.
Mayor, I think you missed Councilman Franklin.
No, that's quite all right, I think that's fair enough. The only thing I will say, I do thank everybody who came to make comments tonight, joined us on Zoom. Whether you agree with me, disagree with me, I appreciate you engaging in the process. You know, I'm going to tell you something, and I think you'll all agree, and if you don't agree yet, you haven't been doing this long enough, sometimes this is a lot of fun, sometimes it's not. But you always feel good when you know you did the right thing. And we don't always agree on what the right thing is, but each one of us is trying to figure out what that right thing is, and working very hard to do it. And when we feel like we've done the right thing, it makes everything that we do, all the hours we put in doing this job, very rewarding. And as one of the people who said tonight, it is a great honor, and every one of us takes it that way. Every one of us takes it very seriously, and we all feel deeply honored to have the privilege to represent you. So thank you.
Thank you for those remarks, and that, that was well said, well said. So did I get everybody then? Did my brain go to sleep? Okay, I get, City Manager Patrick Johnson, do you have announcements?
Yeah, just two quick ones. Independence Day falls on a Saturday this year, so there will be no delay in trash collection. And as Councilwoman Contreras said, we are not meeting in July for any regular meetings. So our next meeting will be on August 11th.
Promote the fireworks thing on this, on the Fourth of July here at Bringle Terrace?
Absolutely. So there is going to be fireworks on July 4th, and celebrating Independence Day. And Vista residents can purchase a pass to get into the park for $15. And they're currently on sale only to Vista residents, however, on June 26th, they'll go on sale to the general public. So we still have plenty of passes left. So if anybody's interested, we allow up to 600 cars to come into the park. Starts at 6 o'clock entrance into the park, the fireworks are at 9 o'clock, and will be synchronized with, I think it's STAR 94.1. And so 15 bucks gets a car in, and then you can go check out your favorite spot in the park, and watch the fireworks, and then leave peacefully. So that is the Fourth of July activities.
Thank you. How about our city attorney, Daryl Piper, do you have anything tonight?
I would just like to wish everyone a happy summer break.
Yeah. How about our city clerk, Kathy Valdez?
Nothing this evening, thank you.
You've got a lot to say this evening, you've got a lot to do this evening, thank you, Kathy, for all of that. And then, and then actually, Councilmember Green mentioned Steve Rhodes, and we were going to, I was going to close in honor of Steve Rhodes tonight. You know, I was adjourned, and I have a little piece here I wanted to read about him, because he's very amazing. So, "Over the past 32 years plus, the City of Vista has been fortunate enough to have Steve Rhodes as a volunteer. While the City of Vista Steve wore a variety of hats ranging from a coach to the chairman of multiple boards and commissions. Steve began his volunteer services coaching his youngest son Ben in local baseball youth leagues throughout Vista. As Ben elevated his skill levels to high school, Steve looked for other ways to volunteer his time. The City of Vista Recreation Division benefited from his move as Steve began to coach its youth basketball program. As a coach, Steve won many league championships, as well as annual SCMAF tournaments." And I don't know what that stands for, Southern California something. "Through coaching, Steve became a mentor to countless numbers of participants on his team. He stressed teamwork while teaching life lessons to his players. And in 1992, Steve was approached to join the youth basketball advisory board. And not only did Steve join, but he became the chairman and held that title for 20, for the 28th season, until his recent passing. While on the YBA board, Steve had an impact on over 20,000 participants and volunteered over 1,000 hours. Steve created an extremely successful draft format, which has been instrumental in the success of youth basketball through his process, and has eliminated countless problems. In 2013, Steve Rhodes joined the City of Vista Parks and Recreation Commission, where he served multiple stints as chair, vice-chair, and member. Steve Rhodes was a man of many hats, not only did he volunteer for the City of Vista Recreation Division, but also in the Sunrise, Sunrise Kiwanis Club of Vista. Stephen enjoyed softball, he served as player-coach in the City of Vista Adult Softball Leagues for 37 years. He was extremely passionate about his profession, where he is an economics teacher at Alta Vista High School. Most importantly, he was a devoted husband to his lovely wife Linda, who is also a wonderful person, a parent to his two boys, Robert and Ben, and a grandparent. So Steve Rhodes, he will be missed by the City of Vista and by countless participants he had an impact on, and by many people in this city. So we will close in adjourn in honor of Steve Rhodes tonight. That, good evening to everybody.